All right, thank you guys. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, all members are present, uh, present except for President Marsette is on the line. Right, and she had a previous commitment. Do I just hit it again? If we could out quiet in the room, please, we're gonna go ahead and start our school board meeting this evening. We have a lot on our, uh, business agenda this evening, so we thank you all for being here, but we do need to get started. So, all board members are here except for President Marsette, who is excused, um, but she is on the phone and will be participating in the meeting. Right, um, and we have Ethan from Kincaid, who has agreed to lead us in the flag salute. So Ethan, if you could do that for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Ethan. Okay, um, so I'm filling in for Member Marsette tonight, so I will do my best to fill her great shoes. Um, the board is honored to acknowledge that we gathered today on the traditional land of the Denine de People, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. And now, I'd like to turn the mic over to our student representative for the opening statement.
On behalf of the school board, we would like to thank students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the Anchorage School District YouTube channel to watch the live stream. Recordings of meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs. My name is Sophia Maria Holder, and I am the student representative to the board. I was elected to serve through the ASD Student Advisory Board. Although my votes are advisory only, I offer a student voice to this body.
Thank you Sophia. All right, we need to do approval of agenda, but we do need to amend the agenda for the removal of the focus on staff, students, and community. Do I have any motions to amend the agenda?
I move that we agenda, amend our agenda to, um, eliminate that portion since the after-school activities have been, um, discon- or, uh, canceled today.
A second.
Any objections? All right, so moved. All right, now we're on to, uh, Student Advisory Board Representative Report. Sophia?
Um, our last meeting was just last Tuesday, and we, for the majority of the meeting, we discussed ABOSS, which is Alaska Battle of School Spirit, and just finalizing the plans for that, um, communicating with schools and staff to get that across.
Thank you. And Board Conference Committee Report. Do we have any updates, um, from Finance?
Finance Committee met, uh, today, we got, uh, from our municipal auditor, um, an audit report on criminal background checks, the maintenance and warehouse controls. We got an update, um, from inside from our health plan update, great news there. And then, we just had some quick conversation about the budget, and we look forward to meeting March 17th. Agenda TBD.
Governance?
I'm thinking we have had a meeting, and I don't have a report in front of me.
Yeah, you do.
Although, um, we do have items that are coming to you tonight. Um, we did review some administrative regulations and board policies, uh, which we do routinely. And, we do have language on, we have something coming to the board tonight. I don't have tonight's agenda in front of me yet either, so I apologize for that. We don't have a report.
Okay, and Communications?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, we met on the 11th of February. Uh, we discussed, uh, our legislative priorities. We actually distributed our final flyer, I mean, uh, handout for that. Uh, we also, uh, discussed SB 6, and, uh, members reaching out to legislators, board members reaching out to legislators. And then, we had a little process brief on our strategic planning process, which, uh, we will have a work session on, on the 3rd of March. And our next communication meeting will be March 10th, from 3:00 to 4:00 in the boardroom.
And, and Member Bellamy, I'm just wondering, if there were people who wanted to know what our legislative priorities were and what we are sharing with the legislature right now, and, you know, if they wanted to support that, um, how could they find out what our legislative priorities are for this year?
Uh, so there, I think we're going to put them on our website. If they're not already there, they might already be there.
So people could look that up and then know what the board is doing?
And they can see exactly what our priorities are for this year.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other conference or committee reports? Member Mitchell?
Um, I went to part of an ed tech, I think it was called an ed tech conference this Saturday, that was co-hosted by the ASD and the AEA, and I, I thought it was really, really well done. There were a lot of teachers there, and, um, I went to an on-session, what they did is had a bubble up thing, and they had a session on what are different schools doing with their win time? And, um, it just seemed like it was a very, very productive, um, and well-received day. And, I know Mark Johannes and, um, Devin Roberts, um, I think led that effort, and, um, with many, many, many other people. And it was, it was all people within the district teaching these different sessions. It was really, really wonderful to see the talent we have in the district, and people sharing their experience and, um, knowledge with other, other fellow educators.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, oh, uh, Member Marsette?
Yes, um, I just wanna report on my visit to, uh, Juneau, this, uh, uh, the week before last. Um, I met with probably, I would say at least 12 to 15, uh, representatives. Uh, the mood was different depending on who you were speaking to, but there is a bill that end of story as, uh, put out there on increasing the BSA, and they are taking testimony from Anchorage on Friday. And I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's around 5:30 to 6:00. Um, if somebody can get that information and share, it'd be wonderful. Um, definitely a sentiment, uh, with many representatives that our school district does need more money. Um, and then, of course, there are those that we have to, um, just convince a little bit more.
Thank you, Member Marsette. Did I hear you right on Friday, that members of the public can call into the state legislature and give testimony, and on Saturday?
Yeah.
All right, is there a way to have that, uh, the details of how to do that shared?
Yes, through the chair, we will, uh, place that, um, we'll push that out actually through our communications, put it on the website. But, uh, Member Marsette, President Marsette was correct, and it's 5:30 to 6:00 on Friday, and, um, I believe 2:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, but we'll get those. And they can be done at the LIO or just on off-net, which is from your own phone.
And the LIO is just a building in midtown, so you can just go there. Um, okay, next up, we have our goal monitoring. This is a new section of our board meetings, where we're gonna look at our student outcomes, the goals we've set for the district, and what our students know and are able to do. And the first part of this is reviewing our last meeting, we're gonna start, um, sharing how much of that time. So we had 10 minutes out of our last three-hour meeting that we focused on student outcomes. And each week, we'll reflect on, uh, where we were at the week before, and make sure we're holding ourselves accountable for what our students know and are able to do. So Dr. Bishop, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, I do want to, uh, show that we have, uh, some signs up here. The, uh, original Destination 2020 goals, uh, are off to the right, and this year being the last year of Destination 2020, uh, the board, uh, narrowed the focus, and those are on to your left, uh, everyone else is right, on attendance, safety, and performance. So, at each meeting, we will update. Uh, again, last meeting, it was on attendance, and this meeting, it is about, um, performa- or, last one attendance, now it's on performance, and what we're talking about is performance. One of the goals, the sub-goals, SMART goals are under there, to increase reading proficiency. This is something, um, talked about all over the state. ASD began our journey about three years ago. Dr. Knudsen's gonna help me with this. Uh, but what we looked at was, um, FastBridge results. And in the past, and on the website, on the data dashboard, you might see this and remember it as AmesWeb. Essentially, these are, um, benchmarks are taken three times a year. Uh, students read for, um, a, a minute, they're given information, uh, and so they demonstrate what they can do. And basically, curriculum-based measures are simply that, it's using the curriculum, what you expect kids to do in reading, like read, or say the alphabet and the sounds, you're using the curriculum to see if they actually know things. Um, it's not a, a separate assessment, so they're actually demonstrating the outcome authentically. We're taking a look at K1, although our goal, uh, our SMART goal is through K2, um, I wanted to share that AmesWeb did, uh, change and stop their former, um, product that we used over the last many, many years, and our teachers did a study with the assessment department and moved to FastBridge. It has, um, better technology, better, um, tools for teachers, so we went there, but we are finding that district-wide aggregate data is hard to come by. So we had to create this, we had to take out second grade, because some kids in second grade are at the lower end, and some kids are reading already, so we wanted to be sure that the data we're presenting are accurate. So in looking at K and 1, in the fall, winter, and spring, um, the outcome that you're looking for kids to be able to do authentically, actually increases, because obviously, they're in school and learning, so the learning target increases. And this demonstrates what is asked at the beginning of kindergarten, which is the fall, what is looked at at the winter, and then in the spring. And if you see, they're moving from concepts of print to onset sounds, letter sounds. So they're given these four mini-assessments, a minute each to be able to, uh, demonstrate what they know. And, and key to this, of course, is, uh, that phonics and phonemic awareness. And, and not only is it, it's really sequential as well to be taught, and this, uh, enables us to know when we teach something, are kids learning? And again, they're screeners, if they're not, this is when we decide, okay, what else are we doing? So, in, in looking at this, our mid-year data for K1, uh, has some things that we like to see, and, and some things that we're, we're not seeing. Again, I wanted to share with the board, w- when this is moved over to the dashboard, it used to be green, red, and yellow, it is now hues of pink and purple. So, um, high-risk are those students that fall below the 10th percentile, you can see the legend at the bottom. And essentially, that middle column is the unknown, because you don't, you don't necessarily wanna grow that column unless they're all coming from the left side, which is the darker pink. We definitely want to lower the number of kids who are high-risk into some risk, and then they would move up to low risk. Um, there is a potential, like you see here, is that, that we probably, from both ends, kinda merged to the middle. We, we moved to the mean, and, and that's something we need to watch. And so I'm gonna share some schools that actually have data that demonstrate growth in all three areas. And, and some of these areas are getting smaller, where others, you want to grow. So, from fall to winter, at, um, and I'm going to share from three schools, they're moving me along kinda quickly, so I'm gonna share, uh, these are, again, the aggregate of all K1 students in the district, and where we are. And once again, what's asked in the winter, similar to what I shared a little bit ago, is a higher bar. So the bar continues to move as we continue to teach. So what we need to do is not only make up what is expected, but if we're behind, we have to make up that catch-up growth as well. So, when we say catch-up growth, that's, that's what we mean. I wanted to share that there are excellent examples in all different parts of our district, whether that be, uh, in the south end of our district, in south-side schools, whether it's in east-side schools, and midtown schools. I wanted, I just pulled some data to demonstrate some really great work that is being done. We will get these, every school uploaded into our data dashboard, uh, once we, we check for accuracy, and then you can take a look at all the schools in your area that you represent. So let me go to Cassune. Cassune Elementary is a, a, a good midtown place, this is K1. Notice that 11% of their kids in K1 came in at far below, they're decreasing that by the winter. They're making progress with kids in that category. Um, and they're also decreasing the kids in that middle. When you decrease the kids in the middle, you want to have that happen. Um, generally, the kids in the darker pink are moving to that level, but then on the far right, that's the area you wanna grow. We wanna grow the kids that are on grade level, have no risk of falling behind, and are, are meeting those benchmarks. And again, the benchmarks are made, um, through millions of students across the nation. So this isn't just Alaska scores, these are normed, uh, of about 30 million students the same age, the same demographics. So they're, they're normed, um, in many, many ways. So here's Cassune, they're changing the learning behavior of their kids, who are not only in the lowest risk, but also the highest risk. They are doing a fantastic job. Another school is Creekside Park, located on our east side of town, on tremendous work at east side. They started with double of what Cassune had in the high-risk, and, uh, really made a positive impact on that. And if you can see, that it continues to improve with their low risk, they're moving over, um, and then their, their high-end. So if you just focus on decreasing the dark red, increasing the purple, those are what we want, because that middle could be either or. Um, this demonstrates great growth, uh, nine percentage points, uh, in kids that are moving over to low risk, that are reading on grade level. Abbott Loop, this is one of our fabulous schools, they're, um, they struggled for many, many years. Uh, the principal is working with data teams at the school, their coach, uh, really looking at our students, where are our kids, what are our needs, and, um, really focusing and creating classes around that, uh, during their reading and other times. So they're decreasing their high-risk students, and the increase of their students on grade level. And this, uh, is not, um, actually, this is a kind of a midtown school as well. They, um, are, uh, doing a tremendous job in getting their kids to read on grade level. Bayshore is a south-end school, uh, in our, and geographically in our district, again, the same thing. They started with 18% of their kids in kindergarten, first grade at Bayshore were at risk. And that is, um, an increased number from where you saw Cassune, a little bit lower than Abbott Loop. So everybody is starting from a different place, and that's the beauty about using data to help us tell a story. Who are our kids, and how are we gonna serve the kids and our teens? And if you take a look at the middle, um, they increased as well as, as well as the top end, and now 61%, um, six out of 10 kids in every classroom, um, in K1 are, uh, we, we don't have, um, it's like a dipstick, they are progressing on the natural trend of what they should in reading. Huffman is doing a tremendous job, uh, as well narrowing the kids that are at high-risk, increasing the kids at low-risk, and they continue to move along. So these are just samples of schools, I'll have a report of all of our schools. Many of our schools, though, don't demonstrate these data. It, it shows a demonstration that, um, kids are really moving to that mean, that middle section, and, um, that might be good for lowering the low, uh, kids that have the most need, but we, the, the goal to narrow a gap of any kind of equity gap is not to convene in the middle. It actually, it is to merge in the middle, you actually wanna continue on a trend upward. So your, your highest-end kids should continue to learn, that means they need to be taught things that they don't already know, and your, uh, kids that need, um, re-teaching, remediation, uh, they really need to be given that time to do that, so that we meet all kids' needs across the, the threshold. Now, you might be asking, how are we here, and we've been, you know, we've had reading for three years, how's the implementation? Um, as you know, that during contract negotiations, it was contentious, to say the least, in regard to having what we called, um, really a reading curriculum that is, uh, science-based, that does teach the five areas, and, and is tied to research-based, uh, science, the science of reading, and those areas of phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary comprehension, and fluency. Did I get those? All right, I got 'em. Um, and so it is tied, it's research-based, um, but what we did is, um, we took, so you know what a priority plan is, and that is, you know, that kinda the, the elephant in the room. A priority plan is taking the standards of which kids are held accountable, and creating a priority that says, four out of five days of the week, 80% of our time, if we focused on these standards, we can ensure that kids are moving along that trajectory of learning to read. Remember, the standards have increased from, uh, 2011 to 2014, uh, they, uh, basically jumped about 18 months in what kids are expected. If you looked at the assessment at the end of kindergarten, kids are supposed to be reading by the beginning of first grade sentences. We didn't expect kids, um, in kindergarten to be reading like that. That wasn't the standards before. Now, we're teaching to higher rigor, so our practices had to change. So we created, teachers created, groups of teachers created what's called priority plans, and all it is, is saying, these are the things that are priority to teach in this curriculum. Because if you opened your book and wanted to teach a reading lesson, there's about four hours of activities to do. And the priority plan said, of all of this information, the items in this book that are tied to the Alaska standards, this is what we should look at and be sure that kids know and can be able to do. So the priority plans were, were created. They were, however, created, um, using time elements that seemed to be too constrictive. So we, we put together a team, and this was through an agreement, uh, talking about the K5 ELA Primary Program Review Team. We're doing this kind of review with all our curricula now, um, but I want Jenny to talk about the progress that's being made, and really kind of making those adjustments that need to be made for teachers, giving their feedback, as well as continuing the non-negotiables. Because when, when our kids are held to an, an outcome, that a standard is now related to an SAT score, is related to the College Board standards, you know, we, I think our parents send their kids to us and have this expectation of rigor in our classrooms, and understanding that when I send them to you, you're gonna teach what they are expected to know when they graduate. And, um, but not only in the fundamental skills, but also the problem-solving skills, the inquiry skills, things like that, and that, those are built into the standards. So Jenny's just gonna spend some time talking about where we are in this program review, and where we absolutely see growth, because some of the data you're gonna see isn't where we'd like it to be. Dr. Knudsen?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bishop. So, wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at with our K through 5 ELA Program Review Team. Actually, building in program review to our major implementations within the district is actually a new process that we're incorporating into our business process. Um, it's a challenge with school districts around the country, so we're really, looked at this as an opportunity to refine our business practices as a district, and to be able to do better as we do implementation. So our current, um, Program Review Team is made up of 28 members, these were selected, um, co-selected with AEA and ASD leadership. So we have teachers, primary and intermediate levels, coaches, um, ELL, special ed representation, um, AEA leadership, and ASD leadership, really, um, is the makeup of that team. And AEA and ASD jointly selected Dr. Mike Murphy as our facilitator for this process. Um, per the negotiated agreement, the MOA, we determined to have a mediator, and we came to agreement on having Dr. Murphy come and work with us. And it has been a really, um, good process for us, and has taught us a lot. He has, um, met with us on four occasions, last February 2019, May, September, and just recently here in January. And during that time, he has helped our team, one, learn about implementation science, how we can better improve when we do large-scale implementations in a district, how we can do a better job with that. And the second thing, he worked with us on developing an ASD literacy vision statement. So what does literacy look like in the ASD, so it anchors the work that we do moving forward. And then, we worked on a program review plan, so a logic model, and how are we gonna, you know, test out what we're doing and see what's working? Not only for the public to give information on how we're doing, but also internally, so we can make adjustments as we go through based on, based on information. And it's not just student data, it's really about our practices, um, that we're implementing in the schools as well. And then, finally, this last time when he was here, he's working with us on a protocol of how this team will look at those data three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, just like we have schools do when they're looking at student progress. So it's been a lot of work and a lot of growing over this last year. Um, some of the types of metrics we're using are like, um, surveys, so last May, we surveyed all teachers, principals, and instructional coaches about, um, their perceptions of it, and implementation snapshots, where we go in and observe, as well as interviews, and then student data. So we're looking at different types of data. And one piece of data that, um, we wanted to share is an example of another piece of data that's not student-driven data, but it's more about, um, teacher and performance data, is, um, teacher interviews, and this is, um, uh, Concerns interview. If you go in and ask people, what are your concerns? And in this case, we specifically wanted to know what people's concerns were around the priority plans, because that has come up as being one of the things that has, um, has, has been a stumbling block for people, and they're trying to figure out how to use this in our new implementation. So, um, teachers went out and interviewed other teachers, we had 61 respondents, and out of the 61 interviews, most of the concerns were expressed were at that management stage of concern. And what that means is the tension is really focused on the processes of the tasks, using the curriculum, so things like efficiency, organizing, managing schedules, time demands, that's the category it fit in. Um, and we would expect at this point in our, from implementation, to be moving more towards that consequence stage, where we're focusing more on student outcomes. So we're not quite where we wanna be when we hear what people are talking about, but we're moving in the right direction with that. One area that was of concern to us, as we looked at this, is we did see a small spike you can see in the awareness stage, and this is usually what you see at the very beginning of an implementation, um, things like little concern about the curriculum, not wanting to do the curriculum, things like that. In nine cases, staff reported that they're not using the priority plans and, um, don't per, don't plan to use them. So that's something we wanna understand better and understand why. Which has led us to the next slide, please. Um, an ad hoc group that's come out of the Program Review Team, and this ad hoc group is looking at specifically priority plans. So they looked at all the data from the survey last year, they looked at the information from the teacher interviews, and what are the things that are, are roadblocks from people us, utilizing those? So this group is really developing their background knowledge, they're prioritizing things that we can adjust within the plans, um, make these adjustments and field testing them, because this really is a continuous process, we're gonna adjust it as we go. So, as a result of that, and looking at those data, the first thing that's being done is developing the K5 ELA Curriculum Guidance, and that outlines those essential teachings or non-negotiables, and where the flexibility or negotiables lie within, um, delivering the curriculum. So that's going to be shared with principals, um, coaches, and teachers. So it's been a lot of work and a lot of growing over this last year. Some of the types of metrics we're using are like surveys. So last May, we surveyed all teachers, principals, and instructional coaches about their perceptions of it, and implementation snapshots where we go in and observe, as well as interviews, and then student data. So we're looking at different types of data. And one piece of data that we wanted to share is an example of another piece of data that's not student-driven data, but it's more about teacher and performance data, is teacher interviews. And this is a concerns interview. If you go in and ask people, what are your concerns? And in this case, we specifically wanted to know what people's concerns were around the priority plans, because that has come up as being one of the things that has been a stumbling block for people, and they're trying to figure out how to use this in our new implementation. So teachers went out and interviewed other teachers. We had 61 respondents. And out of the 61 interviews, most of the concerns expressed were at that management stage of concern. And what that means is the attention is really focused on the processes of the tasks using the curriculum, so things like efficiency, organizing, managing schedules, time demands, that's the category it fit in. And we would expect at this point in our implementation to be moving more towards that consequence stage where we're focusing more on student outcomes. So we're not quite where we want to be when we hear what people are talking about, but we're moving in the right direction with that. One area that was of concern to us as we looked at this is we did see a small spike you can see in the awareness stage, and this is usually what you see at the very beginning of an implementation, things like little concern about the curriculum, not wanting to do the curriculum, things like that. In nine cases, staff reported that they're not using the priority plans and don't plan to use them. So that's something we want to understand better and understand why. Which is led us to the next slide, please. An ad hoc group that's come out of the Program Review Team, and this ad hoc group is looking at specifically priority plans. So they looked at all the data from the survey last year, they looked at the information from the teacher interviews, and what are the things that are roadblocks from people utilizing those? So this group is really developing their background knowledge, they're prioritizing things that we can adjust within the plans, make these adjustments and field testing them, because this really is a continuous process. We're going to adjust it as we go. So as a result of that and looking at those data, the first thing that's being done is developing the K-5 ELA Curriculum Guidance, and that outlines those essential teachings or non-negotiables, and where the flexibility or negotiables lie within delivering the curriculum. So that's going to be shared with principals, coaches, and teachers by the end of this month. We'll have that out there so that they can start looking at that and having discussions about it. And then the second thing that they're doing related to priority plans is people reported that the formatting was very complex, it was hard to maneuver, so they're developing grade-level unit outlines and simplifying the formatting. So that's the next piece that they're doing, going to field test that and see how people like that. Again, to address those management things that we were hearing from folks. And then finally, another input is the professional learning. All teachers have gone through Series A Foundations of Reading training and are almost through the first part of Series B Reading Comprehension. Coaches go through in-depth training and then do the training at their school. Principals are continuing to do implementation training with their coaches, and they do a lot of that on their own time, and then get together with coaches to talk about how to implement it. And then the last thing that we've started doing this year is learning walks, and this is where coaches and principals and consultants can model things, and people can have discussion around instruction, actually seeing it in the classroom and having those pieces of dialogue. So that's more of a job-embedded professional learning as opposed to a training where you're going and building knowledge and skills. This is applying it and really having discussions about it. So those are the inputs for K-5.
And, Madam Chair, that completes the report on goals. Are there any questions from board members? Member Darling?
Has there been any correlation between the effacy of the implementation of the new reading curriculum, those plans, and the test scores from these schools in reading?
That is an interesting question. We've been working with Dr. Murphy. His recommendation is the first things you start to look at is implementation and whether the behaviors in the classroom are changing, adult behaviors, it's, are we implementing it? And then about three or four years in, you should start seeing that matching with your student data. So we are at about three years where we should start seeing the impact, especially at K1, where it's really discrete skills that we should start seeing a shift. And that's why he said we're a little bit behind where we should start seeing that.
The schools in which I shared have that strong relationship. Member Bellamy?
Just a, sorry. A clarification. So I like that you have the non-negotiables, and I also like the flexibility. So I'm trying, but did I hear you say some teachers were not?
In the interviews that we did, a sampling of a sample size of 61, there were nine reported cases where people said that they weren't using priority plans.
Weren't using the plans, but were using the program?
That, the specific question was, what are your challenges with the priority plans? That was the whole, about the interviews, yeah. Not the whole curriculum, but specifically, we're trying to figure out, what is it with priority plans that are roadblocks for folks?
Okay, thank you.
Member Darling?
So, given that information that we know now, what can we say about the success, the potential success of the new curriculum? Is it working?
I can't say, right now, I can't say how the impact on student outcomes. We'll have a better idea by the end of this year. What we can say is we have intermittent implementation across the district at varying levels, and that's something we're looking at, is how can we provide the tools or simplify the tools or make them more user-friendly to help teachers in the schools to be able to use them. It's been used very well in some places, and in other places, there's differing implementation.
Member Mitchell?
Thank you so much for presenting on this. It's good to get the update. Did I hear you say that Dr. Murphy said that it takes about three years for the teachers to get fully fluent, and then in the fourth year, you really expect to see a student payoff?
Yeah, correct. About third to fourth year, you start seeing, you should start seeing outcomes with students, because it takes a while. You start with that initiation phase where really everyone's building knowledge and skills about what the new innovation or practice or curriculum is. Then you get into implementation, and you really move from more of a mechanical stage where you're, you know, fumbling through the materials, learning what it is, developing routines, to where it becomes more automatic. And that's at the point where you start seeing results with students. And we would typically see it more in kindergarten and first grade, because we're measuring more discrete skills at that level than as you get into the upper grades.
And the science goes for, you know, some other of our curriculum that's very defined, our College Board courses, our AP courses, very defined curriculum, very defined methods of how to teach it. We've seen the same thing with teachers who are initially trained, with those that are, have taught AP classes for five to six years. All right, nothing else? All right, we'll move on to the public testimony on non-agenda and non-action items. I'll read a statement for kind of how the public testimony process works. This is for non-action items, but it'll be the same later for action items like the budget. "The Board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. There's a one-hour time slot at beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. We have a table front and center with microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You will have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the timer appears on the screen in front of you and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the Board asks that there is no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." And first up, we just have two people signed up, Beau Bassett, and then if Dana, Dave Carter will also come forward, you can both take a seat at the front. Are you Beau?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead and start when the timer starts.
Great, thanks very much. My name is Robert C. Beau Bassett. I'm in my 49th year of youth development, not including my own youth. Earlier in my career, I taught high school social studies at East Anchorage High School, Go Thunderbirds, and Robert Service High School, Go Cougars. I'm here this evening to share the gift, and the gift is the world-class leadership training offered here in Anchorage, in actually Alaska, for eighth to 12th graders. That training is called the Points of Light Youth Leadership Institute. It's one of the best-kept secrets. The students that attend PILEI are what we call the lucky ones. For some reason, their parents or a teacher or counselor said, you should take a look at this. So I'm here tonight, one, to give you a little background, talk a little bit about the current status, and then we have a little help wanted. So what is PILEI? Well, the good news is Prudential launched a national initiative, which you're aware of, the Spirit of Community Initiative. And this year, for instance, we have two volunteer student winners in the Prudential program. One is a distinguished finalist at West High School, is the top high school volunteer, and we have the top middle school volunteer at Northern Lights ABC in the state. Those students are going to be honored. The middle school student will go back to Washington DC. It's a great award, it's a great program, it's through the Principals Association. Simultaneously, when Prudential launched the award, they honored high school students that said, you know, if you want to get us involved, give us world-class training. So here is what the training is described as. "The Points of Light Youth Leadership Institute, a unique leadership and service training program, is for high school students. Developed and initially funded by Prudential, the institute features an innovative curriculum developed by the Center for Creative Leadership and is now administered in communities throughout the United States." So, the good news is leadership exists. For adults, you can spend a lot of money and go to Harvard, and former governor, our former governor is there on the Harvard program. You go to John Hopkins in the Summer Leadership Enrichment Program if you're a high school student. And our belief is that all young people should have world-class leadership training. So when PILEI was created, we realized the Center for Creative Leadership was the organization that trains adults in leadership education. And if we can offer that to high school students, then we're going to move those high school students to college level and beyond. So the good news is we're talking about effective and essential leadership skills. Most young people will never have leadership training. Am I over?
Yes, thank you so much.
Holy mackerel!
I'm sure people could Google it. Thank you so much.
That was quick. Thank you.
Good evening to the board and everyone in the audience and everyone watching and who might watch this later. My name is David Carter. I'm a retired attorney, and I'm interested in public education too, even though I don't have any students here now, wherever actually, in the Anchorage School District. But I'm interested in public education, including education of adults. And I am very concerned about what adults end up reading. And it's so limited in terms of people not even reading the newspaper anymore. We grew up reading newspapers, and we have a wonderful newspaper which gives you multiple sides of the story. We talk about not being bullies, being nice to other people, and not lying. Unfortunately, we have that in our president right now, and he's being protected by our Senate, and that's not a good thing. And it's, we are in very unusual times. We've got like 2,000 former prosecutors, federal prosecutors, demanding that the Attorney General William Barr step down. These are not normal times, and adults need to be communicating this to other adults and children. I recommend people go to wikipedia.org to fact-check on things. Facebook, people may not realize this, but Facebook has publicly said they're not going to control messaging on their site. So if someone puts up, hey, this whole Holocaust thing is a conspiracy by Jewish people, they expect people to argue about that online. It's a horrendous policy, and they're dealing with Europe about it right now, and Europe's probably going to tell them to stop that. So wikipedia.org is a crowdsourced fact-checking source, and I would suggest that you just go there, it's free, and then search for Facebook and see what they have about Facebook. It's quite enlightening. But anyway, I wanted just to let the public know that a lot of us in the public kind of, you know, have your backs. We are certainly very offended by the abuses that are occurring right now with our constitutional rights and what should be happening back in DC. And, you know, we need to be, stay tuned, and we have to change out some of the people we have in office. Thank you.
Oh, Superintendent. Oh, thank you. You can see that we're newbies right here. I will go to Superintendent, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to take the time this evening really to share with the board and really the public in regard to kind of the thinking and the understanding in regard to the budget. I am happy about the passion that's been shared, and I've received quite a bit of communication and an understanding of really the bigger picture about what was proposed. I have asked for the assistance of Deputy Superintendent Mark Stock, who, along with our team, the CFO, the business leaders, really worked with the instructional side to understand programming and to share some of the recommendations that they've made, made to me, that then hence is made to you. So I asked him if he could just share some of that thinking to really share with the board, the public, for just grounding in some couch, the understanding of where did this come from and why? Because there was quite a bit of information about, of surprise, of not understanding the budget process initially. So, Dr. Stock, can you please share?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. First of all, this budget recommendation is a difficult one, because every year, the cuts and the reductions have gotten closer and closer to the classrooms in ASD. And this year, I would say even more so than any year since I've been here. Probably no better indication of that than the number of emails we've got that started out with, I know how hard and difficult and challenging this is. And then we probably heard from literally every individual or group affected by this budget. So what were the priorities and criteria that our team started with when we were to present the superintendent with a recommendation? So first, we looked at the priorities from previous board input and the community surveys. And this year, we did a much larger outreach than we've normally done on the budget survey. We normally don't get a lot of feedback on the external one, but this year, we did a different internal process, and there was a lot of input. We had 204 or more teams submit priority budget ideas, and 999 individuals had presented information. The top priorities that came out of those surveys were, number one, protect the core classroom sizes of our core classrooms in general education. In fact, there were four times as many comments regarding that as any other budget item. In fact, we followed that up with a scale of importance and said, on a scale of 0 to 100, how important is that to you? And the average was 98 out of 100. So priority two was to preserve as many educational opportunities as we could for our children. And so with that, 61 times, there were teams internally that said, some kind of comment that fell into preserving our staffing or staffing assignments, and they gave that rating a 95 out of 100 in its importance. Priority three wasn't stated, but it's one that our team looked at, which was, if we're talking about reductions, how do we save jobs? How do we help our certified employees who are working here? How do we preserve their livelihoods? And so when we looked at the different recommendations, that was one of the secondary concerns that we looked at. So what was the process for this? Some have said to us, well, shouldn't employees have been included in that from the beginning? And I guess I just want to point out that at the budget-level decisions, it's just not good practice for us to involve the employees who, and bring them in and say, you know, which positions should we reduce and not be here? That's a duty of the administration to present that recommendation to the board, and of course, the board's duty ultimately to vote on that. So our input process had to be general in nature, and we heard from plenty of employees, 999 of them in fact, who presented their ideas about the overall budget. However, having said that, once a budget decision is made and there's a general redesign or a reorganization of some kind, then it's time to bring employees in and begin to look at the details of how would we go about pulling and implementing those pieces. So some have asked, well, what else did you consider? So we started with $19 million deficit, and we were able to get that to $5 to $6 million through a whole variety of things that didn't really impact people in a way that would create the kind of passion that you see here in front of you tonight. But over the years, we have cut and we've cut. We're now at a place where programming is now beginning to be affected. And so we either had to be innovative or simply begin to eliminate programming. So we chose an option that we believe met the three priorities which we believed that we were following. One, preserving class size. Two, preserving some programming for students through redesign, giving available resources. And three, allow the employees to save, excuse me, save their jobs. So some have asked, well, why didn't you do the following? Why didn't you just look at the PTR model and just do that? Certainly an option, but our recommendation to the superintendent was based on previous input and the outpouring of our community and our staff, which said preserve core class size. So that was our, that was our top consideration at the time. Why didn't you look at sixth-grade band and orchestra? That did come up several times from staff who have recognized the challenges it creates in an elementary school with the scheduling and all the pieces and parts. But I will just say that fine arts is one of those things that our district is very proud of and has made every effort to try to preserve in its integrity as best and as long as we possibly can. And also, it would be about 1.6 million, and that still wouldn't close the budget gap of that last 6 million. So why don't you cut administration? That's always a common suggestion, and I- That's always a common suggestion, and I just want to point out that those who've been here for a while know that the Ed Center itself is almost 100 employees short than what it used to be in the past, and those positions have continued to be cut. And in fact, there were multiple staff who, on their input, said that we should protect the building administration because they're the last line of defense on our behavior, our student discipline issues and parental issues and all the things that they struggle with in the daily, daily duties. In fact, we've already cut 27% from those categories already. So some say, well, why don't you eliminate art? Well, back to the fine arts discussion, also, art is a vital part of our preparation time for staff, and it's very hard to figure out how that could be configured in a different way. Someone said, well, why don't you reduce special ed? Well, special education has legal issues regarding that. In fact, that's the one category in our enrollment that continues to grow. Our intensive needs students continue to grow, even though our total enrollment has dropped. Some said, well, why don't you just eliminate the middle school model? And that's certainly something that has been considered in the past. The reason our committee didn't approach that primarily in the beginning was that through an AEA settlement, we had a team that spent an entire year last year studying that in great detail, spent a lot of time on it, and the result of that was a board vote to continue the model, albeit with a different PTR formula that raised it from 27 to 30. And so that, even with that, we were able to continue it, but it got very difficult. In fact, secondary education had to put 13 unassigned teachers into that to try to make the schedules work in some of the schools that found that challenging. Some said, well, why don't you eliminate outside consultants? Outside consultants are all funded here almost entirely through grants. And all of our grants have language in them that say that they have to be supplemental, not supplanting. So we cannot take those positions or those consultants and save that money and then go apply it to a classroom teaching position with students, because that would be supplanting. Some said, well, why don't you eliminate the instructional coaches in the elementary school? Again, all of those are paid from grants that have to supplement, not supplant, and there's no way we can take those positions and apply them. That would be a solution that would work, but it's just not in the grant language and it's not legal. And last of all, some have said, well, how about raising funds? Can't we just go outside and search for ways to add to our? And the answer is yes, we can. The problem is, is that it's difficult and probably not wise public policy to take hard-funded personnel positions that require extended time to do and then put them on soft dollars and with a fundraiser or a bake sale or a, those kinds of things simply are not wise policy. Those are supplemental things we can do, but they'll never replace the hardcore part of our classroom instruction. So in summary, those are all the things that our team spent hours and hours going through trying to debate. And it's not easy. There are no winners here. The hard reality is that our board is statutorily required to approve a budget where revenue meets expenses. And with declining enrollment, flat funding, and rising expenses, the district continues to face challenges and probably will for the foreseeable future. Our team spent many hours looking at different approaches, and the current recommendation that we submitted to the superintendent came as the top possibility we looked at for addressing those three things. Preserve core class size, preserve educational opportunities for our students, and save jobs. And so those were the criteria we used.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. And I want the board to know that I asked Dr. Stock to speak on this. Certainly, the recommendation is my recommendation. I'm the superintendent. However, being closest to the hundreds of hours of the meetings, I had asked him to just summarize what went into this understanding. Certainly, as parameters or priorities change for the board, even given feedback this evening or feedback that we've received, if there are different priorities, we will deliver a budget that meets your priorities. The priorities that we went off of were those three. We designed a budget that matched them, met that, and we will continue to meet the board's request. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of ASD memorandum number 93, personnel report, the regular session minutes from November 19th, and the work session and regular session minutes from December 3rd.
Second.
Madam Chair. Any second.
It's voting. I need, I have three votes that have not come through yet.
Okay.
Star voter on the phone.
Did you vote?
Did yours come through? Ms. Mitchell? Did yours come through?
Did you guys vote?
No, it's not showing on the screen.
On your laptop.
All right, that motion passes, seven yays.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the expulsion of the students associated with ASD incident numbers 1315886 and 1315883 as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote? That motion passes, seven yays. All right, now we're on the public testimony, well, now we're on the action item part of our board. The procedure for agenda item testimony are as follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president, but tonight, the clerk, and if seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. If you've signed up in advance or indicate you are interested in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. And tonight, we're actually going to call six people when we get to the one, the budget that most people are here for, and we'll have two sit up here, and then the first four seats will have people sit in. You'll have three minutes to talk, and you'll see a timer on the screen in front of you to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. That's right here. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen.
Madam Chair, I move to approve ASD memorandum 87 and pass revisions to Board by law 9320 meetings.
Second.
Any discussion?
Public testimony.
Oh, any, oh, public testimony, see, I didn't get it right. Any public testimony on this action item? Okay, any board discussion? Can vote?
And then usually we call through the student board.
Okay, and a student vote, please?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes, seven yays.
Madam Chair, I move to approve memorandum 86 and pass revisions to Board Policy 2110, Organization Chart and Lines of Responsibility.
Second.
Any public testimony on this action item? Okay, any board discussion? Can vote?
And then usually we call through the student board.
Okay, and a student vote, please?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes, seven yays.
Madam Chair, I move to approve memorandum 86 and pass revisions to Board Policy 2110, Organization Chart and Lines of Responsibility.
Second.
Any public testimony on this action item? Any board member discussion? All right, student vote?
Yes.
Oh, I was gonna offer amendment on this one. Okay, so I move to amend memorandum number 086 and delete the wording following organizational chart, the part that says that also indicates the names of the individuals occupying positions on the chart for reference. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, I'll speak to my motion. We went through this in the governance committee and went back and forth on whether the names should be on the organizational chart. And there was expressed interest in following kind of best practices of not requiring names be on it. If somebody had a question about whose name is on it, you know, you could certainly ask, but these positions change, and it's not something we need to know in doing our board job, and it's simply more work for the superintendent to manage.
Member Marset?
Yes, I also am in opposition of having names on this chart, working for a corporate entity. Usually, we do not put names on organizational charts just due to the fact of, you know, if they change, if there was going to be a change to our directors in some way as a board, we'd be notified of that to begin with. But I see very few organizations that put names on their org charts just for the purpose of having to update it all the time.
Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I'm actually familiar with organizations that do constitute, do this practice, and I actually think that it is best practice to have this additional information on organizational charts. Makes it much easier to understand who's dealing with who and what their particular position is when it comes to management and oversight of the bureaucracy.
Member Mitchell?
You know, realizing things can change, I do like having the names on there because it just provides a nice reference. And just a quick Google search actually shows that the two things I pulled up said that it typically includes the person's name and sometimes even their photo and contact information. So I think it does vary a lot from organization to organization.
I'm happy to take back best practice, but saying that the information isn't something I need to do this job and would be extra work on behalf of the superintendent. Anybody else? Member Marset?
Yes, I guess I would question why board members feel that they need names on the organizational chart and for what purpose?
Yeah, Dr. Bishop?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify for the board that certainly our organizational charts do have names on them, and every department has one, every school has one. They're public, they're online. The recommendation from your best practice handbook for school boards says that you should understand and ask for an organizational chart that has positions and line of authority. It doesn't mean that we don't do them, it just was the best practice that was referred to came from the National Association of School Boards documents. So we were following your organization's best plan, but, so I didn't want anyone to be confused in the audience or anyone listening that we don't use organizational charts with names. It was just for this particular work, to get it turned in yearly. Any moment at any time, you can get online and find them. In fact, when Member Donnelly asked for them, I produced an organizational chart. This one is specifically to understand that the school board hires the superintendent, I believe, my thinking, and that the assumption that you're also a name in a particular job is something that you're approving too, is, that's not what the approval policy is about. You approve every person who is employed because you approve contracts, but not in a specific position. So I think that's the, a little clarity about the best practice piece. It's not that they're not used. They're used all the time, and they're used, we have emails on them, we have phone numbers, we have pictures, like you said. Just get online and see it. It was that, as a school board and a unit of governance, the difference between being the supervisor of everyone else and the supervisor of the superintendent, I believe that was the construct from whence this issue has come.
Anybody else? Member Mitchell?
At the end of the day, I really don't think it makes that much difference. If I get one without names, I'll just put the names in there for my reference, just so that I kind of know who's where. I don't think it really matters if, I do, you know, yeah, obviously, we hire the superintendent, and she makes all of those decisions. For me, it would just be a reference thing, but you're right, it's online, and it doesn't really matter to me that one way or the other.
Okay, so we'll be voting on the amendment. Student vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board member vote? Oh, I see, thank you. That motion passes for yea, three nay, and now we will move on to that amended motion. Any discussion on that? It creates a 12-month calendar cycle of reporting to the board. Student vote?
Yes.
That motion passes, seven yea.
Madam Chair, I move to approve memorandum, yes, 85, and pass revisions to Board Policies 4135, Soliciting and Selling, and 4136, Non-School Employment.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on this action item? And any board member discussion? Student vote?
Yes.
That motion passes, seven yea, zero nay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve memorandum 90 and approve the fiscal year 2021 preliminary budget and authorize an upper limit spending authority of 879,720,000 plus, inclusive of the amendment passed at first reading.
Second. Thank you, and we have significant public testimony on this. We have about two hours scheduled. So far, people signed up. So what I'm gonna do is call the first six people, and if they could, first two sit up there, and the next four right there. Then as we're going, I'll call two additional names. If you get slightly out of order, it doesn't matter if one person goes before the other, it doesn't mess anything up. When you come up, though, will you please just state your name, and then you can start speaking as soon as the timer goes? And I know there's a lot of kids signed up, so I just want to make sure. I know it can be really nerve-wracking to come up here, but we're really glad you're here. These are all moms and dads, everybody's happy to hear what you have to say. Sometimes our faces can look kind of serious, and you'll be like, what are they thinking? But we're not supposed to let you know what we're thinking. We're just supposed to listen. But I'll tell you, we're all really glad to hear you and hear what you have to say. And I know grown-ups, sometimes you get nervous too, so we're glad you're here too. So we'll start with, oh, and just for the applause, remember not to applaud. We have three hours of testimony. We really want to make sure we get people moving quickly, so please don't clap. Okay, first up, Leah Keller, Tina Johnson-Harris, Emmanuel Eduardo, Sam Randall, Sarah Randall, and Mandy Fracksek. So Leah and Tina, you can take the first two seats. Member Holland?
If I can just make a quick statement of personal privilege that probably matters to a lot of people here tonight, and I'm speaking just for myself, but I have a feeling other members of the board will agree. We've gotten a tremendous volume of emails on this, and particularly when it starts, and it's something, we're not sure what our position is. A lot of times, we delay responding, and then it turned into kind of an avalanche of emails. So I'm way behind in trying to respond to folks. I hope people understand that we're reading them and absorbing them, as well as being out in the schools and out in the community and talking to people. But if you've not gotten a response to an email yet, it's not that no one has read it, we are just very behind. So I appreciate your understanding of that.
And because we have about 50 people signed up, if you heard somebody share what you were gonna share, it's okay to also say, I just agree with that person. You're of course welcome to share your full three minutes or just a minute, whatever you want, but you're also welcome, just no pressure, you don't have to if you don't. We're happy you're here. Leah, you're up first.
Okay, my name is Leah Keller and I have two children in the Ignite program at College Gate. And I worry that the feeling about these students' ignite, in ignite, is that they will just be fine. They work at grade level, they don't need remedial services. Their reading scores push that purple up. But I just worry that these kids will get left behind some way. In your own words, Dr. Bishop, you said that our ASD students should be taught things that they don't already know. Ignite is the place that this magic happens for these students. These Ignite teachers can identify the underachieving gifted student, can help these Ignite students because they really struggle when they're faced with difficult tasks, they just want to give up, they don't let them, it's wonderful. And they also can help them with the social struggles that happen with the Ignite student. It's really a waste of their educational training for these Ignite teachers to be consultants. That just breaks my heart. Um, and also it would put a lot more burden onto our teachers who are already overburdened if they're now having to learn about all this, what to do in win time. Um, and now I'm going to cede my time to my son, Duke.
My name is Keaton Keller from College Gate Elementary and I am asking you not to cut Ignite. Other students and I look forward to the one time a week where we get to think in a creative way and be challenged. We all follow our instructions and complete assignments. This is very different from my normal class. Our Ignite teacher, Ms. Schumacher, encourages us not to just do well, but to be challenged. We all enjoy the diverse way she teaches with hands-on activities and projects. For example, when we're studying insects, instead of doing a worksheet, we dissected a grasshopper. There is no way any of our projects could be done in thirty-five minutes. Plus, win time is used for things that are also important and we learn a lot in it. These are all reasons why you should not cut our diverse and challenging enrichment class.
Good evening, Madam President Starr Marsette, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Dina Bishop. I'm the proud principal, Tina Johnson-Harris of Diamond High School. Yet again, the Anchorage School District Administration and School Board are faced with proposing a budget that takes into account all stakeholders and aligns with the values and vision of ASD. We appreciate the mindfulness and courage it takes to make the decisions that inevitably will not be favorable or satisfy all needs. As you know, last year, the Diamond community experienced an incredibly challenging year. We need not revisit the critical incidents that we faced. However, it is important to recognize that the staff support, such as the Diamond Safety and Security Team, were critical, boots on the ground to assisting administration and staff during these situations. They, along with administration, are the front line in the event of a crisis. They are the eyes and ears in gathering information to resolve situations. Our security team is invaluable to keeping our campus not just safe, but creating an environment for students and families that is welcoming and responsive to the needs of all students. Currently, with four security personnel, the ratio is roughly one to three hundred and sixty-six students. A loss of a security person will be close to five hundred students per security. Security personnel are responsible for not only monitoring hallways, but also helping change behaviors by addressing excessive absenteeism, tardies, and other behaviors that may impact a student's learning. It is proven that the more connections that students have with staff, what is called assets, students feel more connected to school and experience greater success. In a high school of over fourteen hundred students, this is critical for many students who have specific challenges. Students find security personnel as trusted members of the school community. Our staff, students, and parents rely on their high visibility and responsiveness to critical incidents such as harassment, bullying, fighting, drugs, and violence. Losing security personnel would jeopardize safety and the feeling of a safe environment. We ask you, how will we as a campus and district continue to meet the goal of increasing safety in our schools? Yes, safety procedures and high-tech security systems may help to increase safety, but overall, security personnel will be imperative when all else fails. The loss of a security personnel would adversely impact the ability to maintain a safe school. We urge you to imagine and consider the impact that this cut will have on maintaining a safe environment for our school daily. Thank you.
Hello, um, hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Maddie Frechek and I am a seventh grader at Polaris K-12. Here regarding the issue of the budget cuts, thou will remove the position of Polaris's only safety security guard. First off, I'd like to acknowledge how hard it may be for you all to make these decisions and I realize I may never understand the pressure. I also realize I'm one of many Polaris students that have testified regarding this issue and I'm fortunate for that. I believe that every student at Polaris has a strong sense of community. Sorry, I messed up. I believe that having a strong sense of community with all the staff and students is essential for it can create a sense of family. That is why it'd be a tragedy if we lost one of our fellow Polarians due to budget cuts. Compared to other schools, Polaris can be seen with more disadvantages in regards to only having one principal, one counselor, and one safety security guard for almost five hundred students. Despite our disadvantages in staffing, Polaris as a community is a, has adapted and thrived to the disproportionate budget cuts to keep the school a safe, respectful, and responsible environment. Of course, the Polaris community can't always adapt to the budget cuts, which can and will, over time, affect the access to essential classes to graduate and of course, our safety against our outside campus issues. Aside from these issues, I believe every student at Polaris has a connection with Mike, our s- security guard, from sitting in his office from time to time or checking in with him on our way to class. Though it may seem small, every morning my dad would drop me off at school for seven-twenty for advanced orchestra class, parking me in the car, parking the car in the empty, cold, and dark parking lot. As I battle the icy pathways or blizzard storms with my cello and backpack in hand, I'm always fond of the times when I reach the warmth of the school and hear a familiar good morning from Mike as I walk to class. Having that constant, simple sense of family between staff and students, he helps embrace on us all is important so we can grow beyond the social norms of school connections and learn the essential social and emotional values that will help us in the future. Now, both of my parents worked for the Anchorage School District for many years and I know that ASD is considered a national leader in social and emotional learning standards. According to the ASD website, young people who feel safe and supported are happy learners and can focus their attention on academics and become engaged in their school. In conclusion, I'd like you all, ladies and gentlemen of the board, to reconsider Mike, cutting Mike, cutting Mike Burns from the Polaris family. Thank you.
And I'll call Heidi Tukada, Bob Kaufman, and Alana Kaufman to come to the front seats.
All right, good evening, board, and good evening, everybody here. Um, my name is Emmanuel Duarte, known as EJ, um, and I am representing one out of four security personnel at Diamond High School. Um, I wanted to touch, um, touch base on a couple of key things with these budget cuts and I want to start, um, first off with the safety at Diamond High School. Um, we'd be at significant risk if we were to lose the security personnel. Um, the cur- um, the courage and to maintain safety at our school would be spread too thin. With the amount of students we have each year, the ratio would become unbalanced and overwhelming. Um, secondly, um, I want to touch base, um, on the building relationships with our staff, um, with our students, and of course, our new program with capturing kids' hearts. The positive relationships we have with our staff gives our bu- our building great morale. With several placed, uh, well, with several placed on each floor, our staff has their trust in us to handle all emergencies and non-emergencies to great ha- um, to great haste. Our security team takes pride in the relationships we build with our students. It provides confidence to our students to be aware in troubled situations, to seek for us for help and any, um, uh, trouble situations that can be handled safely and steadily. So, thirdly, on behalf of Diamond, we know the decision is based from a financial perspective. We ask that, um, the board reviews and reconsider's by cutting our security position based on many reasons, but especially the reasons I haven't mentioned. If safety and capturing kids' hearts are our main priority, sacrificing a position for financial reasons will begin to create an adverse environment, not only at Diamond, but district-wide. Thank you.
Uh, can you say your name?
Uh, Sam Randall. I'm in the sixth grade at Kincaid Elementary in my fifth year of Ignite. Even though my peers and I in Ignite read pretty well, we have different challenges we face, such as some of us have anxiety to be perfect. Others of us get all of our classroom work done super fast and have nothing to do most of the day. So our teachers are then unofficially challenged to keep us challenged. And others of us have intense emotions and behaviors, behaviors that need a specially trained teacher to manage and channel in positive ways, which is what our Ignite teacher does because she is trained to do that. When we were talking about ASD's decision to cut Ignite and put it into WIN, which would not be what I need, by the way, my mom made the analogy that it would be like cutting PE and having kids do fifteen minutes of jumping jacks in the classroom instead. Then my little, little brother, who is in fourth grade, also Ignite and is right there, corrected her analogy and said, no, Mom, Ignite is two and a half hours and PE is one-fifth of that, so it would be like cutting PE and doing jumping jacks in the classroom for six minutes, not fifteen. He's ten and figured out that fractioning ratio in his head to make my mom's analogy more accurate. That is why he and I and two thousand other kids in ASD need two and a half hours of Ignite each week, not one-fifth of Ignite, which would not be Ignite. That's also why doing jumping jacks for six minutes in class would not be PE, because in PE, we do physical activities that are fun and develop different physical skills and coordination, like climbing, throwing, kicking, catching, and teamwork within a sport, all of which could not be done for six minutes in our classroom. Ignite is like that too. It is the only time during the week when we are finally challenged. Ignite is so fun because it is so hard. It's the only time I don't have to wait for everyone to finish before I can move on. I love working with my other Ignite teammates to explore in-depth, hands-on projects that take weeks to finish. Some of my favorites have been dissecting a squid to label its anatomy and then using its ink to write a message with the quill of its spine, making and launching rockets and measuring each other's flight trajectory with a cool tool and making catapults. Our teacher has special training to understand how our intense and fast-paced brains work and create these awesome projects that are exciting to us and make us want to come to school. I don't understand how the administration of the Anchorage, Anchorage School District thinks that doing thirty minutes of slow-paced, not very in-depth work with twice as many kids will take the place of two and a half hours of fast-paced, in-depth, independent learning where you can go as fast or as in-depth as I, as you want. It is disrespectful of my learning needs and two thousand other kids with my needs to take that away and to think that my Ignite teacher telling another teacher about how she does all that she does to fit into a thirty-minute win time will come close to meeting the National Association of Gifted Children's Saint Mandate to provide services for intellectually and creatively gifted, talented children. That is not what I need. Please honor the Saint Mandate and keep our full Ignite program. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Randall. I'm the mother of six Anchorage School District children, a past foster mom, and a resident of Anchorage for nine years. I would like you to understand why I am back again for the third time, fighting for more kids than just my own. We moved from Oklahoma to Anchorage nine years ago because the school in our town kept dropping AP classes in high school and teaching all kids the same way, the same thing in the same way in the name of equality and low test scores. Sameness is not equality. In Oklahoma, our daughter's gifted program entailed worksheets with riddles and playing chess on the computer. It was a waste of their potential. I asked the teacher if the kids could do group projects together and I was even willing to provide the popsicle sticks to build bridges, for example. But I was told that would be too loud and the worksheets were fine, so we moved to Alaska. We, we moved here nine years ago because there were tons of AP courses, an amazing Ignite program to explore in-depth, higher-level thinking projects for hours, an awesome music program, engineering program, and enough security guards to keep our kids safe while they participated in all those things that educate the whole child, not just their test scores. Now I am fighting to keep the very programs that caused us to move here and the talented classroom teachers that are pivotal in all this who are beginning to leave because of the toxic patterns within ASD. I was very happy tonight to hear that there will be flexibility in write, put in writing by next month and I look forward to seeing that. And I would ask that the sixty-one teachers that were surveyed will go to all elementary school teachers. Thank you. Restructuring of Ignite and health further demonstrates the disconnect that ASD administration has from the realities of the classroom that I have experienced for two years as I've talked to teachers. For example, why did the Ignite teachers find out about this restructuring of Ignite the same day we parents did, less than two weeks ago? Why were they not a part of this restructuring discussion at some point before we found out? Saying Ignite teachers will become coaches to overschedule teachers for thirty minutes a day is something that might look good on paper, but is quite frankly, an insult and disrespectful to both teacher-students demonstrating a lack of understanding for the unique needs of gifted students as specified by the National Association of Gifted Children. Now on to health. It is unbelievable to me in a state with some of the highest percentages of sexual assault, domestic violence, and abuse that it would even be a consideration to cut this crucial program that teaches youth about the connections to substance abuse and mental health and disease and just as crucially teaches programs such as good touch, bad touch. So a child that is being sexually abused by a trusted adult can learn that they are in fact experiencing bad touch and learn that bad touch is not okay and it's not their fault and that they need to talk to the mental health counselor about it. Health for some kids in our district is literally a life or death situation and it will cause irreparable damage to those kids to spread that systematic instruction out among watered-down librarians, PE teachers, and other maxed-out ASD employees who will only be able to teach bits and pieces. It is unacceptable to deprive our students of these crucial services. It is damaging to their mental health and to the mental health of their teachers and these new proposals. There are hundreds of parents who stand with me in my petition to ask you to reject the budget proposals and consider our viewpoint in a later, later date.
Thank you, Sarah. And if I can have Claire Smith, Lydia Shook, and Teagan Thorne come to the front seats.
My name is Bob Kaufman. I have three kids in the school district. So I'm here to deliver this petition, which was signed by over nineteen-hundred people in just one week, calling on the school board not to design, redesign Ignite and not to cut these programs. I will leave you each with a copy, including a hundred and fifty very thoughtful comments. We believe every child deserves, deserves to learn every day, whether that child is performing low or high academically, whether from disadvantaged circumstances or not, and we know you share that belief. ASD's own mission statement clearly states, quote, "Every student deserves the opportunity to achieve his or her potential. The school must teach the curriculum in a way that meets the needs of each child. To make these cuts would be to stray from that mission." Ivan from Anchorage wrote, "Gifted students are by definition those whose needs cannot be met in the general classroom alone. An appropriate education for them is a moral right, no less than students who receive special education services via IEPs. We would never, ever reduce special education services to only the two percent of students with the highest needs. So why would we even think about reducing gifted services to only those two percent of students who qualify for the highly gifted program?" The proposed redesign is an example of an idea that resulted from the process Dr. Stock described, which I believe is a sub-optimal process and easily produces ideas that simply will not work when implemented in the classroom. Mandy from Anchorage wrote, "How does removing the qualified gifted teacher from Ignite and employing them as a teacher resource produce better results than having the qualified teacher actually teaching these students?" You might wonder why I got involved. It's because I'm seeing programs for the gifted and talented chipped away at year after year, whether it's this Ignite program or a new middle school plan to eliminate gifted specific courses in favor of a class called Advanced. If these changes continue, if the district can no longer challenge our most advanced learners, Sarah from Anchorage explains what will happen. More parents will continue to pull their children from public education, which will lead to this continued cycle of reduced funds. But not all parents have that option. What happens to kids from minority or disadvantaged backgrounds that can't afford it? They already start with an achievement gap. You will be taking away the only path they have to catch up. And if you take away Ignite, you will be taking away twenty-five specially-certified educators with years of on-the-job training identifying and developing these kids. This is an issue of equity. It's an issue about giving Alaska's brightest, Alaska's future, no matter what their background, an opportunity to be challenged and to grow. If we don't invest in our kids, why would they choose to stay here and invest in Alaska? Public schools unite our community in a way no other institution can. Funding gifted services like Ignite is not a decision about how to close a budget gap. It is a decision about what kind of Alaska we want to live in, in the future. It is a decision about what kind of Alaska we want to live in in the future.
My name is Alana Kaufman, and I am a seventh grader at Roaming Middle School. I was supposed to be at Chicago the Musical tonight, but to me, speaking from my heart in front of the school board about something I believe so strongly and is more important. Even though I'm no longer in Ignite, I'm upset for the thousands of kids who might not get the same opportunity I had. Ignite was something I looked forward to every single day. It wasn't because I felt special leaving the classroom. It was because I would always leave Ignite feeling so smart, having new tactics and ways to think out of the box. We did a lot of logic puzzles, and sometimes my friends would get it while I was still struggling. My Ignite teacher would then give me a small hint, and all of a sudden it would click, and I would realize another way to think and another way to look at things. But it wasn't just logic puzzles. It was also trying to understand concepts that were more advanced than things I was used to. I did many things in Ignite, from coding to building robots to math and language challenges, and each one had its own lesson to learn. I want to tell you about one thing I learned in Ignite that I can honestly say has changed my perspective on not just school, but virtually every aspect of life: growth mindset versus fixed mindset. When I was nine, I felt inspired by this way of looking at things and wrote up a side-by-side comparison of how to handle situations with one mindset versus the other. In the fixed mindset column, I wrote, "I'm not good at multiplying fractions and I never will be." In the growth mindset column, I wrote, "I'm not good at multiplying fractions, but I can get better at it." When is this most helpful? A school project, trying out a sport, looking at homework in different ways, learning. This philosophy was woven into everything we did in Ignite, and it's what helps us reach our full potential. It's not about getting everything right. It's about the process of working through problems and even struggling. When it clicks, it stays, and the real learning happens. The most important thing that I can leave you with is this: the power of yet. This one simple word, "yet," can change everything. Instead of saying, "I can't figure out this math problem," I say, "I can't figure out this math problem yet." It's amazing what you can accomplish when you try. So I ask you to apply this concept that I learned in Ignite. Please don't get rid of Ignite as we know it. Maybe you haven't figured out how to make it work with your budget, but really, you haven't figured out how to make it work with your budget yet. Thank you.
My name is Heidi Cicada, and I have been teaching in the ASD for twenty-one years. I'm here as a parent and as a teacher to advocate for the Ignite program to remain intact as it is. There are three points I want to convey during this: discrepancy between words and actions, priorities of the budget, and the misunderstanding of gifted education. I believe there's a very large disparity between the words and actions of the school board and the superintendent. On page eighteen of the budget, the school board states that they use data to drive decisions, and the superintendent states, quote, "Meeting success for all is our mission. In the Anchorage School District, 'all' means 'all.'" However, in choosing to cut the Ignite program, those words are fallacies. Why continue to tout the gifted mentorship when planning to eliminate the Ignite program? If 'all' means 'all,' then why is the needed education of two thousand students being sacrificed? If data is used to make decisions, why are those students' test scores being dismissed when making the decision to cut their needed education? You've stated that there are no other areas to cut to keep ASD within its budgetary constraints. I respectfully disagree. I went through the budget and found that there are many non-student contact areas that were actually increased. The budget should be structured around those who are directly involved with students. I created a spreadsheet to help me understand where the money had been allocated. In the general fund totals, there's 1.24 million in increases for departments that do not work directly with students. These departments were school admin support services, district admin, district admin support services, operations and maintenance, student activities, and community services. I would encourage everyone to look at pages sixty-three through sixty-five in the budget for more details. In other areas, legal fees were increased by ninety-nine percent. The school board's other expenses were increased by one hundred and ten point seven percent, which is thirty-eight thousand dollars. The deputy superintendent's travel expenses were increased by one hundred and twenty percent. There are five directors in elementary education. In fact, most non-student-involved departments had large increases in their travel expenses. There is, however, 1.39 million dollars in unallocated elementary resources divided between salaries and other expenses. Why has that been set aside and not used to keep gifted ed? How does that help students achieve? How does that meet the needs of the students? The money for Ignite is there. Your decision to use that money for those who do not work directly with students is a choice you're making. My last point is in regard to the misunderstanding you appear to have of what gifted education is. You currently propose to have eight to eleven gifted coaches become resources for WIN groups so that gifted enrichment will continue. That is not gifted education. Ignite lessons are not given in half-hour increments. The lessons are in-depth exploration that require large chunks of uninterrupted time. The students dissect hearts, eyes, brains. They construct bridges from toothpicks. They study the stock market. They learn the intricacies of chess. Lessons are designed specifically for students whose scores and data indicate the need for true enrichment. These are the lessons that guided my daughters to choosing their majors in college. These students are often the ones who have no friends in their regular classes because they function differently. You have the opportunity to do what's right and what's possible to save the needed and deserved education of two thousand students in the gifted program. Do not sacrifice two thousand students.
Thank you. Could Holly Martinson, Jessica Noble, and Jennifer Collins come down?
My name is Claire Smith, and I'm here to represent dozens of parents from Bear Valley Elementary. We understand that due to less funding, there's a need to find the missing twenty million. Researching district nationwide, there are successful examples to draw from. Howard County, Maryland, a district of fifty thousand students, is in fact the best school district in Maryland based on academics, teachers, health, and safety and diversity. The graduation rate is ninety-two percent versus Anchorage pathetic, eighty-four point one percent. They spend half as much as we do in district administration. Half as much as we do in district administration. The district owes us an audit to identify other cost-saving opportunities where students do not suffer the consequences of a shrinking budget. The lack of transparency. We received no official communication regarding those proposed changes, but learned through the local news. ASD communicates every canceled activity via email and mobile app, yet no word on the proposed budget cut. This is not acceptable. As far as meeting the requirements concerned, ASD identified Ignite students' special needs through extensive testing. A proposal that replaces the Ignite program with enrichment for all does not meet their special need. Ignite is not a luxury, but a requirement. Other states like Texas experimented with enrichment for all, and the feedback is unfavorable. Our teachers are overtasked and don't have the bandwidth to turn to special-need kids. This proposal will lead to disruption in the classroom, demotivated students, and promote the system that favors some type of special needs over others. Alaska has many health problems: substance abuse, STD, sexual abuse, and mental health. Yet the proposal is to spend even less time educating our youth on these matters. Fifteen minutes of health per week in the classroom will only increase the state health costs exponentially in the long run. It's like passing the problem in someone else's bucket. Reducing school by an hour a week will result in students missing two months of education before reaching middle school. How will this help raise graduation rates or decrease our costs? To summarize, we need realistic cost-cutting alternatives, budget process to be transparent, enrichment for all is not special ed for gifted kids. Health education is key to lower state health costs. Decreasing an hour of school per week will not help the graduation rate nor the budget. I urge the board to send the CFO back to the drawing board with a directive to come up with more options that will not endanger the future success of our students in our state. If this budget is approved as-is by the board, we will have little recourse but to consider a class-action claim against the district. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Teagan Thorne.
And I am Lydia Shook, and we are from Polaris K-12 School.
You may remember us from the last meeting. We understand that your decision is not an easy one to make, but since you are basing your decision off of numbers, here are some you may not have seen. Just this year, our school has had two occasions where people have moved into and camped on our school grounds, and at least a dozen break-ins to our school sheds, one of those times stealing ten thousand dollars worth of camping gear. Our security officer has found three to five large knives and countless needles on many occasions around the school property. Our recycling shed was burnt down by arsonists in November. The data from our school shows that this school year, we have incidents at least once every other week. How are we supposed to deal with these incidents with no security officer employed at our school and only two SROs shared with thirteen other schools? Our school is not classified as an elementary school. However, we do have two to three hundred elementary students running around the school grounds who have previously come across knives and drug paraphernalia. I ask you, does this sound like the safe environment which ASD aspires to provide for its students, teachers, and community? Our school is an elementary through high school and has been classified as an alternative school. According to your budget document, an alternative school with four hundred and fifty students should have at least one security position employed. Polaris has four hundred and eighty students. Therefore, we should have at least one security officer according to your metric. By taking away our only security, you are sabotaging our learning environment. How are we supposed to feel comfortable learning in an unsafe environment? This fact goes against every goal the school district has for the set 2020 school year. Students will feel unsafe at school because of the lack of security, which may cause tentative attendance at school. If the students are not attending school or are distracted at school, how are they supposed to perform on performance evaluations better, which are all goals of ASD? Again, we understand that you are facing many difficult decisions, and one security officer at an alternative school might not seem like such a huge deal. However, the safety slash security officer's position at Polaris is vital to our learning environment. We have accumulated over a thousand signatures from people who are concerned about the safety at Polaris. Can we please have all of the Polarians that showed up today stand up to show your support? We hope that you will reconsider your decision to remove the only safety slash security position at Polaris K-12 School. Thank you.
Please refrain from clapping. Shannon Brody and Sarah Barsis, please come down. It should be Holly Martinson and Jessica Noble at the front podium.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Holly Martinson. I'm a third-generation Alaskan and an assistant professor of cancer biology for the Whammy School of Medical Education at the University of Alaska Anchorage. I would like to speak to you today about what the ASD gifted education program, Ignite, formerly known as PACT, has done for me. I entered the program in second grade, and it was my favorite day of the week. I loved all of the elementary school teachers that I had, but with thirty kids in the classroom, they had little time to help me excel academically. Through Ignite, I was able to step away from the chaos of the classroom and participate in STEM-based projects that built the foundation for me as a scientist. It was through this program that I learned how to use a microscope, dissected my first specimen, and learned how to work with my classmates as a team. Ignite was challenging and pushed my academic abilities. Coming from a lower-income family, I wasn't going to get these opportunities anywhere else. I'm so thankful for what I was given, the chance to participate in such an amazing program, helping me become the first in my family to graduate from college. This year, my daughter Liv was accepted into the Ignite program. Even though Liv loves all of her teachers, she's often admitted to me that school is boring, that she doesn't feel challenged, and doesn't want to go anymore. Everything she said to me reminded me of how I felt before I entered Ignite. Just like my teachers, she has been given worksheets and allowed to read when she finished her work, but on her first day of Ignite, she was so excited about everything she had learned and created. She talked with me for over an hour about it. As I look at the students in Liv's College Gate Ignite program, I see the same non-traditional, diverse backgrounds that were in my class. I'm excited for her to participate in a program that has done so much for me. The students in this program are our future doctors, scientists, engineers, and lawyers, and so much more. I currently work with former Ignite High School students in my research lab at UAA studying cancer, and many of my medical students are former Ignite students as well. We need to continue to support Ignite and not take away this opportunity from our brightest students.
Hi, my name is Jessica Noble. I have two boys at Rabbit Creek Elementary. My son, Isaac Bonney, is here. He's in fifth grade. He's been in the Ignite program for four years, and I have a first grader who I would hope would be in the Ignite program in a couple of years. And I am testifying in favor of keeping the Ignite program the way it is now. And I'm remiss, I testified last January for the first time, this is only my second time, and thank you, you guys, for doing the ASD sixty pilot program for the thirty-minute lunch and thirty-minute recess. I've been meaning to say thank you very much for doing it and taking this opportunity to tell you that my six-year-old can now finish his lunch, which is a very big deal. I'd like to introduce Isaac, who wants to tell you what he's learned in the last four years and what he likes about Ignite.
I have learned about insects, coding, flight, rainforests, and I am currently learning about inventions. I like going in depth on the topic and learning all the details. It's fun to learn how hot air balloons work and then make a scale model that I actually get to make fly up in the air. I like learning about famous inventors like Thomas Edison and learn about what they invented, like the light bulbs or batteries, for instance. I would like my little brother Evan to learn the same cool stuff that I did.
And he doesn't know it, but he does teach his brother a lot. He comes home from his Ignite classes, and I see them play with paper, and I see them play with Legos, and I see him regurgitate what he has learned to his little brother. So you're not just affecting those two thousand students, you're affecting all the siblings and the parents, because I've been giving a bedtime note in code and the decipher, and I've had to read it. So you are teaching a lot of other people. So a couple of my thoughts about Ignite is that it is more than critical thinking and problem-solving. There's a lot to be said for the consistency of the same teacher. They get a new teacher every year. Mrs. Weatherall has taught Isaac. She's in the audience for four years. She knows him and his learning abilities, and when I said this out loud to Isaac, he said also that there's a small classroom and there's more one-on-one, so he has the opportunity to ask more questions, and that wasn't something that I had thought of. I think it's important to keep our neighborhood school quality as high as it can be. We all know that the lottery programs are very hard to get into, and people with children who need a little bit more of a challenge rely on those neighborhood programs a lot. And I am, as been mentioned before from other people, worried about the burden that it will put on the regular classroom teachers to learn the Ignite programs and to be able to put the same quality into it. We need to balance the needs of all kids, both ends of the spectrum. That was brought up earlier, too. We put lots of time and money into No Child Left Behind, and we can't leave out the kids that need extra challenges.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Collins, and my son, Woodson, is in second grade at Rogers Park Elementary, and he is in the Ignite program. I'm requesting you preserve the Ignite and health curriculums in their current formats. I love my neighborhood school. My husband and I chose Rogers Park because it is important to us to build our school community close to home and be able to connect with other families that live within walking distance. This has resulted in a close-knit group whom I lean on and trust regularly. Going into kindergarten, there were many options in Anchorage to meet Woodson's needs. We knew that he would benefit from alternative learning from charter schools, private schools, or alternative education, but we intentionally chose Rogers Park. A big part of this decision was that we knew it was an excellent school and that he'd likely qualify for the Ignite program. We were pleased with the opportunity for gifted curriculum at our neighborhood school. Woodson loves the program. He just started a few months ago, and he is learning new things every week. He also loves WIN time. However, I believe teaching Ignite during WIN time is a disservice to these talented students. Now, I'd like to offer testimony from my brother-in-law, Tyler Collins. He's a former Ignite student and an award-winning actor, musician, and voiceover artist. He is successful and working in a profession that he truly loves, and he credits this to the Ignite program. Quote, "Growing up, I was not a great student. I got by but never excelled. That was until my fourth-grade teacher took a chance on me and put me in this program. I swear, this changed my life. It was creative and challenging in a way that made sense. It gave me confidence and helped me in ways I can't express. I literally would not be where I am today without Ignite. I can't stand to see doors closing for younger generations because advanced education is seen as less of a priority." End quote. Tyler went on to gifted classes in middle and high school, spent his junior and senior years at Interlock and Arts Academy, and college at the Royal Scottish Academy. He is truly an Ignite success story. Regarding the health program, I believe it should be instructed by health-dedicated professionals. These are difficult topics that are required today. This isn't just teaching about how to stay well. These teachers are tasked with teaching about bad touch, good touch, saying no, and dating violence. Please don't add these subjects to our already overloaded classroom teachers. It is vital that we provide our bright and motivated students additional challenges. I implore you to choose to keep this program so our kids can build problem-solving abilities and foster cooperative learning. Thank you.
Janel Larson, David Eisenberg, and Jennifer Janelle Larson, David Eisenberg, and Jennifer Phillips, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Shannon Brody. I've been a teacher with ASD for thirty years. My first fifteen were as a classroom teacher, and my last fifteen have been as a school librarian. Thank you for taking the time to listen tonight. I spoke at your last meeting only twenty-four hours after I'd heard about one of your budget proposals and with only twenty-four hours of thought, and I've now had longer to ponder proposals to make up for lost classroom planning time with the loss of our health teachers. One proposal involving libraries will not add value to our students' library experiences. It will instead be taking away from the quality we see now in our school libraries. Doubling library time for students in all libraries at the cost of the library itself is not the best answer to budget stresses. I believe more creative solutions, such as extending recess six minutes per day to make up for the weekly half-hour of planning time, would be a better one. This would also address Alaska SB 200, physical activity in schools, and act relating to health education specifically, and physical activity requirements for students in grades kindergarten through eighth might be a better consideration. So please continue to consider other possibilities. I sent an email yesterday stating the time it takes to manage a larger school library, and in this email, shared why libraries are the heartbeat of our schools, what certificated librarians do, and how many hours it takes to run a quality library each week. The total now is thirty-seven and a half to forty-point-five hours per week as it stands. This total does not include the library assistant tasks. Those total an additional nineteen hours. If we double the teaching time in our library to cover planning time, I'll have a fifty-four-hour work week. Bowman's Library would no longer be a library. It would be the largest classroom in our school, as most of the library maintenance would have to come to a halt. The proposal itself states that library maintenance time will need to be protected to allow librarians to continue to do the tasks that are required to make sure the library functions smoothly. With students in the library almost full-time, library tasks will become impossible. A library assistant will not solve this issue, as many of the responsibilities listed require certification in library science. Putting an assistant in charge of those tasks would be like putting a teacher assistant in charge of lesson planning for teachers. Here's an excerpt from, I'm sorry, I have one minute, okay. An excerpt from the National School Library Standards, written by the American Library Association. "One, the school library is a unique and essential part of a learning community, specifically a vital connection between school and home. Two, qualified school librarians lead effective school libraries. They have been educated and certified to perform as instructional leaders, program administrators, educators, collaborative partners, and information specialists. Three, learners should be prepared for college and career life. School librarians improve all learners' opportunities for success within and beyond the school building and school day. And four, reading is the core of personal and academic competency. School librarians provide access to high-quality reading materials that encourage learners, educators, and families to become lifelong learners and readers. It's also intellectual freedom to every learner, and it's their right. Please do not cover lost health planning time by doubling class time in our libraries, taking away the time librarians need for library maintenance. Your elementary school librarians ask you to please look to other suggested alternatives."
My name is Sarah Barsis. I have a daughter currently attending Denali Montessori, and I am here tonight to talk about my concerns regarding the early release or late start by one hour each week. The new recommended start or release day will greatly impact working families, especially those with limited income. I currently work for a major housing authority that serves all income levels of families. Currently, thirty-seven percent of the residents have school-aged children enrolled in ASD. Of those, sixty-eight percent of them make forty percent less than the typical family in Anchorage, some incomes as low as twenty-four thousand a year or two thousand a month. While Campfire, Community Schools, and multiple other organizations offer scholarships to students, it is not nearly enough to cover the total cost of care needed, which will in return require these families to pay out of pocket. You cannot just buy one hour of care per week. This will be a staggering adjustment for many affected by these changes. As an example, Campfire charges a hundred and eighty dollars a month, the lowest financial option currently available for part-time care in the morning. That's a hundred and eighty dollars less per month out of a possible two-thousand-dollar paycheck that these families depend on for rent, food, clothes, or other necessities. How many families will not be able to afford that on top of what they are already expected to pay for school trips, transportation, cafeteria plans, and other related school costs? One of ASD's goals is to increase student attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism. Cutting just one hour a week and forcing families to find care could push those students already struggling to come to school to stop coming altogether, because there isn't enough time to receive the necessary support for them to succeed. Putting more strain on the already struggling families is not a good answer. Goals also include increasing reading and math proficiency, and yet, by taking away an hour of learning, it decreases the ability to achieve any significant change in those areas. Finally, that one hour is being lost, that is being lost to our students, is now being used for teacher planning. This should be given to them when the students are in music, library, gym, or art, which comes out to approximately four hours per week. Instead of removing one hour of school per week, there are other areas that could be looked at, such as overhead costs that could be outsourced for a lesser amount. Please consider the entire community impact prior to voting tonight and how that will affect individuals' needs. Thank you.
Do you have Kelly Lessons, Travis Stanton, and God Gager Davis come down?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Phillips, and I've been a teacher in the Anchorage School District since the year 2000. Currently, I teach a hundred and eighteen, actually, a hundred and nineteen as of today, students weekly with the enrichment opportunities unavailable within the curriculum and time constraints of the Classroom Teachers Day. I would like our public to understand that services provided for gifted students in IGNITE is not providing more math or more reading. These students already excel in one or both of these subjects. My training has provided me and the other twenty-three IGNITE teachers with the ability to create lessons to work on skills that aren't measured with a test, but in my opinion, much more important. Skills we work on weekly include persisting, working as a team, which, believe me, this is one of the toughest with this special education group, managing impulsivity, thinking flexibly, and exploring their imagination, to list a few. Three sixth-grade students participated in an engineering challenge a few weeks ago and came in first place. They felt proud of this accomplishment, stating their opportunities in IGNITE coached them on how to work effectively in a team, think creatively, and come up with innovative ideas quickly. They participated against high school students. I am able to work with gifted students in this meaningful way because I have them for half a day once a week, and some of these students I work with since the second grade. These students that I'm concerned about most if this program is reorganized are the underachieving gifted students. These bright children often don't do well with a scripted curriculum that is taught at one level. They crave novelty and space to stretch their brains. We should not assume that a win group will meet the needs of these gifted students. I received this email from, last week, from a parent. Quote, "My son has had many ups and downs in school so far, and IGNITE has been the one constant of not only happiness, but the joy of being appropriately challenged at school and being around other students who feel the same way." End quote. These are the students that could fall between the cracks and may not reach their potential if IGNITE is cut. I believe teachers trained to work with the gifted need to be working directly with these students, doing meaningful work for a meaningful portion of their school day. I understand your job is to pass a balanced budget, but it should not be done by cutting two important programs. Please do not pass this budget tonight. The school district has not provided your board with a reasonable option for elementary school teachers. Adding health and gifted education to their overflowing plate, along with two less instructional hours in the week due to early dismissal or late start, does not give these hard-working teachers the time to do their job and teach their children. How can we do this to these overworked teachers? Let us ask our school district to provide our community with a budget that is more creative and maintains funding for the IGNITE program as well as health. I would like to thank you and everyone who has come tonight to support these students and our teachers, more importantly.
Please refrain from clapping.
My name is David Eisenberg, and I don't have children. I'm a business owner, investor, credential mediator, and serve as a professional in residence for the University of Alaska. I also participate in development of global regulatory and tech policy. My wife and I care deeply about Alaska in general and Anchorage specifically. Although we don't have children, the school systems where we've lived have always been very important to us. We view them as a bellwether. As goes an educational system, so goes a community. When choosing where to live within a geographic area, the quality of education was always a key determinant. There's no question that there exists a direct linkage between an economy's quality of education and the same economy's overall efficacy. The knowledge and skills of workers available in the labor supply are a key determinant for both business and economic growth. An economy's productivity rises as the number of educated workers increases, since skilled workers can perform tasks more efficiently. As a result, anytime school programs affecting our best and brightest are put to the pressure of scowling back or homogenizing, I grow concern. Concerned that students will have fewer challenges during each week of school. Concerned that they'll not develop to their maximum capacity, the intellectual resiliency and muscle memory that we need in Alaska's workforce, especially the workforce of tomorrow. This is why I'm concerned about the proposed redesign of IGNITE and request the school board reject this recommendation and pursue other options. In particular, options will not target one particular student demographic. All that said, I'm keenly aware of the need for ASD to operate within prescribed budgets. Obviously, the most direct solution would be to seek and secure additional funding from the state. As evidenced by the number of tonight's attendees and the number of reportedly signed petitions, there are a large number of constituents who would support such action. In fact, I suggest that every homeowner in Anchorage should selfishly support maintaining or increasing school funding levels. According to the National Bureau of Economic Research, there's a definite correlation between school expenditures and home values in any given neighborhood. A report titled "Using Market Valuation to Assess Public School Spending" found that for every dollar spent on public schools in a community, home values increase twenty dollars. These findings indicate that additional school expenditures may benefit everyone in the community, whether or not those residents actually have children in the local public school system. Absent increase funding, I urge consideration of other ways to meet required budgets, even an admittedly unpopular increase in classroom size, if not permanently, then at least until other options can be explored, vetted, approved, and operationalized. I have every confidence that the redesign of IGNITE was a recommendation put forward by a group of professionals who relied upon research, who considered their personal experiences, who brought forward was likely the least-worst option. But this is an option that, if approved, may well have far-reaching consequences for generations of Alaskans, and not in a good way. In conclusion, I would ask that the redesign of IGNITE not be approved and that the Anchorage School District seek other avenues of addressing its budgetary commitments.
Mr. Paul Sherman, and Jade and Andrew Parrott, and Moira Smith, come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Lessons, and I've been working with ASD and many of you for well over a year now on the links between wellness and learning, and never thought I would be here speaking about health, but that's what I'm doing tonight. I'm here because I object to the administration's lack of fiscal advocacy in the face of flat funding, to its creation of a kind of frigid Hunger Games, Alpenglow style, as a sign of acquiescence to those cuts, and to a dearth, really, until tonight, of evidence that the board is asking the legislature for additional revenue streams. Advocacy is where it's at, and I think that's where it needs to go. Structurally, the most mind-blowing part to me of ASD's budget proposal lies in the plan to ask a variety of staff members to provide comprehensive health literacy for all students in half the time previously allotted. Are you aware that the Every Student Succeeds Act identifies school health and physical education as two separate components of a student's well-rounded education? That the CDC's whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model that we've spoken about in the Wellness Committee sees health education as a pillar of its foundations? Are you aware that ASD's health curriculum, the Great Body Shop that my daughter takes right now, it states that each lesson requires forty-five minutes to accomplish? I don't see how any of this is going to happen in fifteen minutes woven into or taken out of PE or library or the classroom. Cuts to health seem especially surprising in a state where obesity rates are significantly higher among low SES students than their wealthier peers, where obesity-related medical care costs about four-hundred-and-fifty-nine million dollars every year, and where the state's responsibility to Medicaid spending attributable to obesity is projected to triple from ninety-nine million dollars in 2015 to two-hundred-and-ninety-seven million dollars by 2030. Statistically, Anchorage is part of the problem. Wouldn't it be better to be part of the solution, to be able to tell legislators that we see your long-term financial problems, and here's how our curriculum and increased time for nutrition and physical activity can help? Earlier this fall, the board president sat next to me at a presentation where we learned that among adults, Alaska's adults, obesity and inactivity caused twenty percent of deaths. Smoking, alcohol, guns, and drugs are responsible for another thirty percent. Those deaths are attributable to key subjects that are covered by our health curriculum. They're also disproportionately comprised of Alaskan natives and people of color. And we are considering cutting time for health? That is not going to prepare all students for success in life. That's not going to prepare all students for life. Because in-school opportunities for comprehensive health education in Alaska's largest district matter, especially for those who need it most, I'm asking you to reject these budget choices tonight and seek new revenue streams.
Hello and good evening. I'm Gager Davis, a fifth-grade student at Denali Montessori Elementary. I've been in IGNITE for one and a half years. I'd like to share with you reasons IGNITE is important and should be funded. I think IGNITE is important because kids with ninety-six percentile or above on their math testing and other testing get special education for two and a half hours one time a week. In IGNITE, you learn other subjects that you would not normally learn in the regular classroom, like learning how to write and cipher codes and coding your own Lego robotics. A half-hour once a day would not be enough time for us to finish these projects. We learn habits of mind, and in our mystery unit, I learned that you always have to look at the whole picture, and you always think before you do. We had a real forensic scientist come and teach us about fingerprinting and shoe-printing. We could not have done that in a half-hour wind time. Also, IGNITE helps challenge our brain and grow our mind when we do logic puzzles. I also feel like teachers would not have enough time to teach their own day group lessons. They would have to teach wind time thirty minutes a day. Also, sixth-grade students would have to go to band or orchestra. That adds on to the one hour a week that they would have to teach health. If you added that all up, then that would be more than eight hours and thirty minutes a week, or little, or less than one hour and thirty minutes a day if you had specials that teachers would not be able to teach their lessons. What I'm saying is that you can't change IGNITE without changing the education of the gifted students by law. I hope you don't vote for the cut of IGNITE, which is awesome, if you ask me, and health. Without IGNITE, as it is now, kids that are gifted would not be able to get the project learning that gives us more information. Small wind sessions are not enough. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Travis Stanton, and I am a teacher at Inlet View Elementary. And I just want to say I agree with everything that everybody has said before me. I didn't really come with a prepared statement, but I did want to touch on a few things. I'm just really impressed with the students that have presented thus far, and they're a testament to why I think the IGNITE program needs to continue. Also, the parents that have come forth and shown their passion here tonight, and the importance, and shown numerous examples of why this program's so important. The reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about another program, which is a cut directly to our library in Inlet View Elementary. About a year ago, we were here presenting a proposal so that we could become a PYP Primary Years Program school at Inlet View. And one of the things that a lot of parents have talked about is choice tonight, and that's one thing that we offer in our school. And unfortunately, one of the pillars or the foundational things that's really important for our primary years program is the librarian. It's a foundational piece of that program. And when you signed onto that program, you said that you would do what you could and you would support our program. But now you're cutting that position back to a halftime position. And if you look at the literature and the other testimony that's given tonight, the library is such an important piece, just in a regular school, but in our setting, it's integral to that program. And I feel like we've been set up to fail, in a way. It's like, here you go, here's a program, we have so much parent support, we have teachers that are giving of their time, they're going during their summer vacation to go to training so that they become better educators. And then along comes these cuts, and it's just kind of like a punch in the gut. Another thing that I want to speak to is educators, especially at the elementary school level, we're very flexible. I think if you get a bunch of elementary school teachers in a room, and they're asked to do things, they do so a lot without complaining. And I think in the elementary division, we're cut right now where it is. It's like you put another straw in the camel's back, and it's just asking, we've been stretched so far, it's just, it's just all... so far, it's just almost asking too much. And so I hope you consider that tonight when you start thinking about all the faces and the things that are important with the budget. These are real students, these are real parents, and these are things that really affect us as a community. And hopefully, there's another resolution that we can come to and figure out a different way than have to cut all these necessary positions that really will affect our students. Thank you.
My name is Moira Smith. I'm a lawyer. I'm a third-generation Alaskan, and I'm the granddaughter of Hazel Smith, who taught in the Anchorage School District for a number of years, and after whom an award was named because she was the first teacher to bring Slingerland to the Anchorage School District. So I know a little something about the needs of special education kids. And I'm also the proud mom of a daughter who's a former Ignite student who's here to testify after me, Margaret Metcalf, and of a rising kindergartner who is a prospective Ignite student. I wanted to say, to start off with, that I heard you about the legislature, and I think we all heard you, and we understand that you're trying to do more with less. And so this advocacy, I hope, will carry on in that forum as well. But I'm also a little bit here as the ghost of gifted past, right? Because there was a discussion earlier about underperforming gifted kids, and I noticed that there are five metrics that you are measuring yourselves on right now: performance, graduation, attendance, recommendation, and safety. And I guess I'm here to warn you that four of those may be at risk with a cutting of the Ignite program. When you have under-motivated gifted students, special education students who are not receiving the special education they need, their attendance will go down, their graduation rates will go down, their parents certainly will not recommend their school to other people, and their safety may be at risk, especially since many gifted students are emotionally intense and need special education. I think you are making progress in those metrics, but I also think you can't afford to backslide. I would also note that there are legal requirements that prevent you from cutting programs for kids with legal disabilities, but there are moral, with learning disabilities, but there are moral requirements that should preclude you from cutting programs for kids who are gifted but don't have federal laws to protect them. And finally, I know you're making trade-offs in your budget discussions, but there's a trade-off I haven't heard mentioned so far, which is that what you're proposing to do by having regular classroom teachers teach gifted children is called integrated education. You're talking about having regular teachers teaching special education kids in their regular classrooms. And I guess I would ask what money you've appropriated for training for those teachers to give them the specialized training they need to offer integrated education to those kids who have special education needs? Thank you.
Can we have Margaret Metcalf, Travis Stanton, and Dina Ivy come forward?
Hello, I'm Margaret Metcalf. I am a student in sixth grade at Rogers Park Elementary, and I'm here to talk about the Ignite program. The Ignite program is a program that not only provides extra classes to gifted students, it is also a program that is a lifeline to certain students, including me. I was a second grader at Tugatch Optional Elementary, and I was mentally understimulated and socially, I felt isolated and very awkward. In the beginning of my third-grade year, I got tested for Ignite, and I got in, and I lived for the moment in that classroom. It was a small, safe haven away from the hustle and bustle of everyday classroom life. I don't think you should cut Ignite because Ignite is a lifeline to some students who are really struggling in those areas. I currently go to a gifted school, the Gifted Program School in Anchorage, and honestly, it's probably the best thing to ever happen to me. I don't think you should cut Ignite because Ignite is more than just extra classes. It's more than just the sort of thing that you can integrate into WIN because WIN is for different things. WIN is not for Ignite. Ignite is for itself, and WIN is for itself. They are two separate things, and I do not think they should be integrated together. I hope you guys do not vote to approve this budget, and I thank you for your time.
Are you guys Paul and Jayden? Go ahead and say all your names, okay?
Well, okay. We are here representing Tyson Elementary School Ignite students. My name is Paul, and I'm a fifth grader at William Tyson Elementary School in Mountain View, a Title I school. I have been in the Ignite program since I was in second grade. If you have to cut Ignite, don't put it in WIN. Our needs are being met during WIN. Most projects we do in Ignite take an hour or more, and we wouldn't have enough time to finish during WIN. Cutting Ignite would be locking doors for kids who have great potential and may not have the means to take part in the highly gifted program. Kids like us who need these hands-on projects to challenge us because we don't always get challenged in our homerooms.
My name is Jenna, and I have also been in Ignite since second grade. I am a third grader, and this is my second year. Ignite is important to us because we are able to learn about subjects that really stretch our imagination, knowledge, and expand our horizons. In all my years at school, I've never learned anything like what I've learned in Ignite. I'd be really upset to see Ignite change.
My name is Jayden, and I am in the fourth grader. This is my third year in Ignite. In Ignite, we gotta do things like dissecting animals and make circuit, and making circuit boards, which are never things we would never have time to do in our homeroom class.
My name is Wyatt, and I'm a fourth grader at Tyson. My name is, I mean, this is my second year at Ignite. My brother is also a part of the program. I really want Ignite to keep going because I learned things I never thought I would learn. The time we have in Ignite is a time to learn challenging things in a challenging way. And in Ignite, we learn things we wouldn't in our regular class or in WIN, and not even in science, but I know we would in Ignite. We really look forward to finding out each week the new and challenging things we would be doing in Ignite. Please reconsider cutting this amazing program.
We have Travis Stanton and Dina Ivy up, and then Ethan Ife and Janice Banta. And then Devin and Sadie Lamarche. So Dina and Ethan Ivy should be up.
The Ignite program is not the same as WIN because in Ignite, I learned how to play chess properly. Without the Ignite program, I wouldn't be challenged enough. You're thinking about replacing the Ignite program with WIN. Please don't. Ms. Zoski, the Ignite teacher, is good at challenging me. Without that weekly challenge, I will cease to continue having fun during the weekday. The Ignite program, we get, in the Ignite program, we get to do stuff like building noodle towers with marshmallows as the glue and nails, and the noodles as the boards. We also get to dissect stuff. Without the Ignite program, we will learn about animals and their body parts we already know about. If you cut the Ignite program, we only get to see my friends twice. Please don't cut the Ignite program.
I'm Dina Ivy. Most of you might have gotten this very long-winded document that I sent, that I emailed you. I do have hard copies for you, just to be helpful. So I am also, this is my son Ethan, and he is enrolled in Kincaid Elementary. He's in the Ignite program, he's in the fifth grade. Boy, have I learned a lot about gifted education in the US and in Anchorage over the past two weeks. I am concerned that this redesign fails to comply with the state mandate. I'm concerned that it violates federal law with regard to twice-exceptional children, such as my son Ethan, who is twice-exceptional. He has a disability, and he's on an IEP for it. So I think the potential is there for that federal violation. I'm also concerned that this redesign proposal will violate ASD's core values. And I went into that very detailed in this very long-winded document. But mostly, what bothers me about this is that the redesign defies common sense. To me, asking classroom teachers to provide Ignite enrichment services as akin to a hospital telling its doctors, "We can't afford our dentists any longer, so we're gonna need you to go ahead and start filling cavities and removing wisdom teeth." If you could start that today, that would be great. As far as I know, hospitals don't mess with their professionals in this manner, and neither should ASD. Along these lines, ASD could not ask classroom teachers to provide specialized special education services to disabled students like Ethan. How can it propose to ask classroom teachers to provide specialized gifted services to gifted students? Classroom teachers have enough to do. Asking them to provide specialized gifted education in addition to their existing responsibilities is inappropriate and unethical. This not only short-changes gifted students, but all students. I'm also concerned about the lack of data and research that seems to underlie this proposed redesign. The existing program, according to the plan, is based on research, but I haven't seen any evidence of that for the redesign. Detrimental effect on gifted children, but particularly those who are from disadvantaged families. And ASD is not proposing to cut any of its sports programs, which is appropriate. I don't want to see the rug pulled out from under the next Keegan-Rendell or Mario Chalmers, two professional athletes among many who have made Alaska proud. At the same time, I don't want, and I believe it's appropriate for ASD to propose to pull the rug from under the next Albert Einstein or Murray Kyrie.
Thank you.
I'm a fourth grader at Homestead Elementary, and I joined Ignite when I was in second grade, and it was like a dream come true. I've learned so much in Ignite that I would never learn in regular class. Instead of just teaching us academics, like in regular class, we learned academics and everyday skills, like we do SEL for, that I have used in real life before, like with friends and everything in life. And we've done, my teacher, Ms. Copan, my Ignite teacher, we've done something called ARF, which stands for Achievement, Respect, Fun, and Freedom, which we always make sure we do that every day, and we're always thinking about it, and it has improved our lives a lot. We've learned so much about, like, everything that I've never, ever heard of before. We're learning how to write in Chinese, we've learned all about the brain, we've dissected brains, we've learned about Easter Island and Stonehenge. And I'm here to say, please don't cut Ignite. Thank you.
My name is Devin Lamarche. I'm in seventh grade at Mirawig Middle School, and I believe that if anything, Ignite should be more frequent and lengthened, and definitely not cut. Ignite was a safe place for me and my friends where we could have fun and also be challenged. Our Ignite class was like a school family, and we continue to be even after leaving Ignite. My teacher, Mrs. Copan, made sure that every child in our program was having fun while learning. Ignite was all I looked forward to in the week, to finally be challenged. Ignite was able to stay challenging by the many special topics we did from ignumas to forensics. When I walked into my science class this year, the teacher said that we would look at forensics. She then asked who knew what it was. The only people who knew what, who knew were the people who had been in Ignite. I know that I don't have a lot of points to keep Ignite, but I also know that everything I'm missing will be covered by other children and adults who would testify. Thank you for your time.
We're gonna take a telephonic testimony, but I want to make sure we have our seats ready to go. Janice Banta, Kelly Lamarche, Jeffrey Mayfield, Stephen Settle, and Sarah Kouniff. And then Senator Sarah Rasmussen is on, Representative, sorry, Representative Sarah Rasmussen is on the line.
Hi, and I just wanted to thank the board for allowing me to testify tonight via telephone. I really wanted to thank all of the students who are there tonight, voicing their opinion and the importance of the Ignite program. I can also relate to the difficult fiscal situation that you find yourselves in on the school board, as we face very similar problems at the state level. But I did want to call to let you know that I am opposed to eliminating or any more scaling back of the Ignite program. I attended Kincaid Elementary myself, and I was fortunate enough to participate in the Ignite program as a student. It was a highlight for me every week, just as many of the students tonight have mentioned, and it really was something that I felt kept me engaged in school. I have really fond memories of getting outside to the pond for science experiments. We took field trips, we measured chemical levels in water at various ponds, and I even recall a lesson early on about physics, learning why hot water freezes faster than cold water. Ignite just can't compare to the classroom learning that's being proposed. Because of my time at Ignite, I was able to test into algebra in seventh grade. I took algebra and geometry at Mears, and then I was able to take algebra for two, free calculus, dettaculous, at Diamond High School, along with honors science, honors English, and honors history classes. I feel that the Ignite program was responsible for catapulting my education and allowing me to take more advanced classes in high school. I know it's a heavy focus at the state level to make sure that we're supporting the STEM programs and preparing the workforce that we're gonna need for the engineers and other vital professionals to support Alaska's largest industries. I'm very concerned that we aren't prioritizing our gifted students, who will be the future engineers, doctors, lawyers, teachers, and other professionals that our state desperately needs. It doesn't make sense to me to eliminate 22 Ignite teaching positions and replace them with 10 coaching positions who won't be working directly with the students, which was noted as a board priority, but rather creating materials for the students to use during their win time. And I appreciate the comments earlier that were made about the importance of the fine arts in sixth grade, but to me, $1.6 million when we're looking at a $2.3 million program, would put a big chunk towards the Ignite program, and it doesn't make sense to prioritize what I would consider more of an optional program with the fine arts than our gifted students. I'm aware that the cost savings could be realized with school consolidation and the state-level funding, currently disincentivizes districts to consolidate their schools, and I'm happy to work at that on the state level to create the flexibility that you guys need. So thank you for your testimony, and I, or thank you for letting me testify, and I was forward to working with you guys on this issue.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janice Banta. I've worked with the district for over 15 years, currently as Denali-Montessori School Counselor. And I'm here to express my grave concern about the proposed changes to ASD's elementary program. I heard our superintendent on the radio a few months ago respond eloquently to the question, "What do you feel our students need most?" by answering more diverse types of students, of staff in our buildings, and students too, but followed by a long list of specialties. I recall she started the list with social workers, counselors, that caught my ear because I'm a social worker and a counselor. because I'm a social worker and a counselor, but Ignite teachers and SEL health teachers are also valued contributors to the diversity of our staffing. Our schools would be better served if we spread the costs of necessary cuts across elementary and secondary schools more fairly. And perhaps even having a small increase in class size versus losing valued staff members to our buildings. So, why keep these positions in our current schedule? And let's start with health. These teachers know and are known by every student in a building, and ours is truly an outstanding educator. We all know that successful learning is dependent, first, on the ability of students to feel safe at school, a critical element of the health instruction model, and, second, on strong relationships, which our health teacher has built so successfully in our building. Losing that position would be a loss on so many levels, but mostly by losing such a valued teacher of excellence to our school. Moving on, imagine a student described as follows: easily wounded, feels different from other students, non-stop talker, volatile temper, high levels of frustration, constantly questions. These terms come from a document entitled "Ttraits of Giftedness." Giftedness is an exceptionality that requires specialized instruction. I shudder to think what might have become of my own sons, who considered their Ignite teacher, over there Mr. L., as one of their greatest heroes. What would have happened to them if they hadn't had the highly specialized guidance of a trained educator of gifted students? Our oldest is now a WHAMMY student, and he's on his path to a career in orthopedic surgery, and he credits, in part, the project learning model of Ignite that got him there. It's also important to note that during the time that Ignite students are gone from their classes each week, classroom teachers are able to give valuable, individualized attention to the remaining students, many of whom experience academic challenges, and that will be lost to them. Finally, the concept of a delayed start or early dismissal, especially for our elementary students who require constant supervision, will be devastating to many families, especially families categorized as working poor, where every family member often works 2 to 3 jobs. These families are dependent on a regular, daily schedule to mesh with their work demands, and certainly can't afford to pay childcare for these additional hours. And I wonder if they've really been adequately made aware of this and have had an opportunity to express concerns about that part of the proposal. Thank you for letting me testify.
Should I go? Hi, I'm Kelly Lamarche, and I think you just heard my 2 children, they were both Ignite students. I only have 1, well, my daughter only has 1 more year left, so I'm really here. We've benefited from the program, and I just couldn't see not speaking up because of the tremendous impact that it's had on my children. So, when I read what the goals here were, it was about 3 priorities in mind, 2 of those being to preserve educational opportunities as resources allow, and to try to preserve jobs for employees as much as possible. Taking away Ignite does exactly the opposite. Taking away one educational opportunity that's designed for the gifted children, and it's taking away the highly specialized teachers and skilled instructors that have that in-depth understanding for those children. What I hear is saying restructuring, and honesty, I only hear that it's removal of this program. Taking 22 Ignite teaching positions and being replaced with 10 coaching, and what I read was, those coaches don't work, they won't work directly with the students, but they'll create materials to help those students during the WINT program. This doesn't take into account who will be teaching this WINT. I can go on in length, but I don't have the time to tell you what happens in WINT at my school. The teach, the children that already know how to read are basically neglected and ignored, and they just blow off these 20 minutes by sending them to the library to have their reading time. Teachers who teach these WINT are not trained to teach the gifted children. In terms of written material, what they've been learning in Ignite cannot be put on paper and passed out. Sadie described all of the hands-on experiences that they have, and that just can't happen in the, in the 20 minutes each day. They have the solid 2 hours that they all look forward to, and with these same children over and over. Over the years, it's the same children, the continuity of the teacher as well. Dr. Bishop, I heard you state earlier, for the high-end children, it's about them being taught things they don't already know, and I can't agree with you more. But I don't see how that would happen without Ignite. This absolutely doesn't happen to them in the basic academic program that exists. The children are bored, they do their work, and half the time allotted, and then the teachers, even though they're wonderful, they are so busy doing the work and focusing on the children, no, no children left behind, that my, my daughter can just offer to help the teacher grade work and do some other things. So, the only thing that they look forward to is this Ignite program. I just want to say, I haven't got it, oh, 25 seconds left. It's absolutely been the best and only thing that my kids have looked forward to and remember from their elementary school years. And it's the only program where they're able to thrive, learn, and explore. Please help these children grow to their full potential, and in turn, make a positive contribution to our community. Thank you.
We should have Jeffrey Mayfield, Stephen Settle. Then we'll have Sarah Kouniff, Carol Howarth, Sid Solway, and Judy Campbell.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. Thank you for allowing me for the chance to testify again concerning the budget vote tonight.
Could you please state your name first?
Jeffrey Mayfield, again, sorry. I was here last time with my son Lucas. My son is a student in Ignite, last time I spoke to defend Ignite, and tonight I will begin that and much more. I acknowledge that our district is caught between a rock and a hard place with this budget, and there's no easy answers. For the sake of brevity, I'm gonna say that I agree with all the previous testimony about the value that Ignite has for our children, as well as the value of health and security guards. Obviously, I care deeply about Ignite, and hope that this is, or, and hope that it is not reorganized, because I, as well as most of us here, know that this reorganization will be the death knell of the program. I believe the same thing for health teachers and other programs and personnel lost as well. I'm no accountant, but I admit to scouring through the budget after the last meeting to see if I could find anything that was missed. I was ultimately unsuccessful. I was able to find some programs or areas where symbolic cuts could be made to show a good faith attempt to reduce the total budget. An attempt to, in an attempt to save current services, but ultimately, those things would not make up the $2 million to fund Ignite, nor would it come close to the $20 million shortage our district is experiencing. Nevertheless, I hold out hope that you guys will find a creative way to save the money and save our programs and teachers tonight, because by saving them, we will save our students. Tonight, I wish to address you guys as much as I wish to address some of the audience members in attendance. I ask that the school board author a memorandum in favor of an increase to the base student allocation to account for inflation, since it has not been increased since 2017. I also ask that within that memorandum, you reiterate a strong statement opposing any cuts to public K-12 education, coupled with an equally strong statement opposing flat funding. I know that a weaker memorandum was passed last year, but it was voted against by members who are still sitting on the board today. I ask that that memorandum be addressed to every member of the Anchorage Legislature and the Governor of Alaska, Mike Dunleavy. Perhaps, since one board member was appointed to a special position by Dunleavy, in addition to sitting on the board, then we can get some traction on this. I also ask that people here in attendance write strong letters and testimony in support of increasing the BSA, Base Student Allocation, for inflation, also addressed to their legislators and the governor. We're fighting this fight today, and we may be able to save our programs and teachers tonight, but I promise you that if we aren't proactive this session, then we will be fighting the same fight either next year, or the year after that, or the year after. Yes, we need to hold the school board accountable for their votes, but we need to do the same for our state legislators. We don't need to accept empty words as support. We need to expect them to fund our schools and fund our children. And I ask that everybody here in attendance, please do that. Thank you.
All right, I'm Stephen Settle. I'm a physician, I'm the director of the Alaska Gamma Knife Center, and I'm also the proud parent of a 4th grader at Bear Valley who's in the Ignite program, and that's what I came here to talk to you guys about today. I have a lot of prepared comments, but really, quite frankly, a lot of people have covered a lot of these. So, really, I think what I'd like to do is just try to make a few key points. I'm just really delighted to see how many other people are here to speak on this issue, particularly the kids. The first point I want to make is that Ignite is really not an optional program, or I do not see it as an optional program. These are special needs kids. They are special needs, maybe at a different end of the spectrum, but they're still special needs kids nonetheless. And, and they're not merely kids that are interested in this area, whose parents have gotten them interested in this area of education, but they've been identified by teachers and through testing as qualifying for these programs. And I, the second point I wanted to make was that a watered-down version, or some kind of redesigned version of Ignite, as has been proposed, is really not an acceptable solution, in my view, and I think the view of many people here. Presumably, if merely teachers having some input into their, their course curriculum, and then teaching to all students would elevate the, the, the quality of education for all students, that this would already be, being done. I would hope it already would, would be happening. And so, really, Ignite serves a role that can't be easily replicated in the regular, in the regular classroom. The other point I think is important for me to make is that, as a professional, I think that, that what we see is that there's, there's, you know, there's not a med school in, in Alaska, there's not a vet school, for example, and in many other areas, outside my, my area, you know, there's not, not the professional training in Alaska. We have the WHAMMY program, which is outstanding, but we really need to be able to recruit professionals to Alaska. And when people are recruited, and I remember this very well myself from my own recruitment, almost, almost 10 years ago now, that the opportunity to send your kids to a school which has good programs like this is, is key, when people are making a decision about whether to come to the state or whether to not come to the state. And I've, I've had the situation many times, sort of on both sides of that, where I, not only was this an important factor for me that I looked at, but this is, this, when I, when I'm recruiting people, or I'm speaking to people who are asking me about coming to the state, this is an area that I, that I speak to. And I, and number 4, and I think maybe most important, is, is my strong belief in, in public education. And, and public education trying to help all students, but that doesn't mean trying to make all students the same. And I, I guess I went over my time, so I just want to implore you not to cut this program, or at the very least, please, don't vote on this budget tonight before further consideration.
Thank you. And could you be sure to make sure the next person is cycled up, ready to see, we still have about 30 people to go. So, so, when you're done speaking, just make room for the next person, please. Sarah Kouniff, Carol Howarth, Sid Solway, Judy Campbell, Pat Bjorn, and Avalon Bjorn, and Olivia Croy, if you can be up and ready. Go ahead and start.
Hello, my name is Sarah Kouniff, and I'm a 4th grader at Halfman Elementary School. I'm here to speak about keeping Ignite, as many other students have done tonight. The reason I think the school board should keep Ignite in the Anchorage School District is because it taught me how to struggle. Before then, everything was really easy for me. Since I'm a military child, everywhere else I've been, they didn't have things like this, and I was constantly bored. Ignite is something that I look forward to each Wednesday. Here, I got into Ignite, and I learned how to fail. Winston Churchill once said, "Success is not final, failure is not fatal, it is courage to continue that counts." And I have courage to save Ignite, and I hope I won't fail, because even though it's not fatal, it'll still hurt. Also, Ignite made me closer to the people in Ignite. It also made me realize how fortunate I am to be able to have extra enrichment. It also gives students the ability to stretch their thinking. That is why you should keep Ignite. As you vote, please remember all the little kindergartners who won't get to experience this wonderful activity if you take it out. Right now, you're probably thinking, "How does this help you on later in life? And how does this help you get a job?" Ignite prepares you for what is coming next, and I can and will argue that Ignite is as important as music and health and art. That's because if you took away Ignite, people would think everything was easy, and then, when they failed at something, they would give up and stop trying. Then, there wouldn't be enough people to fill all the jobs in America. The reason I'm in student council is because Ignite taught me to persist and not to give up. The last thing you should know is my Ignite teacher, Mrs. Phillips, in 1 semester, taught me the greatest lesson of all: when you fall, get up, and fall again if necessary. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good evening, my name is Judy Campbell. This evening, I would like to address the disconnect between classroom teachers and the administration at both the school and district level. There continues to be a lack of trust and support dividing these 2 entities, evidenced by the rollout of this latest round of budget reductions. According to the school board website, one of the core values and beliefs listed is accountability. Quote, "The district shall be open, transparent, and accountable to the public," end quote. But this budget proposal is disingenuous and lacks transparency. It recommends solutions, but does not provide any specific details regarding how the proposed solutions will be implemented. For example, the redesign of the Ignite program alleges that enrichment opportunities will reach a broader student base. This statement is, first of all, disingenuous, because while the program may reach more students, removing the trained professionals who currently teach Ignite will with it diminish the quality and the caliber of the intended curriculum. The redesign proposal was drawn up without consulting one single current Ignite teacher. Taking a program that is designed for a specific subset of students and taught by trained professionals simply cannot be reproduced to the same effect when it is offered wholesale and added to the workload of already overburdened classroom teachers. This is what, just one example in a long line of programs that the district has attempted to roll out, but has not provided a clear plan for implementation. The community's trust in our public schools is eroding. We have 2 distinct factions, the administration and the classroom teachers. The teachers in the classroom, who are on the front lines of this daily crisis, are not provided the opportunity for their voices to be heard and their professional input to be considered. Decisions are being made at the administration, excuse me, administrative level, that affect the day-to-day instruction in the classroom, yet input from the teachers themselves is infrequently, if ever considered. I ask that you implement a long-term plan of action, or some sort of standard policy that brings together both teachers and administrators to constructively and collaboratively work together, striving to meet the needs of all of our diverse students and celebrating their successes. I've been with the Anchorage School District for 42 years, and I cannot remember a time when teacher morale was as low as it seems to be today. I would encourage the district administrators and school board members both to spend a full day in the classroom, as often as possible, in order to get a better understanding of the current educational environment that students and teachers experience on a daily basis. Doing this will help you better understand the impact of your policy decisions. It is critical to keep in mind that poor implementation of good programs will destroy the quality of those programs, no matter how great the intent. Thank you for your time.
We should have Carol Howarth, Sid Solway, Pat Bjorn, Avalon Bjorn, and Olivia Croy, and Elsa Bjorn, if you can come to.
Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As others have said, a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, so in the interest of time, I won't-
Could you say your name first, please?
Pat Bourgeon.
Thank you.
So, I volunteer, teach robotics at Polaris, and my children both attend there, and my wife works there. And over the years, I've got to know lots of wonderful people, the children, faculty, and staff. And I'm here because I think that you should continue to put the security of these people, their physical, mental health, at the top of your list. Here in the United States of America, public teachers often go above and beyond their duties, and the security officer at Polaris also does that. So, by eliminating the position, it's more than just, it's more than just the, his duties that would be lost, because Mike does go above and beyond. They've created, they've done an amazing job of creating a safe space, a secure learning environment, over the years, and I think it would be a huge mistake to undo that. over the years, and I think it would be a huge mistake to undo that. So, I'll cut it off there.
Hello, my name is Elsa Bourgeon, and I am 12 years old. I have gone to Polaris K-12 school since I was in kindergarten, and all the eight years I have been at this school, I have always felt safe at school. To have the position taken away at my school that gives me knowledge that I am safe and protected has me worried for how other kids will grow up in our school, being exposed to the things that our one safety and security officer, Mike, picks up to keep our school safe during his walk. It should be something that every kid in every school can feel, and I feel that if these cuts are made, not only will all schools suffer, but Polaris will have the biggest impact, because we only have one safety and security officer. Polaris is getting left with nothing, because it is a disproportionate cut, because other schools with similar amount of students have multiple people at their school whose job it is to keep the school safe, and multiple principals compared to our school's one security officer and our one principal. If this position was cut, I do not feel that myself or other students would feel safe and protected when at school. Students at Polaris know that if there is a problem, it can be resolved, and they will not just be given a suspension. To the public, Mike's position may seem like it is not needed. The fact that we have a much lower suspension rate than most schools just shows how important and effective this position is. If a student did something that would normally be an automatic suspension, they would go down to Mike's office and talk it out, because the goal is not suspension. The goal is for the student to learn from their mistake, talk about what the problem is, and find a solution besides suspension. Just three years ago, we lost our assistant principal, and since then, we have lost three more of our teachers. This loss was extremely hard to overcome, and I don't see how we can manage losing another 10% of our staff. Without Mike, our school would not be a safe environment. Students shouldn't have to worry about whether they are safe or not. Schools should be a place that are for learning valuable skills and making friendships. Safety and security is important in schools, because they can affect a student or staff member's wellbeing. School safety is important to protect students and staff members in any sort of violence, and children who are taught in a safe environment are less likely to engage in risky behavior. Safety at schools allows children to look forward to being in an encouraging environment. I believe that every student should look forward to coming to school and knowing they are safe at school, and have someone to talk to. We hope that you would consider our proposal and help us solve this problem. Thank you.
If Addison Solberg, the group of students, Petra Wilm, Mara Kramer, and Amy Mestes come forward? Go ahead.
Okay, hello, my name is Avalon Bourgeon, and I'm a 9th grader at Polaris K-12 school.
And I'm Olivia Kroy, an 8th grader at Polaris K-12. We are here to speak about why the proposed budget will be extremely dangerous for Polaris. Since we've always had a safety and security person taking care of everything in our school, we don't actually know what happened if we lost our only one. Right now, we have someone who not only manages behavior, but someone who's interested in helping kids prevent making bad decisions. We don't hear everything that goes on in the school, but you will always see Mike helping a student. He resolves problems by putting in the time and effort to keep students in school and learning. Without our full-time security position, everything Mike does and all of his responsibilities, we put on the shoulders of another staff member, another person who's already working a full-time and doesn't have time to work out all the problems that arise in our school. Instead of trying to keep these kids at school by talking to families and helping them overcome whatever problem they could be facing, they'll receive traditional punishment that won't fix anything.
This decision was made by ASD before Polaris even knew about it, which gave Polaris very little time to find a solution. We understand that ASD must cut some things, but we are already working with the bare minimum. ASD says there should be one security guard for every 450 students. We are currently responsible for the safety of about 480. Our school is in an industrial zone, and we are currently having issues with homeless camps and finding drug paraphernalia and weapons extremely close to our school. Mike may deal with kids who are just messing around, but he also works on larger problems such as those. There are also kids who do get into serious trouble, but thanks to Mike, we can lessen our suspension rates by putting in the effort to help them. Passing these kids around won't get rid of the problem, it'll only make the problem worse.
ASD claims that they are cutting this position due to low suspension rates, which should be a sign that this position is effective and necessary. We have less suspensions because of Mike, and losing him will without a doubt affect the students at our school. When you have 500 students of all different ages and home situations, we need someone who will be in the community to prevent risky situations. We have to be able to look at what is going on in our school and what needs to be changed to ensure the safety of the students. Without a safety position, things like abuse and emotional problems that need to be addressed may go unnoticed, and this could result in a worse school environment.
Other schools have multiple of these positions, because they have more students. Since our school is so small, we do only need one, but we definitely need that one. We still have enough kids in our school to need the position, and Mike helps our school every day. With such a big responsibility, no person could do both jobs, and it's just too much to ask of anyone. Mike is here every day for at least eight hours, and when he is not solving issues in our community, he is managing traffic, because even with the clear rules and expectations, some people need to reinforce the rules. We know that our school will simply not function as it does if we lose 10% of our teaching staff and our only safety and security officer. We would like you to rethink the budget cuts for the future of our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kylie, and this is Madden, Savannah, Giovanna, and Addie. We are all 5th graders at Kincaid Elementary School. Research studies and test scores have shown that gifted programs are critical to the education of gifted children like us. We are here representing IGNITE students from Kincaid Elementary School. We would like for you to please consider keeping the IGNITE program separate from our regular classroom instruction. Gifted students with high abilities need a separate gifted education program that will challenge them, not just in the classroom, but in a separate enrichment setting. The IGNITE program is amazing, because it mixes fun with learning, it tests our skills and challenges our brain. Ms. Zoski, our wonderful IGNITE teacher, is an important part of the IGNITE program, and she teaches us things we would never be able to learn in the general classroom setting. Gifted programming influences our future and has a positive effect on our schooling after elementary school. Please support the IGNITE program as a separate enrichment program.
In IGNITE, there are a lot of hands-on, brain-stretching activities. We get to engage in group projects and individual activities depending on our learning style. Either way, the projects are very fun and challenging. We are able to question, discuss, and discover in ways that support our personal learning style. That type of learning is not always found in our regular classroom. IGNITE supports us where we are at in our learning. Please don't take that away from us. We genuinely look forward to our two-hour IGNITE. That will not be the same in our 30 minutes of WIN time.
Having the same group of kids together in IGNITE every year is very helpful, because we work really well with each other. Even when someone new comes to IGNITE, they become part of the family. We become really compatible with each other, and we support one another. Even though we are in different classes, IGNITE is a way to connect with people and still be challenged with different learning. We can be in a social environment where we can cooperate with other kids where we feel like we can fit in and belong. Ms. Zoski is one behind all the fun and challenging activities. We need a teacher who is specially trained in gifted education, they understand exactly what we need to thrive in school.
WIN time is not the same as IGNITE, and when we read novels and answer questions related to the novels, WIN does not allow time for discovery, hands-on projects, and experiments, as well as the independence that IGNITE provides. Gifted children require more challenging education, much more challenging than what we can be offered in the regular classroom.
As said before, the IGNITE program offers us something more challenging. We need that challenge to keep us engaged in school. Being assigned more difficult assignments during WIN time does not meet that need. We need that time to be taught something by a trained IGNITE teacher. We need to be pushed harder. We need a space to be challenged and empowered. Please consider keeping IGNITE a separate program. It's important to Kincaid IGNITE students. Thank you for your time and attention.
Michelle Wagner and Lindsay Flagstad? Petra Wilm and Mara Kramer? So, if you just keep coming up as soon as one person leaves, we still have about 25 people to go.
Hi, my name is Petra Wilm. I am a parent at Inlet View Elementary, and I just want to talk briefly about the proposal to reduce our librarian position to a half-time position. A couple weeks ago, I went into the library before school started, looking for our librarian, Ms. Mans, and I couldn't see her, she's always in there, and I did discover her finally crawling among the stacks on her hands and knees. I said, "What are you doing, Ms. Mans?" She said, "Well, I'm organizing the Greek and Norse mythology section to better align with international bachelorette principals." And I smiled, this is a great answer, and I knew I was going to take it home to my husband. My husband went to a private elementary school out of state. I went to public school here in Alaska. He is regularly questioning whether sending our kids to the local neighborhood public school is the best education for them, and I am emphatically always saying yes. So, it just so happens that Greek mythology was my son's gateway into reading, and I'm glad that section is so well organized, and Ms. Mans is on top of it. My daughter is a little more partial to fairies and tigers. Our librarian, Ms. Mans, was the primary guide for both of my kids into the world of powerful and amazing books. For that reason, I would argue that the elementary school librarians are perhaps the most important librarians there are. They are the ones who lay the kindling and nurse the little flame started by the sparks of curiosity for all little kids. A half-time position at Inlet View is a devastating reduction, and I dreaded sharing that news with my husband. Please consider a last drastic cut.
Hi, my name is Mara Kramer. I'm a parent, and I'm mostly here to talk about IGNITE. I have two boys that attend Rabbit Creek Elementary, and like most of the other speakers here tonight, I'm here because IGNITE's a program that truly makes a difference for our students. My 3rd grader entered IGNITE this fall, and it's been a tremendous asset for him. He looks forward to his IGNITE time each week, even though it's just a couple of hours. He has expressed that he feels valued and able to articulate his thoughts and ideas in this small and focused group. In the larger classroom setting, he tends just to fly under the radar, because he's well-behaved, and he does what he's supposed to do, and I think he falls into that category of somebody who could underperform, because he's not being challenged in the way he needs. He's challenged intellectually to study topics at a deeper level in IGNITE, and his confidence and his abilities and his engagement in school has grown as a direct result of IGNITE. Cutting this program would be a huge disappointment and setback in his education, and that of the rest of the students currently at IGNITE, as well as the future students of IGNITE. It's very doubtful that my son's enrichment needs will be met within the regular classroom setting. His current WIN group is 23, maybe 25 students, and while his teacher's, she's great, she's incredible, it's not feasible that she's going to be able to meet his needs and other IGNITE student needs in that setting. Please consider other options in working out this budget. Thank you.
If Becky Forsyth and Miranda Walso can come to the front?
Hi, my name's Amy Mestes. I'm an ASD graduate, structural engineer, parent of two children in the district, and the head volleyball coach at South Anchorage High School. I've also coached at Chugiak Eagle River in service over the last 15 years. I'm actually here to talk about something a little different than what we've been talking about, and that's to advocate against cutting a principal position at South. Having an activities principal position is critical to achieving the performance, attendance, and safety goals set forth by the district. Here's what the National Federation of High School Sports had to say about activities. From a cost standpoint, activity programs are an exceptional bargain when matched against the overall school district's education budget. Significant benefits include better education outcomes, higher test scores, higher GPAs, higher collegiate acceptance rates, and better college graduation rates as well. Enhanced school engagement and sense of belonging, positive youth development, life skills, and healthy behaviors. 80% of CEOs stayed a link between high school activities and their success, while only 30% to 35% of students participate in activities. I took a personal poll at my office, and out of 25 professionals, 23 of them did activities at their high school. On my sports teams that I've coached over the years, I've averaged about three students a year that have, at my varsity level teams, that are showing below a 2.0 on an initial grade check, that managed to bring that up to a 2.5 throughout the season, and in most cases, over a 3.0. It's because of the standards put forth in those athletic programs. So, while I realize we're not removing activities by removing a specific activities principal position, it will have an impact. My experience at schools without an AP is that activities are an afterthought and not a priority. South has a rich culture of pride in activities, which is probably why 80% of students participate in an activity there. It's no accident that academic achievements are high. There are certainly other options, other than cutting a position at South. One might be to look at combining Chugiak Greening as a middle high school with a population of less than 1,500 students. Principal positions and responsibilities could be split between four principals if that were done. This would be similar to how the diamond mirrors was operated before the separate mirrors was built. It would benefit ASD to run like a business, where it's typical to emulate a process that is successful. The success at South should not be a reason to cut staff, it should be a reason to continue and find out why it's working and cultivate the success in other schools. Activities are often what make kids want to go to school, so please don't eliminate that vital role in keeping our kids happy and active at South. Since I have 20 seconds left, that's what I had planned. I also want to just say that I am a parent of elementary school kids who are not in the IGNITE program, and I would still advocate for it. We don't want our education to be fine, we want it to be exceptional, and maybe consider giving them a project to figure out how to get this budget right. The IGNITE kids could probably do it, from what I've heard tonight.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Flagstad, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just have some brief, highly unprepared comments. We moved to Anchorage in 99, and the last three years, we have been living abroad. The Anchorage School District is the reason we moved back. I have, as I said, three children, they're all at Bear Valley. My oldest is in IGNITE, he was before we left, and he's returned to the program. And like you've heard from so many people this evening, it is the absolute bright spot in his week. He complains of being bored in the classroom, but has nothing but glowing things to say about his time with Mrs. Yetrunka at Bear Valley. My other two children are receiving special help as they transition back into the English-speaking world, and they have equally wonderful things to say about their time with Mrs. Dewey in WIN. My point is that kids are different, kids in my own family are different, and that we, while the middle of the bell curve may find success in the classroom, we need to remember to address the outliers, and that on both ends of that continuum is special education. I don't think we need, I don't think it's valid, really, to differentiate between gifted and special education. They are, in a way, one and the same. And they are one and the same, because in those programs, we ask our children to push themselves beyond their comfort zone, to think outside of their normal creativity. It's come up a couple times tonight already. I would encourage us to do the same, as parents, educators, legislators. I think that, or I realize that the decision-making process lies largely outside of this room, but I would urge you to not pass this budget. Instead, think of more creative ways that we can fund these programs. Alternative tax revenue streams are vital, I believe, for this. I would happily give up my permanent fund dividend to fund IGNITE. I would happily pay income tax to make Alaska a more progressive place to live. We need to think, with all due respect, beyond the bake sale. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, I am Michelle Wagner, and I am an IGNITE program teacher. My schools are Russian Jack, William Tyson, and Mountain View. I am here to advocate for the students at my three Title I schools, as well as all IGNITE students whose voices often go unheard. I am greatly concerned that many of students will miss out on challenging and enrichment curriculum if the gifted program becomes part of WIN. Many of my students are bilingual, and they currently, excuse me, currently receive extra language support during their WIN time. Also, if MAP scores become the sole indicator to qualify for gifted services, I'm afraid enrollment will drop significantly, especially at my Title I schools. Some of my students just don't test well in a large classroom group setting for the MAPs. Many others have not qualified into IGNITE under MAP testing, but non-verbal testing materials. The IGNITE program, the students in my three schools, reflect the diverse population of the Anchorage School District. In fact, minority students account for over 80% of my IGNITE students. We have many ethnicities, cultures, and languages. Some of the languages spoken by my gifted students include English, Hmong, Nort- Some of the languages spoken by my gifted students include: English, Hmong, Nor, Spanish, Lao, Tagalog, Samoan, Hawaiian, Yupik, Vietnamese, and Chimerau. That's from the island of Guam. In closing, I just want to read to you a brief note that one of my classroom, one of my students, he's bilingual, left for me taped onto the classroom cupboard. He frequently leaves notes for me all over the classroom and, "Mrs. Wagner, look, you have another note." And I have to act surprised as if I didn't see him go up there and tape it. He speaks Samoan at home and here is his note. This was a couple weeks ago. "Over the past few weeks, I had fun. You are a really nice teacher. Every Tuesday, I feel safe and smart. My life has changed when I joined Ignite. Thank you for everything." So please keep that in mind. He feels safe and he feels smart and his life has changed.
If I can have Eric Hile, T. Ewan Munro, Erin Munro, and Matt Nemeth come forward?
I just want to thank you for letting me testify on behalf of elementary health instruction. I'm a health teacher with the district. This is only my second year, I was a classroom teacher before that.
Could you state your name first, please?
Oh, sorry, Becky Forsyth. I know you're in a difficult situation, as everyone would say, with balancing the budget. However, I believe both health and Ignite are important programs for the students in our schools. My children have benefited from Ignite as well. We know that healthy habits started early in life are easier to continue as we grow up. The health curriculum includes instruction about body systems. For example, in third grade, students learn about the eye and we dissect cow eyeballs. The students love it and they're grossed out and it makes it very memorable for them. When we learn about the circulatory system, the fifth graders make a baggie of blood showing all the parts of the blood, the platelets, the white blood cells and red blood cells to show what is in a drop of blood. And during the respiratory system, first graders make lung necklaces to see what's in their chest, to see what's in there. They're like, "Where are my lungs?" And then they find out. The first and third graders act out the process of digestion, including poop. During the digestive system unit, we also learn about the nervous system and second graders make brain hats with the parts of the brain labeled and colored. We study the immune system, nutrition, drug and alcohol abuse. During the drug unit, just recently, I had second graders and fifth graders wear my drunk simulator goggles. Then we discussed what would be like to drive a car with them on or go to work. They were amazed that people even do that. Four times a year, we teach personal safety. That includes child and sexual abuse. This fulfills the Children's Safety Act. This includes teaching the no-go tell. Students from kindergarten through sixth grade are taught what to do if someone is touching them inappropriately or if someone asks them to touch them inappropriately. It covers online situations as well. Upper elementary students are taught about sexual harassment and to value respect and consent in relationships, whether it's friendships or when they're ready to be in a long-term committed relationship. And for all grade levels, that abuse, more often than not, comes from someone they know. These are difficult lessons but so important, especially with our high rates of abuse in Alaska. Students disclose really difficult situations in their home lives in both the drug unit and the personal safety lessons. This is sometimes the only time they can share this information. And by hearing it year after year, eventually they tell what they are going through to a trusted adult. Classroom teachers are already overburdened, I know that, I was one. This is my second year only and their days are filled with reading and math. Science and social studies are already reduced to almost nothing. Adding health to the classroom or to the library or PE or however it goes piles more on top of an already full plate. The subject of health cannot be taught in 15 minutes. As health teachers, we have these students from kindergarten to fifth or sixth grade. They become comfortable enough to talk about body processes and personal stories, they're not grossed out by their body anymore. We talk about what goes on inside the body and human growth and development with fifth and sixth graders. We model a healthy view of the body and its processes. Health instruction is already not happening enough. Our country is in health crisis as well as our state. It is our belief that cutting health in Ignite will not help our students. Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Miranda Walso. To the superintendent and the school board, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to testify. I realize that you have difficult choices and none of them are appealing. I also realize that this testimony comes at the tail end of the budget process and that all of you and staff across the district have been working on the budget very hard for months. Part of the problem I see in that is that you guys are forced to submit your budget to the assembly before the state has finalized their budget, which means that you're guessing a lot on what your funding is going to be. That's a problem. I think that the budget structure and the difficulty in complying with different municipal, state, and district budget cycles is compounding an already complex issue. That being said, I wanted to state that I oppose the proposed changes to the Ignite program. I wanted to speak briefly about the fact that the changes don't eliminate the program altogether. I think that's really notable and I'll touch on that further on in my testimony. Alaska Statute 143352 requires every district to establish educational services for gifted education, also including screening criteria, evaluation, and other specific supports unique to them. The proposed changes to this include repurposing eight to 11 FTE, or roughly half the positions and cost for a $2 million project with just under 22 staff. The fact that we're moving those eight to 10 positions and that they are funded in the budget means that the gap to save Ignite as it stands now is just under $1 million. Now, since the Ignite program hinges on that, I wanted to talk about where those funds could be found. First, I wanted to make some specific changes such as eliminating the membership dues, $10,775 a year to the National Association of School Boards, $27,087 a year to the Alaska Association of School Boards, $32,000 a year to the Coalition for Education Equity. That last one in particular really stuck out to me because special education funding includes gifted students. In the state funding formula, one of the modifiers for the final funding allotment is special education, which includes gifted and other education. Now, for the 2,000 kids in the Ignite program, that means that the state is, that Anchorage School District is receiving just over $2 million a year in special education formula funding to support their needs. However, that being said, I realize that these are times of ever-decreasing pressure on the budget and limited resources and things have already been tough for time. One of the things I wanted to talk about too, in the budget, there are also two new positions to support monitoring compliance and enforcement with a recently adopted board policy that all construction projects over $100,000 a year must utilize 15% apprenticeship labor. It's an optional policy that the board is not required to support but is using funds to redirect away from the classroom to allow for enforcement of that. There were concerns that those positions and that policy might jeopardize federal reimbursement for some of the funding we would receive after the November 2018 earthquake damage to the state. And I think it's important to explore the budget in full to get a sense of what our priorities are. During the finance committee meeting before this, there was a brief discussion about the surprise receipt of the $150,000 check from the state lottery for education funding.
Thank you, Ms. Walso. Thank you. You're welcome to submit anything writing, we can read it.
Hi, my name is Ewan Munro. I am a fourth grader at Roman Elementary School and I am in the Ignite program. I started in third grade and I've since liked it more and more, but I understand that you have financial problems. My parents told me financial problems are really bad and I know that you have to make some pretty tough decisions, but I am going to give you some reasons why you should spare Ignite. One, we have, we have an awesome teacher named Mrs. Yetrinka. She knows a lot and teaches us about all this cool stuff. Two, my sister who's in first grade is hoping for her letter and will not get it until at least second grade. She won't have the chance to be engrossed in education just like I have if Ignite is changed. Three, I always look forward to Ignite every Tuesday afternoon. My favorite part is the dissections that we get to do once a year and all the fun learning. Next year's dissection will be the best one yet. It's going to be an I and I really can't wait to do that. But if you take Ignite away, then all the dissections and fun will go with it. Some people really don't like dissections, but other people like me dive headfirst into them figuratively, not literally. My favorite thing about this year was the survival unit that we did. We simulated that we were stranded on an island down in the Lusians. We learned special knots and how to do signals with Morse code and semaphore. Then we made a model boat that floated and tried to make it across a sled filled with water. Next, we added wheels to the boat and saw if it could still make it across the sled. We used rubber bands to make the wheel and motor turn. Next, we did an animation unit where we got to make flip books and learn cool techniques. I am excited for the flight unit that we are going to do next. Everybody should have a chance to get education outside of class and get to learn what we in Ignite get to learn. To me, Ignite is like a more open and free education for people who have succeeded in school and just need challenge to struggle with, need a challenge to struggle with. It is harder than our other school day activities like reading, writing, and math. We just need some more excitement and entertainment in our school day and Ignite is perfect for just that. Thank you.
I'll just call a few more people. Jennifer Burleson, Mariah Andrews, Jessica Young.
My name's Erin Munro and I'm a parent and teacher of that guy who said pretty much way more than I could, but I just want to thank you for remembering as you make these decisions that there are individual lives and stories attached to them, so I really appreciate your patience in listening to those. When he first received the invitation to apply for Ignite, I was skeptical. He has wonderful teachers who already do extraordinary things in his classroom, could he possibly need more? And so I asked them and I got an emphatic yes. Tuesdays are the highlight of his week, topping even PE in recess and his reasons for being excited about school. He's done elaborate survival scenarios, learned about the brain, digestive system, proudly recites the periodic table, and so much more. He is deeply engaged and excited about learning for the sake of learning. With the current time block and structure of Ignite, there is the opportunity to go deeply into a topic over a period of weeks, which is a luxury and a gift, I know. I don't get to do that with my students, I am so grateful he gets to do that with his Ignite teacher. Furthermore, the individual professional human beings serving as Ignite teachers have developed relationships with the learners and their families and that goes a long way to sustaining engagement. If I have learned anything in 20 years in education, it is that relationships are the heart of everything that we do and that's the only way that we are successful. My first grader, who hopefully is home in bed, wanted me to let you know that she loves her health teacher and she looks forward to her health class. And my four-year-old, who is also hopefully home in bed, has grown up in our school library and is most excited about coming and getting to check out library books as a kindergartner next year and loves that space. The high schoolers that I teach, many of whom have lost their passion for learning, and my heart has always been with the lowest-performing students, figuring that the ones at the top don't need that, but now seeing this through my son's eyes, as a student who is successful and is curious and is motivated, it's a whole different thing. Seeing how this helps him take ownership of his own learning is powerful. We need to support kids at all levels and we need enrichment programs like Ignite to keep those kids who move quickly through the curriculum involved and we need designated teachers to keep those programs going. Thank you.
Good evenings and greetings. My name is Eric Hile. I teach health education at Goldenview Middle School. Been teaching there for 24 years and I'm here on behalf of the health teachers primarily, but I've had quite the enlightenment in the other programs here tonight too that need a lot of attention. And you've heard everything from some really elegant ways. I just want, I feel like I came here tonight to remind everybody something that's already been reminded. The need for high-quality teachers teaching the topic is essential. The context of a difficult health education topic that you've heard tonight in the state of Alaska is leading the country and so, so well. Domestic violence and mental health issues and suicide and obesity and just everything isn't something that you don't know. But just to remind you how important it is to keep up the good fight. We had Governor Dunleavy at the Health Summit this weekend and he stopped by and we encouraged him to also keep up the good fight. Understand that mental health is a huge issue in the state of Alaska and that needs to be done in the context of an environment that says, "We're here to talk about your mental health." My hat's off, I'm a classroom teacher, homogeneous classroom teacher, I have every level of student in my classrooms and you can, I want to just give a nod to you or remind you that those teachers work very, very hard to provide the highest level of education to the highest level student in every class that they have. They're not, shouldn't be underestimated in that. Some great challenges. As we talk about elementary classrooms, I think of elementary classroom teachers as the hardest-working teachers I could ever possibly imagine and they have great tasks in front of them and to put one more task or two, now I hear that Ignite's going to also, you know, to challenge that top student, challenge that bottom student, and keep all that going on with one more thing, just looks like kicking the third leg out on a three-legged stool that says, "We're trying to do what we can for Alaskan kids, what's best for Alaskan kids." I know that you want these things too, I was just hoping that $7 million would show up by the time I got here to speak and we have this problem solved. There's $900 million on the table, there must be a way to come up with six or seven million more to keep these programs alive. And I just want to implore everybody in the audience to extend to your legislatures and your senate, we need to find the money to keep the programs. I don't think, you don't want the programs, we all know the programs are necessary and that's what's best for Alaskan kids and thank you for your time and listening to us here. High quality in every angle is how we create high-quality kids and a strong community. Thank you.
So before I begin, thank you again, because I know it's late and everyone wants to go home. My name's Jennifer Burleson, I've served with ASD for nearly 27 years. I was a classroom teacher for 22 years, an Ignite teacher for three years, and for the past two years, I've been working at Wonder Park, one of the most significantly traumatized Title I schools in our community. This year, I was fortunate to be, or I am fortunate to be able to serve in a field test as a school-wide enrichment teacher and the Ignite teacher. I've had Dr. Bishop there and she even realized how low those children were. It's a great joy to be with them and to provide that to the whole school, but Ignite is still necessary in that building. It would be wonderful if every school could have a position such as mine, but the current climate doesn't provide for this. My position's unique and funded by Health, Ignite, and Title I funds. Next year, I assume it's going to be gone. It does not make sense to me that we'll be cutting visionary programs such as this when the data shows that they're beginning to produce results. Our school's math scores are beginning to improve, they were up over 10% in just three or four months. While doing great things for our kids, it's still at the expense of health education. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the over 300 students who will be greatly impacted by the elimination of the SEM and Ignite programs at Wonder Park. Our school population has significant trauma. Over 30% of the students are or have been in state custody, are children in transition and receive special ed as well as ELL services. In spite of these disadvantages, these same students smile, laugh, and learn when they come to Ignite and SEM. It brightens my day. Without Ignite or SEM to look forward to, yet another program and person for which they care for will be taken out of their lives. Our gifted kids need time to meet with the other students that have similar concerns and academic needs. Ignite classes provide a safe haven, once again, for these students. A place where they're not embarrassed to be smart, challenge themselves, and discuss important events in their lives. Recently, I had five or four fifth-grade students discussing these Ignite students' their everyday lives. One commented on how his sister was heading away to a residential facility, the next blurted out, "Oh, I'm with OCS person, if Dad's good, I can come back, he can come back and get me." The third, who has Asperger's, said how he likes our Ignite time because it's calm and people listen to him. While the last inserted how happy he was that he had returned to Alaska from Texas, where his family of immigrants live and there's a wall going up. They are safe in Ignite. The planned cuts imply that our gifted students' needs can be met through a school-wide model or coaching. Having now worked in both situations, I'm not certain that that is a case. Coaching and consultation are not a replacement for instruction. I have much more in here, but I'm going to be cut off by the buzzer. So I implore you to please take the time to at least stall the vote and ask questions of the people that are in these positions so they can maybe help to re-envision some of these programs. Thank you.
We'll call Cyrus Warren and John Waller and Carl von Lert to come forward too?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Jessica Young. I'm a Cook Inlet Soccer Club board member, a team manager, and most importantly, a concerned parent with a 15-year-old son. My concerns are with the high school and district-level changes involving reducing dome services to fund two administrative positions. While this change has an impact on track and field and soccer both, I can only speak to the soccer portion of that impact. Reducing dome time will have a huge effect on soccer, resulting in practices being held in gyms and hallways and a shorter season with three to four games per week. I read through ASD's core values and beliefs and find the decision to cut dome time for soccer in contradiction to safety, potential, and responsiveness values. The first concern and the most important concern is the safety. Having a shorter season with three to four games per week increases a player's chance of injury due to so many games in a short timeframe over the course of the season. Stretching out games allows players timeframe over the course of the season. Stretching out games allows players to put in practices, but also allow time for their body to recover. Further reducing dome time will push practices outside sooner, resulting in teams playing on frozen turf. Even if it's shoveled, it only reduces the turf lifespan, which then involves repair costs. But most importantly, it puts players at risk for unavoidable injuries. Lastly, every student deserves the opportunity to achieve his or her potential, and ASD needs to be responsive to an ever-changing world. Gyms are too small to conduct effective training to develop soccer players for competitive playing. Outside schools are not participating in gyms, and our Anchorage students' players have to compete with them for scholarships and opportunities to play in college. Full-field, grass-like surfaces will better prepare them to be competitive. Personally, my son Braden, who's been playing soccer since he's four, has aspirations to play college soccer, and there are several players in Anchorage who have that same dream. The dome provides a longer, safer soccer season. I know some might say that parents can pay for the dome time with the teams. However, the schools in the Anchorage School District have students from varying income levels, and some school teams would not be able to afford dome time on their own. This policy would only cause a skills gap because teams who can afford dome time would get better practices and develop skills more than those who could not afford the dome time. I urge the board to keep dome services in lieu of the two administrative positions in the 2020-2021 budget to provide an equal playing field for all schools while promoting safety, potential, and responsiveness values. Thank you.
We'll have Melanie Layden and Alana Crooker come down, too, please.
Hi, my name is Mariah Andrews. Thank you for this chance to testify today. I'm here to address ASD's budget cuts that are taking our only security position away. Because of this, Polaris would get affected very disproportionately. I would like to begin by sharing a personal experience I had with our school's security officer, Mike Burns. When I first began going to Polaris K-12, I was going through a difficult time. Eventually, my decisions led me to Mike's office. Mike helped me through my problems. He took his time and found a positive and extremely helpful way to resolve my issues. He then said to me, "You can come in here, you can cry, you can scream, you can let it all out. The only thing I ask is no hurting anyone." His office is a safe space that many other schools don't offer. The fact that this was available to me that day made a difference. A difference that I could feel right as I walked out of his office. That mattered to me. It has also mattered to many other students who walked a difficult path similar to or worse than mine, and that made a difference, too. It's things like the safe space in his office that has created a safe school, and we need that. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that Mike has positively impacted the entire school. Statistics show that our school has a very low suspension rate. The reason for that is our school's security officer, Mike, finds alternatives instead of suspension. He works with the student and the student's family to get to the root of the problem and stop it before it happens again. These alternatives to suspension allow students and teachers to focus on learning. He works with students from kindergarten to 12th grade, and most importantly, he does his work proudly with a smile. If our school's only security position was cut, our school's suspension rates would surely rise. Then, teachers will all have to help to keep safety in our school. But along with our only security position, 10% of our teachers are gonna be cut. If we were to lose those much-needed teachers, we will have less staff to help with our school's safety needs. ASD's goal is for students to have a 100% safe school physically and mentally. Eliminating this security position will not help to reach that goal. Taking away one of our only safe spaces in our school will have a huge impact on the student and teacher body. Mike's position is critical and much-needed. Therefore, I ask you to please reconsider this decision. Too much is at stake. Thank you.
Hi, John Waller. My son Isaiah started in Ignite at Campbellstem this year. He has been more engaged and excited about school than ever before. He attends Ignite for two to three hours every Monday, and by Friday, he is still telling us about the things he learned in Ignite that week. He's eight years old and talking about triangles, Mars rovers, and the stock market. He's learning how to play chess and has started playing with me at home. He has even won once. We have also noticed a change in his behavior as well. He is more confident, outgoing, and engaged in his general classroom and at home since starting Ignite. I myself was in GT programs throughout my youth. My parents have told me that the only feedback they ever got at my parent-teacher conferences was that I was doing fine with schoolwork, but I was quiet and seemed bored. However, in their meetings with my GT teacher, he expressed that I was engaged, challenged, and overall thriving. Without the GT program, I firmly believe I would not have had the success I have experienced in my adult life, including a college degree and a successful career. I hope that my kids will continue to have the opportunity to experience the same type of success. Thank you.
We'll have Paisley McLean and Grace Colleen come down as well.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Alana Crooks, and I am in third grade at Chester Valley Elementary. Thank you for offering me and others the time to address you. I am here today because I love and I have the opportunity to be in Ignite for the past two years. Right now, I'm learning about the periodic table of elements. If Ignite is cut off, I will miss the chance to learn the things that my teachers wouldn't have time to teach in the classroom. Things that wind doesn't cover. Doesn't cover. It is only two hours a week, and it's already not enough to me. My little sister would not even have the chance to be part of it if she ever gets tested. Now, about health, I am lucky that my mom and dad talk to me a lot about safety, my body, and other things. But not all kids have parents like mine. So many kids would not know about their bodies changing, personal safety, and hygiene. Last but not least, our health and Ignite teachers, Ms. Gilden and Ms. Hamery at Chester Valley, are amazing and really care for us. Having health and Ignite in the classroom would not be the same in Chester Valley Elementary. My mom asked me several times if I wanted to go home, but I wanted to stay and tell you this. My bedtime was one hour ago, and I'm still here. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Melanie Layden, and I'm the proud alum of Kincaid Elementary Ignite program. And I just want to speak to you a little bit about what 18 years of impact has had on me since a sixth grader at Kincaid Elementary. I'm multi-ethnic. I grew up impoverished. I lived off of food stamps, reduced lunch fares. I was in second grade in extremely low self-esteem, didn't think I was smart. I was actually failing at a second grade, believe it or not. And my teacher took a chance on me and had me test into Ignite programming. I thrived. I immediately became an A-plus student because I found newfound confidence in myself. I found new self-esteem. I believed in my ability to learn, and I just knew that I learned differently, and that's okay. What happened from there, after graduating, from leaving Kincaid, I thrived. I went to AP schools. I was ahead in middle school for math and sciences. I went on to the University of Alaska Anchorage, and I graduated with honors in economics in my undergrad. I went on to get my MBA. I worked in Wall Street for eight years as a trading assistant, where I would push the button on $100 million trades every single day. And I do think that that is the equivalent of someone taking a chance on me and someone believing in me when no one else would. You know, I just am so impressed by the kids here who are in Ignite. I mean, they're so confident and brave, and you can just tell that there's something special about them. And I think if you were to minimize Ignite into wind, I think you would be removing our future leaders. Like, I see these kids, and I'm like, wow, they're emerging leaders who are gonna be carrying Anchorage, gonna be carrying Alaska, and carrying other cities all over the world. And I'm excited to see what they do, and I think it's so important to see that I'm here. I know one other post-Ignite peer has spoken, but I have friends that I'm still friends with today from Ignite. My friend Sam is a weapons engineer for the Department of Defense. My friend Nathaniel is a world-acclaimed photojournalist for the National Geographic. There's so many people who are doing incredible things, even in our state of Alaska today. And I just implore you to keep Ignite as it is. It made a huge difference in my life. I don't think, I mean, I'm kinda getting emotional because I don't think, I think I would be a statistic if it weren't for that teacher taking a chance on me. And I just implore you to do the right thing. Keep Ignite. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Grace Colleen, and I'm currently attending Polaris K-12 School. I'm here to talk about the removal of Polaris's only security position. I apologize if I sound a little tired because I am. As most of you already know, our security guard is Mike Burns. First, I would like to say I completely understand how hard it is for you guys to make these cuts. I can only imagine the stress of trying to please everyone while also staying logical. With that said, Polaris compared to others is, in fact, a small school. Because of this, we only have one principal and one security guard. If you remove our security guard, our principal will have to take on his duties. Now, keep in mind, what Mike does already fills his entire day, from walking around the school to working out problems with students. Same with our principal. She already has many responsibilities that fill her day quickly. Having a security guard also allows students to work out their problems with as much time as needed. But when you have an already busy principal, she won't be able to work with students as long. For example, if a student has been acting up, Mike is able to pull them aside and talk to them to make sure the problem doesn't get out of hand. But when you remove Mike, you're also removing the amount of time students have to work through their problems. Another thing to keep in mind while making this decision is having a security guard also makes a lot of students feel safer. I can say for myself that when we're having Atlas drills, I feel a little better knowing we have Mike there. I understand that budget cuts are going to be made, but I also understand that I value safety over a lot of things. Finally, I would like to say thank you so much for allowing parents, staff, and especially students to give their opinions at these meetings. I know that you take what we say into consideration while making these decisions, and for that, I am thankful.
Can I have Blake Smith, Olivia Lee, Magana Steven Settle, and Alyssa O'Neal come forward?
Hi, my name is Paisley McLean. I'm a fifth grader at Trailside Elementary. I came here today to ask you guys to not remove Ignite. I really do enjoy it, and it's the one part of school that I am challenged at. And...
You're doing great.
I just really don't want it to be removed. It's a very exciting part of my week, and it's two hours a day compared to 30 minutes of wind time, which is not as much time as needed for explaining things and doing much more fun activities.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me. I come here as a mother of four.
Could you say your name, please?
Oh, Olivia Lee Magana.
And if there's anybody else who wants to testify, I don't see any other people lined up, but now would be a good time to step forward if I didn't call your name or something. Thank you. You'll get your timer.
Okay, yes. So I come as a mother of four, and all my children now go to Polaris. It's quite a privilege to be there. I've gotten to know Mike. And as an ASD employee, as a substitute teacher, I've had the privilege of working at hundreds of schools, literally. And one of the reasons I was incredibly happy is that that school is safe. My children are safe. It is come that our schools reflect our town. There are schools that I will not sub at because I do not feel safe. When I think of our school losing a security officer, I cringe. It is an industrial area. There has been somebody that's been run over. There's been a fire there. The children are very well behaved. I've been able to sub at the school. And every school has children that need help, and they do have that help. Maybe the expulsion rate is low. It's because there's early intervention there. You're not just getting a security guard. You're getting an assistant principal, almost. You're getting somebody that's teaching SEL from a very young level. When we were passing out Valentines, my daughter wanted to make sure that Mike got one. We heard a lot about the budget and how we don't have enough students enrolled. I've also homeschooled my children when they needed an extra math class, or they didn't feel okay at their neighborhood school. I took that step. As a homeschooling mother at the time, one of the number-one reasons that parents didn't have their children at ASD, they said safety. Because ASD has some amazing programs all over the district. They have PDAE, which is a homeschool program, and it's amazing. And yet, we gotta look to the future. We want to get those students. There isn't a decrease in birth rates here. There are a lot of parents that could have their children in ASD if they were safe, they felt safe. Another part of this is, we have a school. It's an alternative program. It's amazing. And I thought, oh, my gosh. You know, I'm out in the bush, and I'm at an assignment that's a great town. It's a little village. And I thought, you know, why are the kids happy here? Why do I feel safe as a woman to go out to these homes alone? And the number-one reason was, they have three VSPOs there. I will not go to a village where there isn't that. I can't defend, I can't go to a village and feel safe that I'm gonna come back home to my husband and my four children when I have to wait for a state trooper to come there. And that kinda makes me think of the school resource officers in the school district, serving for, you know, 11 different schools. And if that's what Polaris is gonna have, I don't know if my kids can stay there. Thank you.
The next two people who want to testify could come forward.
My name is, sorry, my name's Eric Johnson. I have a daughter in fourth grade. It's just an optional. She's also in the Ignite program. I sent you all a letter last week, so I won't repeat what's in there. But I got to thinking about how my daughter's Ignite education compared to my own. I grew up in a small town in Washington State in the late 1970s and early 1980s, and I was near the top of my class, and we had nothing like the Ignite program at the elementary level. We had pull-out reading. That was it. And I think back to what an Ignite-type of program would have done for people who may not have been academically strong, but had other talents that didn't come out through rote learning in the classroom. As a parent, I also have concerns about Polaris losing a security guard. I have concerns about elementary health being taught by PE. That just doesn't seem like the right solution. And as a state, we've got some huge challenges that we're facing right now. We're at a point of reckoning where we need to decide if we're gonna continue to sink, or if we're going to decide to raise up all of our population and fund it accordingly. So tonight, I urge you to table a vote on the budget and go back and look at it again and see if it could be reworked to save some of the things we've been talking about tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gastrock. I'm a mother of two students that have thrived from the Ignite program. And I just want to pull a passage from your ASD website. This is a promise that you've made to your community. Student learning, achievement, and lifelong success are the focus of the Anchorage School District. Within the district, families may have many academic choices to meet a variety of student needs. Equitable access and opportunity are keys to building a successful learning path for each student. The ASD believes that better education means better communities. Tomorrow's Anchorage depends on this enrichment of our students today, and that's a promise worth keeping. I respectfully ask that you honor this promise. I respectfully ask that you honor this promise to our advanced learners and not adopt the reorganization proposal to the Ignite program. Academically advanced children should be given the opportunity to work at their speed and level and nurture their talents, but also prevent them from becoming bored and detached from the educational process. Your proposed changes are impacting the only program available to our advanced learners. Gifted students should have access to learning opportunities that are faster paced and more complex that are usually available in their normal classroom setting. According to the National Association for Gifted Children, a survey found that seven of ten teachers noted that their brightest students were not challenged or given a chance to thrive in their classrooms. It's more than just giving these students a challenge in their classrooms. Gifted programming positively influences the students' futures. You've heard testimony tonight from several students that have come back and validated this research. Students, several studies show that gifted programs have a positive effect on students' post-secondary plans. Your promise makes a commitment to equitable access and opportunity to build successful learning path for each student. I don't believe your proposed changes to the Ignite program make good on your promise to building a successful learning path for advanced learners. Again, I respectfully ask that you reconsider these changes and reinstate the Ignite program as it currently exists. Thank you for listening to this testimony tonight.
Dr. Bishop, members of the board. Frank Howes, Principal of Service High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I spoke to you last meeting about security in our high schools and told you that Anchorage High Schools have a higher ratio of students to principals by nearly forty percent than other large urban high schools in Alaska. We have one principal to roughly four hundred students in Anchorage, while other Alaskan districts have one principal to around two hundred and fifty students. Parents of students at high schools in Palmer or Fairbanks or Kenai have nearly twice the support and supervision from principals that our high schools, high school students in Anchorage have. Today, I learned that I'm losing the security at service. Cuts impacting safety and security always seem to be top of mind, yet I'm not aware of any data that suggests school security is overfunded or unnecessary. Quite the opposite. I ask that you again to reconsider your cuts to school safety and security staff. You've heard testimony tonight that speaks directly to the vital role security provide in our schools. At service, we face the same difficulties expressed so eloquently by parents and students tonight if we lose the security. In addition, if I lose the security, I will be unable to offer in-school suspension as an alternative to out-of-school suspensions. We talk about reducing out-of-school suspensions and keeping students in school, but this decision to cut security will have the opposite effect, causing an increase to our out-of-school suspensions. As you think about cuts to high schools, I'd like you to keep in mind that we have more students in our high schools than enrollment numbers used for staff allocations reflect. Student data currently does not include students who are enrolled less than full-time at a high school, so students who have or take two or three classes at service aren't counted in enrollment numbers, yet they're still students. They still take seats in the classes and earn credit. They still have needs and require staff support. I'm fifty students away from keeping my security, but I have at least fifty students in my school that are not being counted. How many other schools are facing the same scenario? Thank you.
Board, we'll take a break at the end of testimony. Is there any other testimony?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Nicolai. I have a kindergartner and a two-year-old at home. When you are cutting an hour a week from elementary school education, you are cutting thirty-seven hours of instruction over the year. You are cutting two hundred and fifty-nine hours of instruction from a child between kindergarten and sixth grade. You're cutting eight weeks or two months out of my children's education. I am just beginning my journey with Anchorage School District, but I intend to be with you for the next fifteen or sixteen years as my children journey through Anchorage School District. I've seen these kids tonight and they are amazing, these fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders talking about their faculty. And I want my children to have that extra two months of education. And I beg you to please not take that from my children. I also ask in behalf of my colleagues who are school librarians, I know what it takes to run a library. They are highly trained professionals and you hired them because they are good at creating a collection that supplements and supports your curriculum and nurtures a love of reading. They will not have time to do that if they are also teaching social studies and science. So I ask for two things. Please keep the health teachers so that we are not cutting an hour or a week, which will equal two months of my children's education. Thank you.
Is there any other testimony on this action item? Okay, board, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Are you okay? All right, we'll be back in five minutes. All right, board members, please come back. We still have two hours' worth of work to try to get done. Board members, please come back. All right, board members, we still have a lot of work to do, so we're going to go back into session. I'm missing member Donnelly, member, oh, there he is. Member, let's see, who do we got? Member Mitchell, there she is. All right, all right. I love it, I love it. Okay. So we finished public testimony, thank you all. And now we will open it up for a board discussion. And remember, if at eleven o'clock, we, just please help me remember if, when we hit eleven, we have to vote to extend it to midnight and we cannot go past midnight. Sure. Yeah, who would like to open up board discussion? Oh, Ms. Fekales?
Okay, I'm, when I started out this night, I really did not want to go down the amendment rabbit hole, but I think I'm going to. And so, here we go. So here's my first one, and we'll just take them, I guess, one at a time. Is it two-point-two million for, two-point-three? I move to add two-point-three million dollars for Ignite funding from our unallocated reserves for one year. And then I'll wait to discuss it unless I get a second.
I'll second.
Okay, okay. All right, so coming into this, it's very interesting as I come into this because I'm doing it as a board member, but also as a parent of a kid who went through Ignite and is in the HG program at Roaming and understanding, you know, just the complex way these kids learn. And I think other board members have some of this experience as well. One of, as a parent, one of my biggest challenges with something like this would be how fast this came on and not understanding what was next for their kids. And so I can relate to it from that aspect. We know as board members, going into next year's budget, we're going to have another fifteen million dollar budget gap to close and we're going to be faced with these decisions again. But I think that we have an opportunity, without killing our reserves, to keep Ignite in place for one year while we make the commitment to ourselves and to our community and to our kids to take this year to go through whatever redesign or remodeling or whatever is needed to make sure that we are giving these kids what they need instead of doing it now, give ourselves the year to do this and take the time. And it's probably the only way I would support this, I'm quite honestly, is if we do it with the understanding that it is for one more year. It's not an in-perpetuity kind of thing that I'm going to, you know, suggest taking these out of savings. But for this one year, for this purpose, for this way, this is what I would be comfortable supporting.
Yes, member Holland?
Would this also mean that the health program would stay the same that the other proposed changes to elementary? The late start would go away?
This is just for Ignite program.
Just for Ignite, but not any of the other funds?
Madam Chair. Yeah. The other funds in regard to other programming and all cuts and redesigns and everything that we brought forward under those parameters, last board meeting, we presented the change that could happen in the PTR, and we heard that a couple times tonight, that that, for that total amount, that what that change looked like in a PTR was about one per grade level and that is what was drawn up. So there is an alternate, that amount of money for the health and all those others was quite larger than this one. And it was inclusive of the one FTE for really, pretty much, that was almost five million, that would almost cover quite a bit of the, the needs at elementary school. Which would include Ignite and health. That one did. This one was just Ignite. Remember Bellamy?
Okay, so I'm still trying to get back to Andy's question. I mean, I had a similar one to Andy's. So, but right now, we're only talking about Ignite. And so the two-point-three million would bring, would, for a year, would, would leave things as they are while we redesign with the staff involved in the redesignment? Is that your intent?
I wouldn't be the one to say how the redesign would be done or anything like that, or if they use the coaches out of Title IV or wherever they're going to do it, but I'm just proposing to fund the Ignite portion out of our unallocated reserves. And that's it, that's as far as.
So then my follow-up question, again, I'm sorry. Dr. Bishop, could you explain what's going to happen with libraries, health, and PE?
Good question, Madam Chair. PE is PE, it's, it's still here. Yeah, that, in fact, we were looking to increase PE time for kids. The difference, if this was, if we didn't take any money out of reserve, if you looked at the four-point-seven million, all the changes at the elementary are encompassed in that, which we presented last week, that, you know, there is this change in PTR. which we presented last week, that, you know, there is this change in PTR that could be made up, or all these thinking outside the box and the parameters that were given. So, the difference, if you took 4.7, 2.3, just take the difference, and then that would be an adjustment to the PTR. We provided the data of a .5 and a 1.0.
Okay, thank you.
So, any comments on Member Vakalis's motion, Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I'd move a substitute motion, my board amendment number 1A, which would restore Ignite funding and fund it with a 15% reduction of administrative costs in state functions 510 and 550, which are the non-classroom administrative costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Donnelly, can you speak to your motion, please?
Yeah, this would be a way to actually fund the Ignite program rather than going into reserves, which is, if that's our last resort, I'm probably going to support, but I think a much better public policy is to come up a way to fund the Ignite program, and we heard public testimony tonight that encouraged us to target administrative costs, and these costs are code, are in a class that's identified by the State Department of Education as being the non-classroom-related administrative costs. So I think they are traditionally the kind of thing the public thinks about when they think about administration, and not those that are in the direct classroom supportive categories, and those are determined by the State Department of Education. So, by doing a 15% reduction in those categories, it generates everything but, it generates just short of 2.2 million dollars, which is the Ignite program's cost, and you would still need about $56,000 to come from the fund balance, which I identified here, but that's a, that's a pretty insignificant amount when compared to the current proposal to draw 6 million from the fund balance, to balance this budget.
And Dr. Bishop, for clarification, could you read off what that, the specifics of that would be?
Sure, 510, these are the jobs in 510, well, the school board and compensation, and the clerical, so Katie, and then the school board, your salaries, the superintendent's salary, the chief financial officer, Jim, the deputy superintendent, the chief operating officer, Tom, who runs the maintenance and the safety, assessment, our public information officer, our HR director, the other people in the office of management and budget, who do payroll purchasing, the risk manager, obviously all payroll, all HR, or the leads in those, your EEO officer, Mike Weckenstein, Kathy Moffett over there, and your warehouse specialist. So those functions of your district that keep your district going, if you're looking at 15%.
So those are 510, right?
Those are 510s, yeah.
And it's also 550, which is administrative support services, which the current budgeted amount is 8,360,000, and the 510 category, the budget amount is 5,900,000.
Correct, yeah, 550, I don't have that list, but about 100 of those 50 people are in IT, they run the ITs of the school, so they're not, they're located here, but they're in the schools. We can list those, we can certainly look at 15%, but, I mean, I'm just sharing, I'd like the board to give a direction of, like, which parts of the district you don't want to run.
Well, that direction.
All right, so we won't do back and forth, because other board members get a chance to speak. So if everybody else gets a turn, then we'll come back to you. So we're speaking on Mr. Donnelly's substitute motion on using 15% reductions in 510 and 550 positions. Anybody want to speak on it? Oh, Member Marset?
Yes, so, I hear Mr. Donnelly, but I also know that.
Star, we can't hear you?
Star, you're cutting out.
Okay.
That's good.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I personally know that when I go through the district office, we have Jim Anderson and Andy Ratcliffe, and one other that is overseeing our budget. They are doing, I mean, they're working weekends, I mean, they're not, they're not working any less than anybody else in the district, and wherever I go, and that's from the ed office to teachers, everyone tells me they cannot do one more thing. We've got Doreen, who now oversees ELL and Title VII. Everybody is doing more. I can't see, Dr. Bishop hasn't had a raise in three years, I think it's going on four now, and we are a large organization, and these people work hard, and they deserve their salaries, just as our teachers and everyone else does. I cannot support this, knowing that we have already made cuts to the district, and that those individuals are just as stressed as our teachers, and everyone in our district is doing more with less.
So, I think, we'll let Dr. Bishop say her question.
I just want to declare that 550, I did make some errors, the risk management, the HR, EEO, those are in 550. So I, the tech people, those are 550, 510 was your office and my office and assessment. But I wasn't, like, just saying value this or that, I mean, we run as a district. I just want to know, like, which ones of those functions don't you want, or like, to have happen?
Okay, Member Donnelly?
Yeah, and in response to that, Madam President, the amendment says this reduction can be allocated across budget line items within 510 and 550 as decided by the administration to best minimize impacts. So I actually have the written instruction in here.
Does everybody have a copy of Member Donnelly's substitute motion? Oh, Member Holloman?
Well, I did second for the purpose of discussion on this, I'm not going to be in support of it, and part of it is, as a function of the board, to reach this deep into the budget, it's a significant chunk of change, it's not really that many people. I mean, it does add up to hundreds, like 200, or something like that, but it's a fairly focused group of people, and it's, and it's a big chunk, it's a significant chunk of that budget. And I think what the superintendent is alluding to is, at that point, you can't simply go in and, you can't cut those people to 35 hours a week, you can't just arbitrarily mark down salaries. You do have to let people go, and their responsibilities are pretty large. As I know, people in the room and people in the public always want us to fire all of the administrators. As a former classroom teacher, I think that would be awesome. But, but the truth is, they have to be there for the district to work right. Payroll has to work, or we don't have a district. IT has to work really consistently, or people will not use it in instruction, or for what they're doing. Similarly, operations and the maintenance of the buildings, and keeping things warm, et cetera, et cetera. If the administration comes to us with a proposal to reduce positions, and they feel like they can still operate, I'm all for that, but I, I feel like when it goes the other way, we're just kind of handing the superintendent a big knife and saying, "Go find something to wipe off here, and let us know what it is." I don't think that's a fair way for us to administer the budget.
I'm going to encourage us to move forward, so if you don't have any other comments on the substitute motion, we can vote on it, but if you have something to say, we'll have a turn. All right, are we ready to vote on the substitute motion? Thank you. Okay, she got it. Oh, I'm sorry, so the substitute motion fails, six nays, one yays. So now we're back to Member Vakalis's original motion to pull 2.3 million for Ignite funding from unallocated reserves for one year. Any other discussion on that motion? Member Holloman?
I'd like to ask the superintendent or a member of our staff to talk about what a few million dollars out of funds, reserve funds means to the district. It may be 4 million, or maybe 5 million.
Sure, through the Chair, to Member Holloman. Jim Anderson, our CFO, we did look at that, and it does fall within the parameters of the board. So, when it came up, he took a look, he's texting me, so go ahead and share.
Absolutely, through the President, to Member Holloman. In the preliminary budget, we put 6 million dollars to prevent additional cuts to classroom teachers. An extra 2.3 would bring hypothetically, at the start of the fiscal year, assuming we end at 10%, would bring us to about 8.7% fund balance. We anticipate being able to get back the 6 million dollars. We haven't done the math yet on the other 2.3, but, you know, we still would be sitting pretty good at the end of the next fiscal year. Not, maybe not at 10%, but certainly well into the nine plus.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I also add, there was a comment today about unallocated money in elementary. Just so you know, those are the holdback teachers, that when the class sizes come and fall in the fall, so just, for an understanding, they're just unallocated, but they go to schools, so they're not floating out there anywhere. Once we find out where the children move, families move, then they're allocated at that time because of the changes. Just wanted to be clear about that as well.
President Marset?
Yes, you know, I do want to say something, I'm a little worried with taking more money out of our reserves, because we know next year, we're going to be facing these same tough issues. And, you know, every district, every department in the district has been asked to cut so that classrooms will not be impacted. We have closed two schools and merged four programs, and I'm always saddened when programs are cut. And it was not easy to close a school last year, and listen to those students, parents, and staff testify to save their school. You know, so there's, the Ignite program, I see this as an opportunity to expand this wonderful program to many other students who are also bored and not being challenged and falling through the cracks. Our staff and teachers are overburdened, everywhere I go, I told you I hear that they can't do one more thing. Our elementary schools are without counselors, and in some schools, sheer counselors, with one counselor serving 900 students. We are able to keep Ignite and help teachers employed, but that may not be the case in the future. I'm just concerned, I want to keep everything, but that's just not reality, and I think we have to make tough decisions, and this is a decision I see that we have to make, and possibly can look at a different way to offer this program and not have to do away with it.
All right, well, I'll say, I agree with Member Marset, and I agree with everybody else. I like the idea of not doing things without, I mean, these are real lives, we heard real people, real lives. Does it make it better to say, "We're going to make the change in a year"? I would be concerned if people didn't hear that, that the money isn't there, that we're just taking it out of our savings account, and they're... Well, I know you hear that part, but is that, you know, we had all of these three-plus hours of testimony, and then we put it in, and everybody says, "Oh, well, it's all fine now, we got Ignite again", but are we effectively communicating that we do not have the money for that and many other things?
I didn't want to prescribe how to, you know, work on a redesign plan, because that really is a management thing, but, you know, maybe, you know, now that everything is open the way that it is, it gives either Ignite teachers, or Ignite parents, or Ignite students a chance to participate in that process, which is something that wasn't had in the last two weeks. And so, that would be, I guess, my thought towards that.
Member Mitchell, and then Donnelly?
So, I, I like this idea, I think that the Mount Spur closure, to me, is not really a comparable situation because we were able to transfer those students to another school, and they got the same services that they had in the school they were in. It's always painful to close a school, obviously, and that was a very successful school. But I think that having time to, you know, and we talked about this in the work session, having, giving the, I know that a couple of years ago, the gifted department was starting to look at different alternatives, and I don't know if they were looking at that with them specifically with the idea of cutting costs, but I, there are some really smart minds in giving them time to think about this and come up with a different solution, and, you know, who knows what could happen in a year? Maybe there could be some grant funding that is not, that can be used for the classroom, that could be applied. I mean, there's a lot of things, these are families that are very committed, and teachers who are, have really bright students, a couple of the teachers have even said, "Let's have our students look at some solutions", you know. So I think a lot can happen in a year, and I think that they're going to get the message loud and clear that this is not, you know, it's not for eternity, it's a respite, and let's get some ideas. I, you know, just hearing all of the, I do think that there is an equity issue here, and when I have gone into Title I schools and seen these kids who, nobody thought that they had potential, and they, somebody saw that spark in them, and, you know, we heard some testimony tonight, they, you know, for my kids, they would get opportunities no matter what, but for many kids, if we take this program away, they, there's nothing that will give them that incentive and help them fulfill their potential. So I think it is really critical that we try to figure out a way to do this in a way that's thoughtful and not rushed. I am, and the other thing that I'm concerned about is, you know, if we, I think that the instructional coach, I think the teachers are not necessarily going to welcome another set of instructional coaches, and I also am concerned, you know, that that's Title IV funding, what if that goes away? And then there's nothing left, right? And I, during one of the testimonies, it raised a question in my mind whether we do get a multiplier for gifted children. I don't, I think the answer is no, but I'm just not sure about that.
We do get a multiplier for gifted children.
We do, okay, okey-dokey, well then, yeah. So that helps a little bit, I would think, right?
Okay, don't take my word, then, somebody else is.
Yeah, so those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Madam President. So, my first choice, and I, I think we need to restore the Ignite funding, but my first choice is to find a way to pay for it. So, at the last meeting, I proposed an amendment that would utilize 2.8 million dollars by reducing planning time in middle school from two periods to one period. And that was more than enough to pay for Ignite, but the board did not pass that proposal. And tonight, I proposed a way to reduce administrative costs to pay for Ignite, and if those were the best two options I could find for actually funding this replacement of these Ignite funds, I really do believe there's 15% can be achieved in administrative reductions, but that's biased now. Although it's not my preferred way of doing it, I believe Ignite's so important, and I'm willing to... willing to utilize the fund balance and vote for this main motion that's before us now. But I was wondering, how does it read? Because I do think the concept that this is a one-time utilization of fund balance is very important from fiscal responsibility point of view. And if that's, okay, it just says for one year, okay. So, that's really important.
Member Holloman?
Well, I do want to back up, and the problem with changing the middle school model is it's not really doing away with planning time. The planning time doesn't cost you anything. You have to do away with two positions in each of our middle schools. Two people have to leave the building. And it's kind of the same issue with the administrative cuts, is if there were three art teachers in our middle schools, and four or five foreign language teachers, and a couple of applied tech teachers, then you could go in and reduce, and you'd increase class size, but everything would still be there. But I think in most of them, there's one art teacher, and there may be a French and a Spanish teacher, and one of those may be part-time. And there's one applied tech teacher, and I don't think there are very many business head teachers. So, you're actually going in, eliminating programs out of those schools, because you're down to where it's not an abstract department, it's bodies, and two of them would have to leave every single school to get the savings you're talking about. They could still have two planning times from the people that are left, if they can figure out a magical way to work the schedule. I'm in favor of this, and I do think we need to be very strong with the public, that it's not even really a savings account, it is reserve funds that a large organization needs to have on hand in order to function safely. And they don't grow back. I think the idea is a lot of people have, it's sort of like a savings account, it's there when you really need it, but it's not exactly that. It's more like a cushion, and when you spend some of it, the cushion's gone, and the administration will have to spend time trying to figure out how to put it there again, so that we do operate safely. But again, I want them to be the ones that look into the budget and pick the specific spots and say, "Okay, we think we can do away with this position," and still go forward in a safe and reasonable manner. And I think that's their role properly, and it keeps us from getting in there. So, yeah, I'm in support of doing this and keeping Ignite in its basic form for at least one year. Emphasizing to the public, we are doing a stopgap. We're doing something we can't sustain. Hopefully, we can take the energy that's going on in the room tonight and refocus that, and this state is in the middle of a real discussion about how we want our state to go forward. We've got a massive austerity budget proposed, and there's huge pushback, and we're in, really, for the legislative fight of a lifetime about all kinds of things. Are we going to have ferries? Are we going to have pioneer homes? Are we going to have an education system that we can be proud of? Those are the questions that are there on the table right now, and we're going to find out. And if it goes one way, Ignite will be long gone and all kinds of other things. And if it goes the other way, we may actually be looking at putting a system back like we had 20 years ago, if we can get there. But I think a one-year use of fund balance to keep this going makes sense, given the climate in the state right now.
I'm inclined to support it, given the assumption that it will not appear in the budget book next year, that this isn't going to be a reoccurring payment. We won't see it proposed next year. This is a planning year for a funding reduction, redesign with stakeholder input. So, I want to keep us going. If you have any more comments on Member Vekalas's motion, otherwise, we can vote on it.
Oh, okay, Star, go ahead.
You know, it's not that I'm opposed to keeping it another year, it's just that we will be in the same situation we are today, because parents and students will think, because we saved it this year, we'll be able to save it next year. And there are so many things, and it's not that I don't want the best for our students, I don't want anybody to think that, you know, I'm targeting anyone. I'm just very concerned that we're just prolonging something that we're eventually going to have to do anyway. I mean, my hope is that some magical way, we'll come up with something. But I do say, see this as an opportunity to expand this program to other students, and I just don't want to be here next year with, you know, 50 people testifying, knowing that we don't have the funds next year.
Member Mitchell?
I guess the only thing I wanted to add, I mean, you said, you know, you want to make it clear that we're going to be making this cut next year. I guess my perspective is, we need to have a discussion, we need to look at how this might be able to be reimagined, and we need to look at the entirety. Is it going to be exactly cut, the way we're proposing cutting it this year? It might not. It might look different. So, I just want to put that out there.
Well, if it's not this program, it'll be something else we cut next year, then.
I would like to clarify that I heard that the funds wouldn't, not the program.
Right.
So, we would just have to say, we have to address ASD again, whether it's everything, so that the 2.3 million would not reoccur, but certainly, we're not saying now that we would not have any, you know, right, okay.
Sorry, there are going to be very tough decisions to make next year, for sure. And I guess, you know, it's just, the timing is tough. It would be nice if we could do this over three meetings instead of two meetings, because we had a lot of testimony tonight, we had a lot of input to hear. It's a lot to process, for me, anyway. My mind doesn't work maybe as quickly as some of your minds do. And, you know, even, you know, having it spread over three meetings would be more helpful to me personally, you know, or getting it to the public sooner, so that we could have had more testimony last time. I don't know, just, there's, it is difficult to have it, you know, presented at one meeting with really almost, you know, people didn't have time for testimony, and now we got all of it, and there's just not, I would, it would be helpful to me to have a little more time to process it, is all I'm saying.
Any other comments? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to point out that we don't know what our fiscal condition will be a year from now, so it's really hard to make a, I don't think we should be saying, "This is what we're going to do a year from now." It could be a very different circumstance, and there might, you know, you can't really plan that far ahead, because we don't know what level of funding we will have.
And I'll just say, to Member Donnelly's point, that is the heart of why we're here. We don't know how much money we're going to have, year after year after year. So, we can't plan, but I just don't want to give a false impression that suddenly there might be more money next year. That is not up to us or anything we can control. I hear people say, "Why don't you raise taxes? We don't have that authority. We can only do bake sales. We can't get more money." So, that's not something we can control, and I want to make sure we effectively communicate that. Member Bellamy?
I support the motion, mostly because I want to have time for parents and students and the administration to come together, and knowing that we are doing this for a year, the program will continue, how will it continue? So, that process, I think, is a very healthy process for all involved.
All right, are we ready to vote on the motion? Thank you. All right, that motion passes, six yea, one nay. Are there any other amendments, or, okay, I saw a member Donnelly's hand first.
You're too fast.
Thank you, Madam President. We heard the concerns with reducing the number of security personnel, and this is for the first time tonight, Principal Hauser raised the issue of service also. So, the budget as it sits now has a reduction in, for Polaris, Chugiak, and Diamond, security personnel, and if it continues on into next year, I guess service would be down one person to. So, my amendment number two, that the members have, I'm going to customize it to the testimony we heard from Mr. Principal Hauser, and add service to that, to speak the reinstatement of the four security personnel at Polaris, Service, Chugiak, and Diamond, and pay for that with a 2% reduction in the administrative costs in the state functions 510 and 550 line. So, I would, I just, I, really quickly...
Okay, I'm not hearing a second to your motion, Member Donnelly. Does any, is that correct?
Just as a point of clarification, I don't see, I see what you're trying to do to amend your motion as written, but how can you fund a position that hasn't been cut yet? And I guess, I know that's part of the discussion, but you're trying to, that doesn't make sense to me, I guess.
You want amendment two?
Yeah, amendment two.
Do you want to make a friendly one?
Oh, well, my understanding was that Principal Hauser had been informed that service was, in addition to Diamond, Polaris, and Chugiak, was going to lose a security officer, and that he was just advised of that today. So, my understanding would be, that would take effect next year, because the metrics had fallen below, just tiny bit below the metric standard, so that we would anticipate that that position would be gone during the next budget year. So, I really don't want to see us cutting any security officers at this point in time. I just think with what's going on nationally with the safety of our schools, they're just too essential at this point for us to be cutting them.
In the interest of time, could we have them check on what you asked about, and then come back to your motion?
Yes.
Could you just want to withdraw it for a minute, and then we'll come, and then we'll just do it again a little bit?
Yeah, if I, I would withdraw it until we get a clarification of whether the service security officer would be in next year's budget or not.
All right. Member Holloman?
I'd like to offer an amendment that we eliminate the cuts in health instruction and realignment of library time and other elementary changes, including the start time, and pay for that by a fractional rise in the PPR at elementary. And I don't actually have it written.
Eliminate cuts in health instruction and library time, including start time changes, and pay for it with a fractional rise in PPR in elementary.
That sounds really good.
Like a .25, yeah, whatever it would take to cover the cost.
I'll second that.
Yeah. And Deana seconded. Member Holloman, would you speak to your motion?
We got partly there with the, what we've done with the Ignite program. I do think it's worth looking at whether or not we can improve the delivery of any of these, but outside the budget time, this, in essence, would let us continue our elementary program status quo, with the exception, we're going to see a slight rise in classroom numbers, and that's painful, because I think everybody here knows they're already too high. But it would keep the teachers in place, keep the programs in place. If there are ways that the administration sees to streamline the delivery of that, then we could look at that, again, with more time in the fall, prior to actually running up on the budget at that point.
And I have a couple of clarifications. The document that we made for your questions, it would actually be a .5 PTR increase at the elementary level in each of their grades, and that makes up 2.4 million dollars, and that coupled with the 2.3 that's out of fund balance is the 4.7, that would have been a full FTE. So, and it's just because they fall in different categories, depending on, you know, how many kids are in primary, how many kids. It's not one even number, it's one to each. I think it'll start at, you know, 22, it'll go to 23, 23 will go to 4, 24. So, it's not one variable we're dealing with. That's why the numbers aren't equated equally, because they're not equal. So, that does make up, if you put a .5 FTE, and we listed the schools that would be affected by that, they're on the sheet. And then, I can give you, last year, the security guard at Service was reduced due to the metric last year. However, it was covered with, let's see, they covered it with the security guard for one year with the holdback. The holdback funds that they have for teachers and other staff where they go, they covered it this year, with the notion that it would be a one-year cover. So, it is catching up with Service moving into next year, to your point.
To Member Holloman's motion, I just wanted to say, we talked about this in Finance Committee today, that .5 PTR is just taking classroom teachers out. It's, you know, either we're doing the health changes, or we're taking it from the classroom. So, I, and our direction to Dr. Bishop was not to increase PTR, and that's what she presented to us, and I'll continue to support not increasing class sizes. It doesn't mean one is, that health teachers aren't incredibly important, but that's a parameter we gave, and I'm going to honor it. Anyone else want to speak on Member Holloman's motion?
Member Mitchell?
Well, again, it, you know, the timing is just tough. I think, I think health is, you know, again, from the testimony tonight, it is, we do have some of the highest rates of sexual, probably the highest rates of sexual abuse in the country. We have, we have all kinds of issues that are, you know, I heard a couple of people say anecdotally that OCS and the Police Department both love the health program, because it has caused students to speak up much more about issues that they're dealing with in their homes, and provided opportunities to help them. It would be interesting to get some numbers around that. I mean, we've had the health curriculum for, what, 12 or 13 years? If we have any data around, do students feel safer? Are they safer? I mean, it, again, we can't do this forever. It, I know that the classroom teachers used to cover health, and I know that it can be covered in PE, but I think that the units that they have now, the curriculum that is there, is very in-depth, and it is very, just, there's a lot of information, and it's repeated a lot, and I, our classroom teachers, again, just, I feel like they don't have the bandwidth to add much else. But, you know, maybe the principals feel like this is a palatable, it would be, it would be interesting to hear what they think is a better...
Through the Chair, to Member Mitchell. Yes, we do have data on the feeling of safety, and that is through the Board's, the connectedness survey that we have, and students, I think some of the way that they're worded, and we could look into this, is generally in classrooms, they're good, but it's in those other hallways. They feel bullied by each other in online things. So, that, safety has not increased because of just being in school, so they let you know that. The one thing that did increase was interesting, we did have some increases in other things that we could go over. But I do want to clarify that the 24 teachers that we're getting with the .5, will cover 24 teachers, the 2.4 million, we would need to take five additional teachers from the holdback that we have, that was mentioned earlier, that's a little over a million dollars, to make up the entire amount of health teachers, because there were 28, 28 and a half. So, just wanted to clarify that it's actually a little more, it can still be done. It's, we'd also, we would have to make it work through holdback teachers as well, for all health to be restored.
Member Bellamy, did you have one? And then I know, Member, or President Marseth is waiting, right?
Well, it just seems like we, as a Board, I think we have to do a better job of our priorities. I mean, we're chipping away at every priority that we've given to the administration. And I could see why we're doing it, but at the same time, we've got to do a better job of setting guardrails, making sure that we give them, because they've wasted a lot of time. And so, I think in our governance and in our duties, we've just got to do better. So, I am... our duties, we've just got to do better. So I am, I am not going to support this because I do not want to increase class size. That, that's very important to me. And I think that's very important to our kids and to our staff.
President Marsette, and if we're ready to vote after that, we'll have that opportunity.
So I would agree that, as a board, we were asked what were our priorities to give to the district to look at this budget, and the number one priority was not to impact our classroom size. Um, I do feel like the district has spent a lot of time, um, in answering all of our questions, some of them the night before. Um, at this point, if this were to go through, I'd vote to hold budget down, only because we are just reinstating everything they've told us through their expertise, is what we need to do. And it doesn't matter what we're going to cut. There's going to be people there testifying for everything that, you know, I would be there too. If it, if it was my child, or if it was my position, I'd be there testifying. I have been there testifying before. But as a school board, we've got to, um, I, you know, we can't say one thing and do another. And I understand that there's a lot of people there. I understand, um, you know, that we're asking people to do more with less. I, I get it. But as a school board, we have to be able to make these tough decisions, and if we're not going to trust our administration, our district, to present a budget to us, and if we don't like it, then let's just send it back to them and say, start over, because that's what we're doing. We're just reinstating everything they're cutting.
Uh, Member Vicalis and then Member Holloman? Oh, sorry, guys, we got to vote to extend this meeting. I don't want to forget. Uh, could somebody move to extend the meeting until midnight, please? Okay, is everybody okay with that? I don't, I don't know what I'm supposed to do here.
Okay, fine. All second. First, second.
First, second. I have a motion to extend the meeting until midnight. Any objection? Okay, remember, we only have an hour left. I want to finish five minutes earlier than last year. Member Holloman?
Okay. Um, so I appreciate the spirit of what, uh, Miss, uh, Member Holloman is trying to do, but based on the sheet that we got earlier today, it's 21 of 58 of our schools that are going to be impacted by 1 to 1.5. And that's not just incrementally taking across the entire district and adding like 1 PTR, you know, to each. It, it just, it, the math doesn't work. And so I understand what you're trying to do, but the way it would come out there is, there'd be schools that would end up doing more combo classes, and they'd be losing the whole, it, it just, that, that one's harder for me. I, I understand the spirit. I just, I can't support it, um, just based on what we got earlier today. And I think the impact would be great, too great on our elementary kids.
Member Holloman?
Well, I do want to say, we, we all have the priority of reducing class size, and, and it's no accident that that was the number one thing on surveys. It was the number one thing we said. But the reality is, until the administration brings us back a budget that holds class size harmless, which they did, we don't really know what that means. I won a Mercedes until I walk into the dealership and find out what one cost, and then, and then I readjust. We readjusting. Um, yes, there are a lot of people, they talk about the value of Ignite, and it's not so much the numbers or the passion as much as I think they're right. Um, when somebody comes back that, that was in the Ignite program 20 years ago, went off and became a doctor, and now they're raising their kids here in Anchorage, that says something to me, that, that goes beyond just their personal desires and whatnot, but this is a program that's working. So I see us resetting our priorities based on the information. Um, I think the administration did a good job in trying to find chunks, big chunks of money in order to hold class size constant. And I'll say, I, if that's what we've really got to give up, I don't think it's worth it. And I do think the one big value of letting class size float a little bit is we can dial that back down a month from now, if more money comes out of the legislature. And, and I think there's potential for it. I wouldn't want to bet my, my house on it, but I might, I might bet one of the crappy cars I've got in the driveway on it. Um, I think there's, there's potential to at least get some, and you can dial back class size with one more teacher, or three more teachers, or four more teachers. But if we had to restore the health program, if we had to try to put libraries back, if we had to restore Ignite, we have to get like 20 or 30. And that's, that's a huge jump to make. So again, um, if things continue to decline, obviously, we're not going to be able to hold the line on this. Um, if they don't, this is one of the easiest things to repair out of the cuts that we're making. Um, and I'm just a little more optimistic about the future, I think, than, than maybe I should be. So I, I hope we will keep this going for one more year. I, I will say, it is interesting when people talk about that. As a classroom teacher, you're constantly putting a whole lot of effort into things that last for 45 minutes and they go away. And, and you're not going to do them again for a whole year, because you're working with one group of kids. So to some degree, education is like that. You, you put a whole bunch of effort in, it happens, and then you push it aside for a long time, and then you get it out again a year later. So you, you're starting to experience some of the pain of a classroom teacher. I think that's kind of awesome. Thank you.
Uh, if, Member Donnelly, as in more comments. Does anybody else have comments, or, oh, Star, yeah, oh, we'll do Dave, and then Star. Great. Not trained to arrest you.
Okay. Um, yeah, this, this is a tough choice, because I, you know, uh, librarians and health, I mean, my mom was a school nurse, public health nurse, so I, I, you know, it's very personal to me, you know, health classes. But the impacts on the classrooms, the trade-off here, I mean, just, you know, one teacher out of an elementary school is just so significant, what happens with combo classes and trying to balance everything out, that, that although I really understand and, and acknowledge the, the need here and the sentiment, I, I just, I'm, I'm just, continue to be, just, I have to go back to the priority of the classroom and, and trying to hold down the number of kids in our classes.
Member Marsette, or President?
So, if, uh, if we're looking at increasing class size, and we've given everybody else the opportunity to speak when the budget has affected them, are we going to ask classroom teachers what they think about increasing their class sizes, um, overkeeping health teachers? Because we're giving everybody else that opportunity.
I will say, and the people I've talked to, and it's not a full representative sample, but a lot of classroom teachers have said they would much rather have a couple more students than another prep, than looking at either Ignite or the health program, um, as, as an additional thing that they have to prepare for. And I'm sure it's not unanimous. I don't want to present it that way, but this has a big impact on classroom teachers if we realign health back into another, into another thing. Um, I do think it's key to understand the health curriculum is kind of a delicate conversation, is sensitive stuff that you're talking about with kids. The people that do it exclusively get a whole lot better at it than someone who only does it occasionally can ever do. Um, you learn what kids understand, you learn what gets them upset, you learn how to get, how to get instruction across without crossing that line to where they're actually frightened or, or frustrated or, or whatever happens. So I, I think there's an awful lot of value in a specialist there, um, as opposed to, uh, classroom teachers absolutely can learn to do it, but it becomes one more thing they've got to do rather than a thing they focus on.
Is there any other comments on Member, whose, whose motion is this? Uh, Member Holloman's motion. Yes, Member Mitchell?
So, um, I would echo what Andy said. I, the teachers I've talked to have said, I would prefer to have one or two more students in my class. But it's, it's not universal, but looking at these numbers makes it look like that's not the way it really is going to play out. It's going to play out in a very lumpy way, because if I'm a building and I'm losing one teacher because of this, that's having, it's not just increasing every class by one student, it's really messing with my whole, my whole set of numbers. So, um, I, I think, based on what I'm seeing here, I'm, as much as I agree with Andy on many of his points, I think I am going to vote against it.
Are we ready to vote on Member Holloman's amendment? All right. Okay, Katie? Okay, that motion fails, six nay to one yea. Member Holloman, did you want to do your motion now?
We're kind of changing.
It's like 11 o'clock, right?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd go back to, uh, the modified amendment number two. So the members have it before them. It's amendment number two, and it would, it would be revised, so instead of adding security at Polaris, Chugiac, and Diamond, it would also add, uh, the security personnel that were scheduled to lose at service. And the funding source would be a 2% reduction across line items, uh, 510 and 550. It generates about $285,000, which my calculation would just, you know, within a few thousand dollars cover the four security personnel.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Member Donnelly, you may speak to your motion.
Thank you. Um, this board passed a resolution last year, um, asking the city to, uh, expand our police presence to all our middle schools, and unfortunately, the municipality hasn't chose to act on that. I just don't feel comfortable cutting our security, uh, capability at this time. Uh, we all know what's going on nationally in schools. Um, I just think that when we looked at the list of the priorities, it was class size, and it was safety. And this is safety. And, um, and I didn't want to pick out just Polaris, although the students did a wonderful job advocating for their school, but I think it also applies to the other schools that are scheduled to lose their security personnel too. I, I just think all parents, you know, have that as a, as one of the one or two top priorities for, for our kiddos in schools to be secure. And I just don't feel comfortable, you know, in the big picture of things, reducing those security guards at this time.
Member Holloman, and then Member Vicalis?
Um, I, I had originally planned a motion to at least restore the Polaris security guard, just because I, I could not handle the idea of not having anyone at a school, that, uh, that that was their primary concern. But it is, it is a huge concern across the district. As Superintendent mentioned earlier during conversation, that since Christmas, we've found a gun every week somewhere in our district. Did I get that right? And the, the other part I, I learned as a classroom teacher, observing security personnel and the assistant principals, they spend a lot of their time talking to the kids where these kinds of problems come from. Um, I didn't understand it at first, because I, I figured kids like that would avoid security, and they would avoid assistant principals. But in fact, they do establish working relationships with them, um, to where they talk to each other. And, and that really is the thing that's going to keep a frustrated kid from walking into our school one day with a gun. So I, I do consider all of them critical. Um, I know a lot of people look at them as, um, not teaching positions. I think that's erroneous. I think they matter a whole lot, and I do support this.
Our entire budget is, you know, focused on K through 12. That is, you know, what our, the heart of our mission is and what, you know, we are to do. Um, we are looking at everything from, you know, security to principals to class sizes to, um, enrichment program. We're looking at everything inside of this budget. Um, it's all been presented. Part of this amendment, Mr. Donnelly, is 2% of, you know, administrative reduction at the administration's discretion. What if that comes from the $188,000 from the FEMA funded positions for the apprenticeship program that does not help our K-12 kids? Are you okay with that?
Member Bellamy, turn.
That was a question to...
You can go ahead, and, well, we don't really ask questions of one another.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the amendment. Can I do that?
You can make a, amend the motion.
So today, I, I do have a, so today we learned of $150,000 gift from somewhere, correct?
The lottery.
Um, what do we have to do to accept that?
It's the, through the chair. Is that okay to speak?
Yeah.
It's actually great news. It's, uh, through the lottery that people sign up on when they get their PFD. It was evenly distributed according to, um, ADM across the state.
So my friendly amendment would be, uh, to, um, use that money plus a 1% reduction in administrative costs to pay for all four security.
Second.
It's Margot's motion. It's a motion, a motion to amend. So right now, we have Member Bellamy's motion to amend, um, and it is to change, uh, to use the 150,000 from the PFD lottery and a 1% cut of 510 and 550 positions. Um, I, I, we gave the superintendent instructions on how to craft a budget, and I don't want to break it apart piecemeal. Um, these are hard, hard decisions. Everyone wants security in all our schools. There is no question. That's all. Anybody else want to speak on Member Bellamy's amendment to Member Donnelly's motion? Okay, we'll vote on Member Bellamy's amended motion. Yep. Correct. This is just a motion to amend Member Donnelly's motion, not the underlying motion. This reads to be as reinstating, this is just to amend, or he could accept it as a friendly amendment.
Amendment, amendment to the amendment.
This is amendment to motion number three?
Yeah, this is Margot's amendment to my amendment number three. So I believe it's correct.
Okay. Well, we understand what it is, so we'll, we are voting on whether just to amend Member Donnelly's motion, not whether we're going to change that funding.
This is not the main motion.
Yes. Okay, the Member Bellamy's motion to restate Member Donnelly's motion passes five yays to nays. So the underlying motion is now whether we should use the PFD fu, uh, we need some precise wording, precise wording on this.
Okay.
Do we?
State education.
I mean, could, could somebody write it for Katie?
Yeah, Dave will write it.
You have to put the PFD money in. Okay, Katie, could you read the, the amended motion that we're going to be voting on?
I move the reinstatement of four security personnel at Polaris, Chugiac, and Diamond Service, and fund this with $850,000 for the education lottery, and a 1% reduction of administrative costs and state funds by 250, total cost $285,000.
Okay, I see. Is there any discussion on Member Donnelly's amended motion? Is there any discussion on Member Donnelly's amended motion? We're ready to vote on this motion.
The original was Dave and Margot.
No, Andy was.
Andy was.
Now we're back to the budget as amended. Are there any other motions to amend? Member Holloman.
I would move to restore the activities principal at South High using fund balance, approximately $150,000.
Is there a second to that motion?
The person has had discussion.
All right, speak to your motion, please.
I realize using fund balances, the coward board members way out of any kind of difficult situation, you know, along that. But I think it's important. I think it matters. And again, part of it is the activities part and running that well. The other part is the presence of adults that are free to work with kids that are in difficult situations during the school day. I've mentioned before, I've walked through an office when every single seat is filled with a student writing out a statement on a pad of paper and every single adult in the office, except for whoever's answering the phones and working the front desk, is in some kind of serious conversation. And you don't know what happened an hour ago when you do that, but you know that there's no point in trying to talk to anybody that day. We have to have a certain number of adults that can work with kids in difficult situations in the buildings. This is an amount that we can absorb and seek to replenish and basically try to keep the contact with kids whole for another year. And obviously face this question again. Thank you.
I'll say I'm incredible funding an ongoing position with fund balance. There is no question, we've heard it in the testimony tonight, that all of these positions are important and beneficial to children. I want more people who are well-trained working with kids. And there could be a giant mix of how that is. We heard diversity in staffing and abilities within districts, those are all admirable and beneficial to children. This will be hard and there's a human attached to it and that stinks. But we don't have ongoing money for this position. Anybody else? Or President Marsette? Go ahead.
Yeah. So what did we cut tonight? I mean, what money did we save? How much money did we save with our budget? As it stands now, with this amendment, how much money have we cut from our budget of the 20 million or we've just added to our budget through different, instead of looking at what else might be important with these funds, of things that we don't have that we still need? I'm just wondering where we're at.
Star, my math says we're right around 17 million.
That we've cut 17 million?
Yes, we're still, we've still cut 17 million.
I mean, it's using fund balance to cut.
Yeah.
Right. So we've just, we're just paying for it through something else.
To what?
So we did not do the Ignite program. We are using fund balance for that. We were already using 6 million of fund balance to close the gap. We did have the health, Member Holloman's motion on health teachers didn't pass, right? So that is a reduction. So whatever that figure is, is the reduction.
And there was already, the other side of that, Madam Chair, of the 6 million, there was already 8 million outside of schools that were already reduced.
So with the proposed, it doesn't matter. I'm going to be voting this whole budget down because I don't feel like we've really accomplished anything. And as a board member, I feel my direction was to have the district come back with a budget. And if I don't approve of that budget, or I think there's, they need to look at it differently instead of doing these line item amendments, I am going to vote it down and I'll just send it back to the district is what I'll be doing.
And that is the practice of many other districts. I think it's a good one. Well, we can improve. So we are voting on the full, no, what motion do we have? We have a motion adding, which motion are we on? Activity principal at South High from fund balance. Any more discussion on this or are we ready to vote? Yes, Member Mitchell?
I'm looking at the numbers here and so South has, we're estimating they're going to have around 1,400 students. And I guess they're, it's sort of a cutoff point around there somewhere because they're going down to three principals at that level and then the next smallest would be Diamond and they're staying at, well, Bartlett, and they're staying at four. So South is 1,356, Bartlett's 1,377. But is that because Bartlett Title I?
Through the chair, I'm, might I have Mark Stocker or Kirsten, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Stock speak to those specific questions? They were the ones involved in this particular issue. Just the questions about the numbers, why we adjusted there, what it came down to.
Through the chair, thank you, Dr. Bishop. We had a ton of discussion around this particular item in terms of assistant principals and looking at our metric. The difference between Bartlett and South in particular is the number of discipline referrals that they see annually. Discipline at Bartlett is about four times higher than the discipline at South High School. So when we were making this decision, it wasn't so much the number of kids that was the big difference for us in the decision-making to forward this position to you for consideration.
It's not turned on. Turn it off.
I must have hit the button, sorry. It was really about the discipline numbers and the level of volume that comes through the office in that regard.
Are we ready to vote on Member Holloman's motion? All right, thank you, Katie. as amended. Are there any more discussions on the underlying budget? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I move amendment, well, no, first I'd say that the Alaska Association of School Boards, the dues amount that's in this budget is about $27,000. And the voting, I brought this matter up last year during the budget process. Anchorage is severely underrepresented in its voting power. Even the next largest school district.
Were you making a mo, did I hear a motion? Sorry.
Okay. I move amendment number four to reduce the expenditures in the school board budget by $27,087, which is the amount of our membership in the Alaska Association of School Boards.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Speak to your motion, please.
Last year, when I moved this reduction, pointed out that Anchorage students are underrepresented in their voting power on this organization by 2 to 1, even compared to the next largest districts. If you go down to the smallest districts, our students are represented at 5% of the voting power per student of those school districts. And that's just not equitable. It's not fair to our kids. It's not fair to our community. And at the time, we had talked and we were hoping that they might adjust this ratio. Well, there was discussion of that, that they may consider that. And I'd really hope they would have, but it hasn't changed. And I just believe that we're not being fairly treated by this organization. Our children aren't, our students aren't being fairly treated by it, that they're 5% of the voting power of kids in other districts. And so I really think that it would send a strong message if we pulled out of the Alaska Association of School Boards and then reconsidered this if they would more fairly adjust their voting power ratios.
Any discussion? Member Vekalis?
Can I offer a friendly amendment? Instead of 27,000, make it 59,000 and include the CEE annual dues along with the AASB. That brings it to 59,000 total and would be a portion towards the gap of the 1% administration because this is inclusive of that.
That is consistent with the amendment number five that I had drafted, which was my last amendment, so I would entertain that amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you moving that?
She offered a friendly emotion. Are you willing to amend your motion to be what she said? So the motion before is to reduce funding by the cost of membership for the AASB and the CE or CEE? And have that money applied to the 1% reduction that the board just requested from administrative funding.
Oh, is that what you were suggesting?
It is because we just asked the administration to cut the 1%, which is 142,000, you know, leaving, you know, and so we could offer up 60,000 of it right there out of...
You know what? I appreciate that. I thought we were just rolling the two, my two amendments together to save time. That's different. I'm really, I've, of all the things that we've dealt with tonight, I think that making some reduction in administrative costs was really a valuable thing. So I would really prefer to vote this up or down and then move on and if...
Okay, but this isn't administrative cost. I mean, this is a school board.
It's a school board cost.
Cost that, you know, we can save 60 grand as a school board.
And I want to do that.
Member Donnelly, what for your motion do you want the money to go toward?
I wanted the money to go back. I just want to reduce the overall spending by $27,087 in this particular motion.
So you have a motion out, Member Vekalis. Do you want to keep your motion?
I don't care if we split it and do it twice or we do it once. I'm wanting to save 60 grand from the school district or the school board budget itself.
Well, somebody used to second your motion if we're going to discuss it.
Dave did, but...
Dave did second your...
But then he didn't like it after I said what I was going to go towards.
Well, I misunderstood what you were suggesting.
Are you seconding it for, no, no second for Ms. Vekalis' amended motion? We're back to Member Donnelly's motion for reducing funding for AASB membership. Do I have a second for Dave's motion, right? We have that?
We had it because of Dave.
Okay. So Star and President Marsette?
So we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm going to say that I think AASB is important because it is, it does cover all school districts. We are working with lower UConn. It's creating relationships. There's a lot going on there. And with two board members on the board of directors there, I actually see where we're making changes where things are being said that all students are represented and not just our native students. So it's becoming a real representation of all students and not just focus on native students. Not that native students aren't important, but of course, we're about all students. So I am seeing some changes. I know there's a lot of districts that look to us to see what we're doing before they do anything. We're the leader in that group. I understand what Mr. Donnelly is saying, but I do think it's important. If we pull out of AASB, we might as well just, I would say, let's pull out of NSAB and let's pull out Council of Great City Schools.
Member Mitchell?
So I think we get great benefit from the Alaska Association of School Boards. We get the, just the bylaws alone are a huge benefit. They keep up with federal regulations and provide us with updates on that. And I know that we are a big district and we do a lot of that on our own. But I think as things get tighter, that might be something we rely on more. The School Climate and Connectedness Survey that we get from them is a huge benefit. We get the new members, new school board member boot camp from them. They provide a lot of support in terms of training on many, many issues of governance. They have come up and done workshops for us on evaluations, on, they were willing to do the strategic planning with us. They, we get, I think we get more than our benefit from it. And we do have the most votes of any district in the state. Do we have proportionally as many as a school district with, you know, 250 students? No, absolutely not. And that's generally not the way things like that work in the public sector, as you know. So I would absolutely oppose this.
All right, I'll say I want, I'm fine with it in theory. I just don't want to do it through this budget process. I don't want to piecemeal the budget. I've tried to do these cuts before, they didn't pass. I don't want to spend time talking about it again. We've talked about it five times and I never win, so I've accepted and moved on. I love AASB. They do incredible work. I don't have money. I'm looking for it, but I know this isn't going to go on and I don't want to keep talking about it. Is there anybody else who wants to discuss this motion? Member Donnelly? Absolutely.
The Anchorage School District has not always been a member of the Alaska Association of School Boards. There have been years in the past where the board decided that they weren't responsive to Anchorage taxpayers and Anchorage interests and withdrew from it. So it is not unprecedented that this is, this would be done. And I think the member's point is well-taken, the distinction between small district, the smallest districts in Anchorage. But the next largest district, the Matsu and Kenai and Fairbanks, they still have two times as much voting power as we do per student. So I really do think it's unfair the way it's structured currently, but thank you.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, Katie? Now we have our underlying budget as amended. Are we ready to vote on the underlying budget? Member Donnelly?
This is my last amendment.
Thank you.
I move amendment number five, which would delete the school board budget by $32,000, which is an increase from last year to pay for dues in the Coalition for Education Equity. which is an increase from last year to pay for dues in the Coalition for Education Equity.
Second. Would you like to speak your motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Although they may be a meritorious organization, the interests of the Coalition for Education Equity are very frequently in conflict with the interests of the citizens of Anchorage. We are the only large school district that's a member of this group, I believe. And it's clearly dominated and their agenda is dominated by small school agenda, which directly conflicts with the interests of our taxpayers in that they oppose any type of, uh, mandatory minimum for schools to, uh, for school districts and for school funding, which, uh, really costs the taxpayers of Alaska, uh, well, the citizens of Alaska all, a huge amount of money. And they're just, their interests just aren't in line with ours. So I don't understand why we would want to be a member of this particular organization since we such a significant amount of the funding for it.
Any other discussion? Member Vekalis?
At what point does this board say, out of our own budget, we are willing to let things go? I get where AASB helps with our bylaws and we do get the training and stuff like that. And they do, you know, have a broader advocacy role. I honestly don't understand the CEE, our relationship with them, how they work with us, how any of that works. And it, at what point do we say we can go without, you know, components as well when we're asking the rest of the district to go without?
If there's no other discussion, we can vote. That motion fails five nay, three yay. We're back to the budget as amended. Four nay, three yay. Motion fails. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, we're back to our budget as amended. Is there any more discussion on our budget? Are we ready to vote? Is this, is this really happening? Member Mitchell? It's okay if you have, wanna talk?
I was just gonna say, I really, really, really do appreciate all the time and effort the administration has put into this. And I don't want, um, anybody to feel that, I mean, it, it probably does feel like we're nitpicking this apart, but I know that you all went through this process internally when you put this together. You went through a lot of back and forth and trying to figure out what to put in, what not to put in and, you know, I, and you, and you, you've spent countless hours and, you know, you've been working on this for a couple of months. And, you know, as I mentioned in the work session, we haven't really had the benefit of that. We just got exposed to this a little bit more than two weeks ago, your recommendation. So, um, it took a little time for us to wrap our minds around it. And I, I hope that, I mean, the work that you all put into it is super, super valuable. And, um, I, I don't think we're saying that the recommendations weren't good. It's just that, I, I mean, I think, you know, you know, it just, the, I think the Ignite thing really does need more time. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate everybody in this district and how hard everybody works and that everybody puts the, um, you know, you, you really are thinking about what is best for our kids in the classroom and I know that. And I, I just wanna acknowledge that.
Uh, you, Member, yes?
I was just gonna say, um, you know, through the chair, to Member Mitchell, please don't think that we take it personally. We were provided a task and, um, the expertise, uh, you know, the expertise here, the, the folks that are, um, leading the divisions, they, you know, are school people. We, we've all, you know, been teachers and then, so it's, it's not personal. It was just the task that we were asked to do and we delivered it and you provided your, your feedback. Um, maybe spending more time discussing your side of it when, when you do provide the task would, would help on both sides, um, earlier, cause we would, uh, be able to, um, we'll have our goals, you know, the values and the vision. And then, uh, to your point, we can start right away in September, October, if we kind of foresee that needed time that, um, you shared, we agree that the time needs to go into it to create, uh, working groups and, and get information. It's just that when we, we get down, you know, to the last minute and have, it's just the, the process in itself, I think it was mentioned here tonight, without forward funding, without knowing, without all those surprises, this always happens at the 11th hour because we don't know. And I think, um, Member Hildy and Member, um, Donley brought that up. We, we just don't know what we don't know. And so it does seem to sneak up on us. But the budget process is the same every year. I want the public to know that, that those timelines are the same, they're set up by ordinances, um, and, and the, the deadline is the March 2nd. So we just, um, all will go into the future with our eyes wide open about th, this is the task in a reduced, um, environment because we have to start thinking about that, um, from the get-go. Thanks.
So we're ready to vote? Oh, Katie? Okay. So we're going to, uh, so the motion to approve the budget is to approve, we're getting the number, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get it right.
So it's changed.
Let me give it to Katie. Okay, so the motion, oh, just wait till you do it. Yes, Member Donley?
Yeah. I, I think one of the points that Member Mitchell was, was making was that maybe we could start the interplay between the administration and the board members a couple of weeks earlier, um, next year. And I, I completely acknowledge your, 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 uh, your suggestion there. And I think if we had a few more weeks of time, we might be able to be more responsive to some of the suggestions you make at that point in time. Given that, I do think that the public process is incredibly important here. I mean, the amazing amount of testimony we heard tonight, it was so moving. I mean, these kids were just amazing. We have great kids. And, and that means a lot. And, and, and when you formulate it from the point of the administration, you don't have the benefit of that. And, but that's our job here is to listen to the public and then to try to make adjustments accordingly. So, uh, you didn't have that benefit. You did, you worked really hard. I, I thank you for all the efforts that the administration put into this. And then it's our job to listen to the public and then to fine tune your proposals.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Um, Katie has the upper limit. And just because we're putting this out here, I like to say, we don't have 882 million dollars. We have these little buffer zones in there, don't want anybody thinking that, like, it's not that much. It's, it's, it's a lot, but it's about, you know, 805, it's just an encase. There's a bunch of encase spots in there. Um, I'm happy to show those numbers, but just so you know, that's not all the money we have. Um, okay, and board members can vote. We have five yays and two nays with the, so it passes. Okay, next on to non-action items. Is there anything anybody wants to pull? Or? Yeah, we have to keep going, I guess. Any, no? Okay, great. Um, oh, we have the strategic planning process update. Yes, Star?
Yeah, number eight.
Yeah, the strategic planning process update. Do we, okay, we are gonna pull it. Does anybody want to move it to our next meeting since we have 20 minutes?
Yeah, we can move it to the next meeting.
Okay. So do we have a motion to, or do we need to move, it's non-action?
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay, we will move that to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Um, RFIs, are there any new RFIs? Okay, let's do that. Okay, some, so we're doing RFIs? Unless people wanna bump that to next week too? I, is that, is that the feel that they can all wait? Yep, great. Okay, we, everybody look at those, we'll be ready. Is there any other public testimony on non-agenda or non-action items? If there's anything you wanna talk about, you're welcome to come forward. Okay. Thank you all for being here. All right, any school board administration comments? Dr. Bishop?
Yeah, I just wanted to share again, cause I, I don't want anyone to think that public input isn't important. I was responding that the best way to do this would be similar to how we did the middle school model. When we planned early, we had a task, we met over many, many months and were able to do it. So understanding the task at hand months in advance is the benefit. I actually wasn't speaking against public testimony and I'm not sure, okay, just, just so you're, you're clear.
I was, I was just saying, you, you didn't have the benefit of it when you made your final decision and we had the benefit of public testimony.
Right, right. The best bet would be though to have committee works, yeah.
Any other comments? Member, oh, Dr. Stock? Let Dr. Stock go.
Hello, I, I just wanna say that public input is important. I do appreciate, I sat here and listened to every testimony. I've read every email. Um, I do value public testimony, but I also value the process. And the process is we give the district our guidelines. I realize they change possibly when we get, um, the recommendations from the district. But really for us to go in line by line and decide where to pull money from, I think that's better left. I mean, my understanding of school boards, we either vote the budget up or we vote it down. If we're not happy with it, we vote it down, we send it back to the district and we tell them, these are our concerns, and they come back. I mean, we're, we're doing all these things and we're not the experts on this budget. We have to depend on the experts to help us with this. And I just don't feel like that's what happened tonight. And it's not that I'm against any programs or anything else, but I wanna honor the process.
Thank you, Star. Dr. Stock, did you have something?
I just wanted to, to say that, just remind everyone, so once there's a balanced budget, now for our end, the, the work starts. So, you know, the issues with working with our librarians, working with the health teachers, trying to make all those schedules work, trying to work through those, those, these are new things that are gonna take time to figure out how all of that will play and, and work through the details of that. And then, of course, the early, uh, arrival, late arrival, early release, however that works out, those decisions will have to be made. So there's still lots of, of things to do that we'll get started on. And then I think that still brings up the question, if we, without new revenue, if we're still looking at a $15 million situation for next year, that I really believe that those Ignite redesign questions should be discussed right away and start thinking about that, working with our communities and seeing how that could look to, to maintain those programs. Cause we'll still even be short even by going through those things. So just, let everybody know, we'll get started right away.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn? Oh, okay, no, Member Mitchell, go for it. She was moving.
So I just, I just wanted to say, when you said that, um, this isn't our real budget, that's just a placeholder.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
I, I wanna just express my personal point of view that for me, it's not just a placeholder, it is an expression of, um, what our schools actually need to be able to, um, um, really be able to meet the needs of every student. So that's, that's my understanding of why we added that, um, the grant area is, is really, to just put out there that this is a gap that we really think the district, or that I personally think the district has based on best practices around the country. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for clarifying, Member Mitchell. My words might not come out that well, this, later it gets. Um, yes, they are, they are there for a reason, um, but I don't want people to think we already have that money. We would, we would like that. All right, uh, motion to adjourn? Second? And no objections?